64, I'm getting ready to be 65. My daughter filed out of her application last week.
I understand it's pretty, you know, pretty unique to get that.
Yeah, well, really, I told, I had, I've had a guy who was a student and he, and we were doing a course and after the course he says, I just got my RPLs. You know, I said, okay. He says, I'm thinking about, you know, pursuing the LSLS. I said, well, is the RPLs a line? And he says, yeah. I said, oh, good. Because the other thing you're going to need to know that you don't already know is the workings of the general land office, that's all, the statues. Just read the natural resources code, it's all right there. And follow through. And he did, and he passed it.
Maybe it sounded easy.
I know. Oh, my gosh, it sounds like really easy.
The first one's not that easy. It's, you know, if you've already got.
If you survived the first one, the second one's an easy one because you're in a cable.
And the words are, our third founding father of the association. If I can remember all this, you have to go method fisher, robotic researcher, abstractor.
I'll remain being a medic. I was a medic for over 20 years in the air force, so.
Psycho, you want that vegetation to die? Just let me touch it. Me and plants don't
get along, so.
The land office actually, one of the, there are three prescribed seats.
I've killed cactus, and that's what following direction.
I mean, chief server, and the Spanish translate.
Uh huh.
You're close to where you've got a land office.
It's like five minutes.
No, Spanish translate has to read, that's kind of Spanish. So it's usually, usually it's got a PhD Spanish.
My husband and son think it's hilarious. They'll get me a plant just to see how long it lasts.
The last guy there, I liked him a whole lot. His name was, his last name was Bruce Richard. And he was the Spanish translator. I always greet him.
I'll sit there and they're like, did you water it? Yes, the thing says here, and I have it written on the calendar. Yeah, no. And he gave a little bit of the Miracle Grow Food America.
Some of the thoughts. And especially basically, because already you're taking.
Nice to meet you.
What's up, trouble?
Nice to meet you.
Don't you have short itis or something?
Yeah. Entire ground floor of Stephen F. Austin.
Are you my friend?
The reading room in the archives occupy that whole.
Are you my friend?
Yeah.
Good deal. Good deal.
So if you're good and you want to see something, you can do this. Whatever that you work, you guys knew, huh? You can write down the list, make sure you're busy, and you can leave now.
That'd be, you actually be worried about touching somebody.
All the, all the ones that are, most of them are in Lexan sleeves these days.
One of them.
Right. Then only makes, then only makes the bulk, the bulk of the records twice as big. Because every sheet of paper's got a piece of Lexan jersey.
See, that sounds like the deed to the house where my mom was born and everything. My mom's from Newfoundland, Canada, and her house overlooks the North Atlantic and everything. Well, her, her family immigrated over from Ireland when England invaded Ireland. And so.
Her stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe not the first time.
No, sixteen forty. And so, and so they, they left, went to Newfoundland. Well, that's how far back the deed to her. Yeah.
I was like, I was like, yeah, my mom's Wisconsin.
Whereabouts?
My dad's from Millsville up near Eau Claire and Markfield.
Long stand and moved to Markfield.
There you go.
My parents, my mom's really about a hundred fifty-five, every week, right? Like individual suburbs. That's why we don't be sixteen forty.
Well, I mean, my dad's family got out of Germany just before they closed the border for World War I. And they, they were dairy farmers in Germany and just moved to Wisconsin. Dairy farmers there. That's it.
Hello, Cynthia, how you doing?
Yeah, we, yeah, because I mean, my mom, I'm first generation on my mom's side. She married a Yank, American, and came to the States, so, you know.
My mom's grand, great-grandparents, they.
Oh, yep, yep, okay.
They're Dutch, and then my mom, my dad's.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, and then, and then I give my husband a hard time because he's, he's the great-grandson of Emmett Dalton, the surviving brother of the Dalton Gate. That's his great-grandfather. Yeah, yeah. Pancho Villa is his great-grandfather on, yeah. And then, he's a cousin to Robert E. Lee. And Robert E. Lee's mom and dad were brother and sister. Well, their other sister is my husband's great-grandmother.
All these celebrities.
So, so I turn around, I'm like, oh, you stepped up when you married me. All I got, all I got is my family on the mom's side were the last kings of Linnster. Okay. Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. That's it. That's it. We're workhorses, that's all we are. Nice to meet you, good.
Very nice to meet you.
Good, how are you?
Good. Nice to be seen.
Be positive. Be positive.
Phil Martin.
That's all we can do.
Sure.
Okay, how are you? I didn't do it, I've been good.
John, I've heard that.
How are you doing?
I left my water in the truck.
Okay.
And this is your first time last year, so I'm going to give you, your first time this year.
Yeah.
You seem so happy about it.
The county ones? I got some good information. I don't think we're going to get any of it. We're out of text out. That's the lady there told me.
I know a lot of projects in the CIP. But was it one of those for the parks board to look at? Did they prioritize that? So this is really important?
This was, it's.
Where is it on their list of products? And is that list of projects attached to the park?
Oh, yes.
That's two counties. I'm like, I haven't had a chance to go back and, early serving it is? Because you showed, yeah.
Let me, let me look at the master plan.
Ah?
Well, no, that's your target. So if somebody hits.
Did he surprise? There are some that landed there.
Where's your son?
Got him here to help me at the lesson.
Okay. I was looking forward to meeting a member of your family.
Well, that's what I told him. I said, you know, can I, I want to show you before I talk to you.
No, he said before.
But I just wanted to let you know I was here.
My family's been to two council meetings.
You're right.
In the ten years history, I've done city management.
Okay.
Right. But you are a little bit later in the program. Your client is going to, is presenting my exam. And then you're, so you're actually not that late. You were after him. And then we are, the park master signs, just going to really have.
I don't tie.
Absolutely. That's what you're good.
So, did you get my email with the map one? Check your email I sent earlier today, this one.
Well, I got an email from you that I responded to. Well, it might have been. But if she didn't come from your city email, again, from Surry, Texas, there it is. Okay, so.
Ooh.
Yeah, no, I know. Because they're centered underneath our lawn. But the issue is, where it cut, it cut over here. And when I tried to tell them to cut, how am I supposed to cut here without cutting there?
I didn't tell him that for you. He hadn't even asked me if they were sending money.
Well, I mean, like, again, there's these bushes that are here. But, like, if you cut the, if you cut.
Cave. Oh, that's like a cave. Cave?
Well, it is.
Was our neighbor, he was like, yeah, I'll keep it on there.
The question.
No, it's.
Well, it would make sense if you, because there is a sewer.
Same here.
Used to make as well. But Rhonda says.
Where's specifically, if you were to be fair?
Pacifica's got a baseball league too.
I got one again in the ice.
Found a way to come up, why don't we get to the game?
He said, God damn it, game's till eight thirty. We'll be out here by then. I said, yeah, right.
She thinks there's one. Rhonda thinks there's two.
I don't care.
Reasons I'm getting.
In and out, in and out, in and out.
I went through that quite a bit.
Yeah, it's me. I saw you also, you know that.
I don't. There ain't no way. There ain't no way. Absolutely.
How are you?
And I know you're going to get them that.
Yep. This is a slower. Be ready. But I've been close to those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did.
But it also can help stress.
All right. Ain't told him that for you.
Well, it's taken that one for a while.
Maybe we just, yeah.
When this comes up, will it come up on just these two years on the screen? It'll come up on both. This would be moved, so it would be the presentation. Because you'll have this, it's actually standing over here if you want.
Oh, no, no. Oh, yeah, no, please. Yeah, no, no, please.
No, no.
Oh, I know we are. I know we are.
Just letting you know when you're.
I know we are.
That's when I saw that, I was like, hilarious. Will you just stop talking?
That's number one on the priority list.
Can we start this meeting?
I want to have Deborah.
The last ring's already on and out, we're.
Nice, all right. So we're going to call this meeting to order at 5:03. Let's start with a roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Paul Carey for District Two.
Bill King, District Three.
Todd Shearhardt, District Four.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. All right, so for our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, Naomi. If you could step up over here. This is Naomi Henson. She's going to lead us in the, the Pledge of Allegiance, but can you also tell us why you're here today?
Um, I'm here because I need to do this for my badge of communication.
That's great. Well, happy to have you here. So, Naomi Henson?
Yes.
Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And I don't see our pastor.
Thank you, Naomi.
I don't see our pastor.
All right. If you don't mind, just remain standing for the indication. You want me to do it? Please.
I'll do it. Our dear and gracious heavenly Father, we are so very grateful for this opportunity we have to come together as a city to discuss the topics and needs of Casterville and its citizens. Father, we're grateful for all the men and women who've volunteered their time and effort to helping to make this a better place to live and work. Father, we're just thankful for the blessings Thou has given us. We know that this is an uncertain world that we live in, but that Thou art certain, that Thy designs are everlasting, and that Thou has a plan and goal for each and every one of us. Father, we pray that Thou will help us to remember our, our purpose in life and to have greater trust and confidence in the, that Thy, Thy ways might be our ways as we strive to do what is right. Bless these council members and those who have been charged with caring for our safety and leading and guiding the city, that they may be inspired and they may seek to do Thy will. These things we ask for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Scott.
Can I get the presentation? Oh, that is not working. It's not working? We sent it off to get it repaired. The way that it'll work is if I'll be plugging it in right there. And I apologize because you do have a mayor's report, and I didn't think about that. But what I can do. Let me just email it to you real quick.
Could I ask? Sorry.
Yes, you can do that. Because I don't have a. You can do that. I do not have an HCM on this one.
What troop are you with, so I can put it in my minutes?
471.
471, okay. I thought it was, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Oh, and they're going to be out at Tractor Supply on Saturday again? Is that correct?
Yes.
Selling tickets. Already got mine. They have barbecue dinner tickets. The barbecue dinner is on April the 24th. And it'll be picked up at Keneck Park.
However you say it.
And that's from when to when on the 24th?
Eleven, I believe is the start time, and then twelve twenty-one.
But you have to buy your tickets prior, or you can buy them this Saturday at Tractor Supply.
You're over at Walmart too, correct?
Yeah. All right. Did you email it? Yes. Yes. Okay. Okay. Next item is citizens' comments. Do we have anybody that would like to speak for citizens' comments? I got a cool hourglass timer. I think I've lost it already.
It's in front of me.
It's right there in front of you. Oh, there it is. Yeah, nice.
We'll buy some lessons.
All right. It's a three-minute timer. If you don't mind just saying it here.
If I don't make my three minutes, if I don't make my three minutes, I can turn my report into the. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak. Mr. Persine will give an update on three options to, I'm addressing agenda item number 11. And Mr. Persine will give an update on the three options that address the TCEQ issues at the wastewater treatment plant. As a member of the park advisory board, I was invited to a Zoom briefing for these three options presented by Mr. Persine. Michael Persine and Vicky Ortega and the rest of our team have done a meticulous job gathering data and providing options for review by the city council. The K-Freeze team is also an excellent communicator by providing project, progress reports, data transparency throughout this project. As Mr. Persine presents his updates, please pay particular attention to option number three. This option is to remove the woody vegetation, restore both dams to their original designed sizes, and maximize the capacity of water storage.
Yeah.
Which, it also maximizes the water storage, storage capacity of both of these dams. Treated wastewater is one of the most valuable resources the city of Casterville has. Part of the city's TCEQ permit allows for the application of 26 acre feet of water for the park. This is the only source of irrigation for the soccer fields. Reduction or elimination, reduction or elimination of this water source will require using public drinking water from the city's Edwards Aquifer wells to provide irrigation on the soccer fields. When drought conditions reach critical periods four and five, the Edwards Aquifer Authority will require the reduction of water pumped from the city water as well by 40% and 44% respectively. This will have a severe impact on our community. Citizens will have to choose between having water to drink or irrigate a soccer field. No matter how much people love regional park, having to drink, having drinking water is a life-sustaining priority. Without irrigation, the grass in the soccer fields will die. Soccer and other organized sports will be prohibited from this field. Irrigation of the, of regional park with treated wastewater can continue regardless, regardless of the length or severity of the drought. Hush green grass in the middle of a drought will maintain the high-quality recreational experience Casterville Regional Park currently provides for our community. The rapid growth in Adena County and Casterville is already putting stress on the Edwards Aquifer system. I want you to think 50 years from now. Fifty years from now, water in these two ponds at the wastewater treatment plant will most likely become part of Casterville's public water drinking supply system. Wichita Falls currently uses 50% of treated wastewater and 50% surface water for their public drinking water system. Brownwood, Big Springs, El Paso, and other cities globally are using treated drinking water, treating, using treated wastewater for all or part of their drinking water systems. While removal of the vegetation and wastewater treatment ponds is necessary, the solution to this problem is much more far-reaching than just cutting down some trees. TCEQ has hung the sword of Damocles over our community. By restoring these ponds to their original size and maximum storage capacity acute for the, for the current and future use, this city council can take this sword, cut up TCEQ's lemon, and make some delicious lemonade for our future generations. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, or we can discuss them in item number 11. Did I make my time?
Close enough. We just chose to stop watching it. Thank you, David. All right, next, oh, is there anybody else that would like to speak for citizens' comments? All right, next item is consent agenda. The three items on here are minutes for March 1st, 2022 special called meeting, minutes for March 8th, 2022 regular called council meeting, and airport farmland lease agreement. Do I have a motion?
I move we accept them as written. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's passes. Okay.
So Darren, I have a little adapter that goes from USB-C to USB. You're not with me, not with.
Can you help me get it?
It's a figure on.
All right. Oh, that's really weird.
Hello.
I had it there for a second.
Yes, sir.
There you go.
There it comes.
Give it a moment.
All right. Whoa. Want to go backwards? Okay. So, the items on this, events in Casterville, some details on our utility billing. We're going to talk a little bit about dealing with the growth in Casterville and partnering with other area agencies, and then some specific stuff about text hot updates. So there's a lot of things that are coming up in Casterville. If, I put on here the casterville.com, the Chambers website. So if you go to casterville.com/calender, they are capturing a lot of the events on there. And if anybody is having other events, let's make sure that we're getting them on there. We've got a lot of, I'm going to be really tired, fitness runs and, we got, I think we've got pretty much everything on here, some, some really cool things going on. Tour to Casterville, is this the, is the seventh annual?
Yes. Eleven.
Eleventh annual.
Eleven.
Mm-hmm. I'm, I'm looking forward to that. We're actually going to walk, or we're going to run this time. Last time we were the last ones back. But we had a lot of great conversations. All right, so that's that. Okay, so utility billing. We made some, we made some adjustments a few months back to the, to the utility billing. Basically, we, it was something that was outstanding for years, something that really needed to be done. Previously, the electrical was subsidizing the water, the wastewater. So we really just did a level set on that. We had a little anomaly this past billing cycle that, that staff is working on rectifying, basically that our, our provider miscalculated how, how they were reading that. The software system just, basically it was a glitch in the software system where misread the months that it's supposed to look at, October, November, December. January. January. And it didn't do that. Sometimes it looked at September through December, and sometimes it looked at October, I'm sorry, November through February. So we've gone back, they fixed it, and we're sending out bills to the people who are affected. About 100, 100 to 150 people were affected by it.
Well, and it's October through January.
I believe that's right. October, November, December, and January usage.
Yeah, usage.
They throw out the lowest, and then they average the other ones. Right. So, what's included, and I wanted to double-click on this because we've got quite a few people that have sprinkler systems. We have a sprinkler system, and what we noticed is that it would make a lot of financial sense for us to go ahead and get a, a meter for that, a separate meter for that. We've had a number of people do that this year to go through and actually get a, a meter on their, on their system. So if you look at the way that the rate is established now, it's a $30 base rate, and then, let's see, the $30 base rate includes 2,000 gallons, and then it's basically $10 per thousand gallons after that. And that's when you average out that time. So, what we ended up using, I think we averaged nine, so you take off the two, and so our total bill ended up being $100 a month for, for the duration. So, and we actually only use probably 2,000 or 3,000 just for our domestic water. So, I just want to remind people that have sprinkler systems, it might not be, it would probably be much to your benefit to, to put in a separate meter. So if you want to do that, then you can reach out to Public Works. What did it cost you to put that irrigation meter in? I've not put an irrigation meter in yet.
Did you put $900?
Okay. So, you know, for some people, they're spending as much as $300 a month on sewer. And some people spend more than that. But if you have an irrigation system, a lot of times that's what they're doing. They're spending a lot of money on their sewer bill. And you can recoup that within a year. I mean, sometimes in a lot less than a year to have, so even though there's some expense to have.
When your wife puts 20,000 gallons on the yard in Monty, uh?
Yeah. Yeah. It makes a big, it can make a big difference in your bill. But there is some upfront expense to have that.
She's listening, right? Yeah, see you tomorrow when you have a bill on your head.
Thank goodness. You don't really save anything, Darren. If you have two meters, you're just going to pay.
Well, you still pay for the water, but you're then not paying for the sewer. Because honestly, we live in Texas, and we irrigate all the way up through, really, December.
I see what you're saying.
And because we are, so my, my two lowest months were pretty low. My, my actual two lowest months.
So therefore, you shouldn't be charged for it. Well, the way to avoid that is to have a meter, an irrigation meter installed just for your irrigation system, and that, that irrigation meter will not be charged a sewer rate, because it isn't going into our sewers. So I apologize, we kind of skipped right over.
That's an important part of it.
So I just wanted to make sure that people knew that your bill was wrong. Software glitch, we're fixing it, it'll be rectified next month. For some people, it'll work out better, and some people it won't work out quite as well, but it's just, we're putting it, we're level setting it.
And you will see, receive a letter. So if you're one of those impacted, your bill will be on plain white paper, it won't be the normal blue paper that we send our bills out on. It'll be different, it'll have a cover letter with it. Only about 10% of our customers were affected by this, so not everyone's going to get a letter. I don't have a list of who those folks are yet, but as soon as I do, I'll be sharing it with the council, so you're aware of who was impacted and who wasn't.
I believe half of you were.
Uh-huh.
Only half.
Yeah, so as an example, yeah, half of the council was impacted, and I think most of you, your bills went, are going to go down rather than up. And that's about the case. I understand it's about an 80-20 split, about 80% of the customers, their bill, they were incorrectly charged more than they should have been, and there's about 20% that may have been incorrectly charged, a little bit less than they should have been, so.
Mine went up 10 bucks.
Yes.
Your luck is not a lot. All right, next one. So, I don't know, I found this, I thought it was kind of funny, this, if anybody remembers this show, it's called Growing Pains, and I think that's a lot of what we're going through right now. We are going through a lot of growing pains in Casterville. San Antonio is encroaching, a lot of people are coming here that we are not quite accustomed to, and there's just, there's a lot of stuff that's going on. So the only way that, that we're going to hold it together long term and really prepare for the future is working together. And I just, I wanted to commend a number of people that, we've got some of them here today, and Chief Cook is going to be talking about some of the stuff that the ESD is doing in coordination with the city. We're looking at, how do we work together as a community, whether it's with Tech Dot or with the ESD, with the county, with the school district. ACOG is Alamo Area Community of Governments, so I've been, I've been a backup on that for Mayor Danner, so we're trying to stay involved with that. There's a lot of money that, that can come into the city through the ACOG system, so we're trying to stay on top of that. And then with our state and federal reps, we are doing a lot of stuff to, to come together. There are things that are, are becoming detractors, and we're looking wherever we can for additional money, additional coordination, and just how do we lock arms and get things done together? Next one is, not quite as much fun, but with Tech Dot updates, this is one that I'll just, I wanted to focus on this one for just a moment. We had the five-year county-wide meeting today with Tech Dot. We had some really good representation. We have next Monday, we have a meeting with our landscape improvement. So we, we were able to, through Arnie's hard work and efforts, able to get a grant for some, some trees to plant along Highway 90. We're working on getting some matching stuff from Tech Dot and doing coordination because it will go in the right of way, so we're, we're working that forward with them, so we're meeting with them next Monday. And then, as, as I was talking to them today, we're going to need to have our next Casterville Area Traffic Coalition, we'll have that in April. We're going to start talking through some of the stuff that Tech Dot has found out. We've been looking at different ways to create better traffic throughput. We're going to talk about next steps for the Northern Route, so it's about that time that we need to reengage with them. There's been a lot of stuff happening behind the scenes, and so we are continuing to move that forward, trying wherever we can to reduce traffic. And that is all I've got for that. How's that? All right. There's some difficult things happening, but there's also a lot of goodness that's happening here. All right, so, one of those goodness items. Our next item is presentation on our ISO certification rating for the city of Casterville, and this is Clint Cook, the EDC Fire Chief.
ESD.
Did I say ECD?
You said EDC. Those acronyms get confusing.
Is that my, my CDO? That's OCD alphabet.
That's all right, on the agenda, it says EDC Fire Chief.
Yeah.
ESD.
That's the hard day, sorry.
See, that's what I get for reading.
You read it.
I did.
You did.
Uh-oh.
You have a new towel. Sorry.
You didn't know you were on that board too, right?
It worked before they had your computer.
Darren talks.
There it goes.
There you go. There it is.
There we go.
Good job. So, good evening, as you, my name's Clint Cook. I've recently been hired by the ESD, recent as in October, and pop my eyes out a little bit, talk about working together in the community. Actually, Scott reached out to us, and I'm not sure if he heard we'd been hired or what, but I know he, he reached out to us. I originally wasn't quite in a position of wanting to reach out, branch out much more as I'm getting to know all different aspects of the community and all the different fire departments we're responsible for, but we were thrilled to have that communication open, and we're just going to take it off from there. So, a little introduction, so quick follow-up, so I was hired in October of 2021, and, so I oversee all the fire and EMS response for the ESD. So, I've been involved since 1995, so this is all I've kind of done most of my life. Been out, came out of Houston Market, but I was born and raised in Texas. I say that because one of the meetings I went to, that was the first question I got. How much was the outside of it? Please, and I was from Texas. So I'm a licensed paramedic, I still function as a paramedic, I've been a master firefighter for several years, and a bunch of other fancy little initials. So my last fire department, we had CHN ISO Class 1, there's only like 300 of those in the whole country, and we were the first non-municipality in the state of Texas to get it. So, for those of y'all that aren't familiar with the ESD, so in ESD Emergency Services District, there are political subdivisions established under Chapter 775 of the Health and Safety Code, basically identical to a school district. So a school district is a political subdivision. We have all the same responsibilities. We have no additional oversight. All the money we receive is ours, but all the money we receive is ours. There's nowhere else to look for it. We don't have a accounting firm, so you're looking at accounting personnel, purchasing, all of that, all in one person. But we are responsible for the fire EMS response within our whole jurisdiction. City of Casterville makes up a small portion of that, we cover 254 square miles. We start the Banderas County line on the north side, and we continue south to south of Lacoste. We start the Bear County line on the east, and we continue west to just before Nellie. So our ESD is funded through add-on property tax and a 2-cent sales and use tax. So for the city, you benefit greatly from the size of our ESD, because we don't collect any property tax within the city with the exception of the agreement from a couple of years ago where we, we collect a half cent in what is annexed into the city in the future. But outside of that, the city, we don't collect anything other than add-on property tax. So currently, we collect about $230,000 from the city. So your residents, that's it, that's all we collect within the city of Casterville. So you're going to get, you're getting a large fire EMS department that's reorganizing to provide a higher level of service for a dollar amount that's pretty equitable. And it doesn't, it doesn't touch your budget at all. Or we don't touch your budget at all.
I know you and I have talked about how much it costs for EMS, how much it costs for a fire department, how much it costs for a firefighter. Are you going to get into that, some of that?
Absolutely, I can, I did, we're.
Yeah, if you would, just, because I'm not sure how familiar the council is with how expensive some of these things are.
Our, our business is, if you're looking for a good tax deduction, buy yourself a fire department, right? Just to, just to have a, a two-person medic unit, which you have one stationed in the city, and we have two additional within our district, a two-person medic unit costs us about $500,000 a year. That's just EMS. You add a fire engine, to purchase a fire engine nowadays, you're looking pretty close to a million dollars. If you want a ladder on top of it, it's over a million dollars. And our, our gear to complete the outfit one firefighter right now, you're looking at about $7,000 is roughly those costs, and you add fuel, stations, so that gives you an idea without getting into too much. If, if you were to have a full career department, which you don't, right now, we are 100% volunteers, but we're going to talk about some changes that are coming. Our call volume is increasing drastically every day.
I, I only bring it up because one of the things that's come up in the past is whether or not the city should consider having its own fire department, and the fact of the matter is, we can't afford it. And it would be fairly expensive from a tax standpoint to, to start that process, and then, once you do the fire department, you still have to do EMS. And so currently, ESD does both of those for us, and for, for what the taxpayers are paying, you know, the $230,000 that you referenced, we're getting a fire department and EMS. I mean, you just, it would be very, very expensive to take it on, and, doesn't mean you can't, but, but I think that's just something that, that if I were watching this, or if I remember the public, I'd want to have a better understanding of, so.
Because it's at least 10 million easy, and that's on the low side.
Yeah. You're, you're looking, for, for a city this size, 2 million is about what you, that was the number you said.
I said 10.
Yeah, 10.
Because I'm looking at all the supplies and everything, and training, and all the required.
It gets crazy.
I'm a retired Air Force medic, I understand.
So, just wanted to mention that so that you do know that, you know, we're thrilled about the partnership and the, the idea of I want to work together, but that's kind of where we fit into that ballgame.
Yeah, that works out to about $75 per citizen. That's pretty inexpensive.
It is. So what are some changes coming to the ESD? So we've already converted our third medic unit to a 24-hour truck seven days a week, so we operate three MICU medic units, which means at least a paramedic and a EMT basic on the truck. So three within our 254 square miles, there's one stationed in the city of Casterville, and the other one is up on the Tranco Road where the growth is taking place there, but we're about five miles inside the Bear County line. That's where we've recently opened an additional station. So they're really exciting. We've been authorized to hire some full-time staff, and we're currently in that process, but hopefully within the next 60 days, we're at least going to start with, and this is a start, we're going to start with two personnel a day in Casterville and two personnel a day off of the Tranco to make sure that we get some fire apparatus en route during our lowest volunteer staffing times of the, of the day, which is 6:00 to 6:00 p.m. And we're going to be doing this seven days a week. And we are in for a grant right now, that if we're successful in getting that grant, which is a FEMA, it's called a SAFER grant, then we're going to look at expanding that to one additional personnel 24 hours a day at both of those stations. We've acquired land commitments for three additional sites as we speak today. One of those, we expect is a joint complex within the city on the airport property, and so Mr. Dixon and I, we've spoken on that a few different times, and I know we're, we're both looking forward to when the time comes and the financing's right for that.
And our, just to be clear, to be candid about that, you know, we talked about kind of when that, when the time might be right for that, and some of this will be dependent on grants, you know, I was talking to EMC, the consultant that you all approved a little while back now, about monies that we might be able to go ask for, and one of them is for police, you know, joint facility type, police and fire facility construction. So if that money were, be available sooner, then you and I would talk again, obviously, but right now, we're thinking about 2020, or 2026 is, is kind of where I'm aiming. When we look at future years and trying to plan out capital projects, I think we're going to be in position to need, we're going to need to expand depending on whether or not we are able to add police personnel through the similar grant, it's actually a SAFER grant, but it's through the state instead of through FEMA, for police officers. If we're able, if we're successful in getting that grant, we are going to be out of space effectively at the police department, but we are going to make do. They're just, we're just going to be crammed in. But I think, you know, by 2026, we'll really be in a spot where we, we need to look at expanding the size of that facility, parking and everything else. So that, you know, it'll make sense to start looking at that property at the airport at that time. So 2026 is kind of just, when we're talking about capital planning, that's more or less what we're aiming for, but that could change, especially if we have a large grant opportunity through this, all this money that the feds have graciously given the world.
Where are your other two sites?
So we have, obviously, the site in Casterville that, you're familiar with that.
The two additional ones.
So, oh, the other two, the new sites? We have one at 371 and 1283, which is, you know, we know where that's at, right? Yeah, Red Green Road.
That's a two hearts.
And then, we have another site on the far up in the, so as the county comes to a point, we, we own that too, so that's our responsibility, and we have a site up in there, there's a subdivision up there that has given us some land.
Bear Springs Ranch?
No, no.
Further north, it's way to by Park Road 37.
Yeah, off of Park Road 37.
Wow.
Yeah. And then, right now, we're rebuilding the Lacoste site. It's not a new facility, but we are putting a new building in. When I say rebuilding, we own the land, and we're in the design process right now, but that's not an addition of services as much as that is replacing and getting an adequate facility.
On, on the joint complex at the airport, would that be adding the ability to handle aircraft?
That's going to be a discussion with the city and us at the time. We are, we are prepared for that, and we're preparing for that potential option.
Okay, thank you.
And we have discussed it, though.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on that side of the changes coming to the ESD? And we're getting to ISO. So, so who is ISO? So you may see that on some of the commercial buildings, ISO certified 9001, these different ISO certifications. So they're a private company, and what they do is they gather data and they sell it to insurance companies to talk about effectiveness. And Ms. Howe, I guess y'all have had some communication with ISO on your building class, I didn't even know there was a building class. You know, I focus on the fire protection grading, or fire FPC, fire protection classification. So that's who ISO is, insurance companies use them, so they're a national company that has a division that rates fire departments' preparedness for structured fire response, and that's all they look at. How well can we respond to a structured fire? They're completely privately owned, they sell their information to the insurance industry. You'll hear some people say, well, not every insurance company uses ISO, so why do I care? They all use it to an extent. So State Farm has a different classification, but just so that they don't have to go buy the information from ISO, they go pull the ISO information, which is available online, and then they use their classification so they can tell their customers, you're being rated by this classification, which effectively almost mirrors ISO. So ISO is still the company. In the state of Texas, we're fortunate, the Texas Department of Insurance assigns an oversight officer, and they ensure the communities are treated fairly, but you got to get them So when that comes, so any concerns if, you know, ISO wants to pretend to be your friend, they want to tell you, how, oh, we're here to help you. Like, one of our departments was pretty excited, like, no, we just regraded two years ago, and they basically got a, a rating of no fire protection, and that was how much ISO helped them in that regrade.
Wow.
So, so they have a rating scale, on a scale of 1 to 10, 1 being the very best possible fire protection that you can have, and 10 being you have no fire department. 1 through 3 is strictly commercial ratings, so when you're, when you're at a 1 or a 4 for residential, you're getting the best insurance. But when you get to a 3 or better, now your commercial businesses, when you talk about economic development, they're starting to see a break, and it starts to be a shingle that you hang out in your community development, say, hey, we have an ISO class such and such fire department. So, kind of explain that. So they use it to set your insurance rates, your fire protection, your insurance rating is what, what the grades are being used for. So, it's broken down into, in different sections, and then the state of Texas gives a bonus section. So across the United States, everywhere but Texas, you can only earn up to 100 points, absolute best-case scenario. State of Texas turns around and throws 5.5 points available, and it becomes, and that becomes a big deal because you, you still only need the same number of points to obtain different class levels. So 5.5 points is over half of a class, so each class is worth 10 points. And then 10% of the grade comes from the dispatch center. Nothing you or I can do about that. This is going to be sheriff's department dispatch. 50% of the grade comes from the fire department, 100% my responsibility. I, I have to account for as many points within that section. 40% comes from water supply. This is where, for a city who has a water supply, this is your responsibility. So then, talk about state of Texas adds additional five points, risk reduction, community risk reduction, fire code adoption, and then enforcement along with the public safety education. So that gives you kind of where your classes end up, so 0 to 9, you're a 10, and so on. We want to get to, we want to get to at least a 6 right off the bat. 40% comes from water supply. This is where, for a city who has a water supply, this is your responsibility. So, then, talk about state of Texas adds additional 5 points, risk reduction, community risk reduction, fire code adoption, and then enforcement, along with the public safety education. So, that gives you kind of where your classes end up. So, 0 to 9, you're a 10, and so on. We want to get to, we want to get to at least a 6 right off the bat. Talk about how we're going to do that. So, as you can see, every 10 points, you improve a class. So, if you're at a 60, then you're a Class 4. But if you're at 67, you're still a Class 4. So, when you start playing the, and I'll call it the game of where can we earn points at? We have to look to see cost versus benefit, right? And does it make sense? My focus has always been, am I going to be able to provide a better fire response? I don't get into chasing it. But some of the stuff they have set up absolutely provides a higher level of fire response, and so we go after it. So, if there's no hydrants in an area, or we can't show that we can bring enough water to the scene, then the area is a Class 9, no matter what else we do. If we can't show a water supply, we can, and they go, well, you're a fire department, you don't need water, so you're a 9. And that's it. So, that becomes a challenge for a lot of our district. So, the city of Casterville, your current rating is a 7. Last time, and that's not your fault, only the fire department can request a grade. That's it. Only the city cannot come unless you own your own fire department. You can't go and say, hey, I want to be regraded for my fire protection class. Only a fire department can do that. So, this is bad, like, a 7 is really bad. No fault of the council or anything of your own at all, but we're going to fix it. So, your commercial buildings, not a great economic development tool. Residential, they're paying quite a bit higher for their insurance than they should be. Give you an idea of the rest of our response area, the city of Lacoste is a 5. But everywhere else within our 250 square miles is a 9. So, anything beyond five road miles of a fire station is a 10, no matter what we do. So, I can't, if I don't have a station within five road miles of a piece of property, they're 10. Can't change it. So, that was one of the reasons the station was built off the Tranco, so for those who are familiar with the growth coming in there. Right now, and still, as we talk tonight, all those homes, 6, 7, 800,000-dollar homes, are all a 10. And that's what really spurred this conversation with all the calls into the office, talking about, hey, why can't I get insurance over here? So, it's rough for them. So, whose responsibility? You know, I kind of touched on that, but it can be political, too. You know, you get into those battles, that's why I'm thrilled to have this line of communication and the idea to want to work together. The last ESD I had, we had a small city, very similar, and it was adversarial for a long time. And because they thought we were taking their money, you know, it's, oh, that's our money, we could just annex and do away with you. And we showed them the same thing, I can do it. You know, and they were smaller than you. And so, we want to all work together, because the taxpayers, they don't care. They don't care who, they just want emergency response, they want government that works for them, right? They don't want us battling. So, I'm thrilled to have this relationship start off on the right foot for me. So, in our situation, the Sheriff's Department has to ensure dispatch is operating appropriately. And we're working with them. And they've been soon-to-be judge-elect in Lux, he's currently the Emergency Management Director for the county. And so, we've had a great working relationship, and they are working on making sure that they're a side of the business. They're 10 points right off the bat. So, nothing else, if they're perfect, we're at least a 9 there, even if we do nothing else. So, the city must ensure they have a proper water supply available, and should make sure they adopt the fire code for, the most current fire code for commercial buildings.
So, let's speak with her real quick, because right now, I did verify, we are, I think, on an outdated code. In order to get a better rating, we'll need to adopt the 2018 fire code. So, that'll probably be something that, as a result of this discussion that Clint and I have had, Brianna and I will be bringing back to you all for consideration, is the adoption of the 2018 fire code, which is part of the IBC.
And remember, the fire code's for commercial buildings, right? You know, state of Texas doesn't, unless you have some type of ordinance, it's not for residential. It's for commercial building or, so fire code's different from building code, though. But on the fire code, it's for commercial buildings only.
Who's responsible to do, is it annual inspections, or what's the state's law?
So, the city would be the authority having jurisdiction.
Okay, so they would have to go in and do the inspection and that kind of stuff?
Correct.
And then, what about the fire suppression tests and everything?
All the codes, so if the city adopts a code, it's the city's responsibility. And we've talked about kind of the future, you know, as we grow, whether we end up with some type of division that does that, I don't know. You know, we, our district is growing. We're growing on that interesting line. So, we're 34 miles north to south, and we're growing east to west along that whole 34-mile stretch. So, you know, you move to the west, we don't have a lot of development. But, so it's a little bit of a challenge for us right now that we're working on. But it is the authority having jurisdiction.
Well, I want to be clear, so what we will do, would do, and what we currently do with our building code, and our fire code, and our plumbing code, and everything else, electrical code, that is all inspected through a third-party service, through Bureau Veritas. So, the city outsources that, that's part of the building fees. When someone applies for a permit, then it needs inspection. You know, we do get pushbacks sometimes, but why is this fee so much? Well, 95% of that is a pass-through cost. It's what Bureau Veritas charges us to go and do that inspection. So, that's what we do for the new construction. But as Clint alluded to, one of the things that we want to be able to do is offer ongoing inspections. And that could be an additional revenue source.
Because that's a state and federal requirement.
Right, so that could be a source of revenue for the ESD is kind of what we've talked about. But they are not in a position to start doing that. It would basically require a fire marshal-type position, and there isn't one at this stage. We would need to grow.
What about testing of the fire hydrants? Because I could tell you, we had a fire one time in my neighborhood, and they had to, they came to the fire hydrant in your front yard, and we were all guessing, does it work? Because you see the dip in the front yard? They've had water problems there. So, who's responsible for testing the fire hydrant? The city is. Because I've never seen.
Yeah, so that's actually something that we're also going to do as part of ISO. I'm not seeking the council's permission, because the cost is minimal to get it done.
Right.
There's a fee per hydrant.
Oh, yeah.
It's beneficial for us when we talk about CIP planning and looking at where we're going to spend our money on the water system. This is just one more piece of analytical data that the city will have, is what is our water pressures in certain areas? That is very, you know, informative on what we're looking.
And that's part of the disaster preparedness plan. That's why I've been asking, you know, and everything, because it ties in big time.
Well, I want to go back to what Clint said earlier, and complete, you know, candidness and truthfulness. This meeting happened because of the conversations you and I had, and because I was putting that expectation on Brian. So, Brian was the one, our former chief, was the one that scheduled the meeting. As you recall, it was me, you, and the chief that sat down initially, so.
Let me know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. You didn't touch on that one. That's exactly how our meeting started, when we were going in there to talk about emergency management and disaster preparedness.
And see, that's one of the jobs I did in the military, I'm certified, so that's why I was asking these questions.
They're honest.
So, thank you. You cracked the whip, we responded.
I don't crack the whip, I just ask the hard questions.
So, that's one way to city. And then, for the fire department, we have to ensure proper training and proper response to the scene. We have to send the right equipment. We have to show which, what our training has been.
How often do you have to exercise your plans to make sure, and your checklist and everything?
As far as, there's no requirement for disaster drills, right? There's no actual requirement for it. As we grow, we're going to start doing all of it. It's not something that, so right now, probably our first disaster drill that we're going to do involves a large commercial construction site taking place on 1957 and 471. And we've been in contact with them quite a bit. One thing you're going to see from me, you're going to start seeing me more at the council meetings, as we start to transition our system into a single provider. Right now, the ESD currently contracts to four volunteer fire departments and one paid EMS agency. And as we make this transition, it's going to be all the same people. We're just going to, we're going to correct that business model of that and bring it all up under one scope.
Okay.
Just basically streamline it.
Okay, I'll ask more questions later then.
On that vein, sorry, Clint, on that vein, something that I think I talked about, but just to remind, well, just to inform you and the rest of the council, one of the things that we've expressed interest in is doing a tabletop exercise. And, you know, you as council, I think I brought this up once before, there is FEMA Emergency Management Training, Emergency Preparedness Training, that the council has to go through. Now, the council, as a council, only has to go through like an hour or two, and you can do it in a special meeting. But the mayor, and myself, and the chief, and our police chief, will all have, we have to go through like an all-day tabletop exercise as part of what is required for emergency.
Well, you said you were going to pull me in on that, too.
Yes, we'd be stupid not to. So, yeah, we plan on including you as well. But that's something I've expressed interest in, we haven't scheduled yet, but it is on the radar to get done.
And that side is, you know, that's a history, you know, for me personally, not only do I, I do fire EMS, I've been involved, if you're familiar with Texas Task Force 1, they're a big FEMA urban search and rescue team.
I worked here, Katrina, Rita, all of that, I worked with.
I operate as a plans team manager for Texas Task Force 1. So, I go all over the country doing the actual disaster response. And so, be able to bring it back to the local sites fund, and we'll talk about that. The ICS classes, or MEMS classes, it started as ICS. And so, we'll get through that, we'll get you, it'll be kind of a slow transition, because it can become really overwhelming. But a lot of it is dependent upon some grants. So, if you don't, if you can't show the training, you're not eligible for certain grants. So, how do we improve it? So, having looked at all the challenges facing the district since our last grading, the last grading for your area was in the 90s. So, I spoke with ISO originally, we were going to go at this ourselves. And then, the more I spoke with ISO, the more I realized ISO really wasn't afraid of me. They really thought they were my friend, and they would just help us out, they were sure they could get us a 7 or 8. So, we're hiring a consultant, and he was in town this end of last week. Scott and I, and the mayor, we sat down with him for a while and talked about the process. And it's like hiring an attorney. So, when you go against ISO, they want to try to tell you that they're your friend, they're a private company. The lower your score is, the less money the insurance companies make, not a great deal for their client, so. So, how fast can we improve it? And that's really the big question, is a 7 is really bad, but you're still better than all the homes along the Tranco Road who are 10. You know, I talked to one homeowner, their insurance bill was $4,800 for that house.
Yeah, my little sister lives in Ladera, and she, oh, yeah.
It's rough. So, we've already requested a regrade. And because we believe that even without tremendous amount of improvement that we're going to make in the future, we believe we're better than a 7. And so, we've already requested a regrade, we're shooting for that regrade by the end of April. Like I said, we feel confident that we're going to see improvement, I feel really confident the city's going to see a good improvement. I can't guarantee you a number. I know the mayor's got some numbers, our consultant kind of gave him on potential savings. But we're confident that hopefully, we're going to know that number by the end of April, 1st of May. And it usually takes about a month, month and a half to get it across the system, where your insurance agents, whenever they go to regrade, or re-rate you, can see the new rating. And then, our plan is, once we receive that scoring, we're going to evaluate, can we get better? And what can we do? What, you know, if we have a good return on, where we can lower our score? And we talked about earlier, being a 10 block. So, if we're sitting at a 71, there may not be anything we can do to gain nine more points. But if we're sitting at a 67, 68, then we're confident we can improve to that next class. But we won't know that until we get through this first regrade, and we've already requested it, so. So, that's kind of my spill on what's going, what we're doing. There's my contact information, and that is my, that's myself. Any questions? You know, I answer almost 24 hours a day, except for if I'm sitting in the office, it doesn't seem to ring, but I'll see a missed call. I will return the call. And then, that's my email address. So, any other questions from council?
I think probably right, so Marvin, you're president of the ESD, right? And who are your other, you got two other board members?
Oh, there's five, it's Bobby Hitzfelder, Tom Page, Terry Beck, and Pat Mathis from Michael. You know Tom Page, right? He's from Rio Dana.
Yeah, I know him.
By Michael, and then Terry Beck, you know, Terry Beck.
Are those all voted on by district?
No, they're appointed by commissioners' court.
Okay.
We're all appointed.
You're all appointed by commission court. On an ESD, they are the only ESD members in the state that are elected or in populous counties. I think there's like six, so Harris County, Tarrant County, Bear County, those are populous counties. So, those ESD board members have to run, just like a school district. So, in the less populous counties, they're appointed by commission court.
Scott, I have a question. Okay, who, for city employees, would be doing the inspections? And how trained are they on it?
For which inspections?
For the fire inspections of our commercial buildings, our hydrants, and everything like that.
So, we aren't doing that. There isn't anybody doing it.
I understand, but what are we going to do to get, select who it is and get them trained?
So, going forward, I think we're going to outsource all of that. So, we're outsourcing the new building inspection already. That goes to Bureau Veritas. I want to outsource the ongoing inspections of the buildings to ESD when they're ready to do that. They aren't ready at this time, but I know that's something that the ESD board and Clint are looking at doing. So, as soon as they can get ready, we could do that. Bureau Veritas may be available to do that, but it would be, it's just, that's a policy, that's something we need to set up. Because we aren't going to do it for free, we need, at least I would expect you wouldn't. We need to set a fee schedule and determine how much Bureau Veritas might be able to provide that service, but I'm just not sure, I have to look out. And then, as far as the testing is concerned, we're doing the, we're outsourcing that right now to get all the hydrants tested. And I'll have to talk to Clint about how often those have to be tested and maintained. I think.
Five years of the ISO requirement. My last part, we did on my annual, but five years. Right now, the fire department's not in the play, in the position. That will likely change in the future, but right now, we're just not in the position to do the hydrant testing in-house yet.
In the city, other cities I've worked in, the fire department did it for us. But it's a little different when you have a career fire department.
Right.
When you've got volunteers, it really, I don't think it's fair to ask them to do that on our behalf. So, I know that's also been a point of contention in the past between the city and the fire department. And I don't, I think it's silly, I don't want us to go down that road. So, like I said, at this stage, we're outsourcing it just to get it done for the ISO purposes. But going forward, we're going to talk about how we can make that happen, whether we continue to pay a subcontractor, or whether, if they end up having career folks locally, whether those career folks can be trained up to do it. Because my preference would be that the fire department, because here's the thing, the hydrants, the people, it's like a tool or anything else. The people who are closest to doing the work, which is your firemen, I think they are, they gain, they're the ones that gain the most by understanding what the water pressures are, and, you know, making sure that the hydrants are painted the right color, and just being able to communicate with one another, hey, you know, we got a fire at this structure at this block, and by the way, we know the pressures are pretty low there, make sure your tanks are full before we go, you know, that sort of thing. Because, again, they're the ones that are on the ground, their lives are the ones that really depend on it. So, I think putting that responsibility closest to the people actually using it makes the most sense. But we're not in a position to do that now, and I think it's unfair to ask that of them. But it is something that Clint and I have kind of targeted as a future state of being.
Okay, I'm asking because, you know how it is, whenever you go through for an inspection and everything, they want to see what your game plan is for a get well. And I'm just making sure we got it documented, this is our get well plan. That way, when ISO comes, you know, they're like, oh, okay, you've got a plan in place, just like everything else, got to have a plan, a get well plan. So, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Like I said, I planned, you know, this is going to be my home, I haven't bought a house yet.
You better hurry.
Hurry up and do that.
River bless.
Good luck. Good luck.
Yeah, exactly.
Tranco Ranch.
I wonder if the city's going to contribute tomorrow. Now, we appreciate it. Now, yeah, thank you all for letting me along a little bit. And I hope to, I do plan to come to more meetings as I start to get data that I can share with you. But right now, I just don't have the data.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just so the folks that are watching understand what that process looks like, after they go through this, the insurance company, after the ISO provides the rating, the insurance companies will do it on your re-up, when you renew your policy or when you start a new policy. They won't go back and retroactively change it, but the next time.
They'll get a refund.
Yeah, we'll get a refund.
Policy, answer your policy and, you know.
That is something that I think, once we get the new rating, we do want to publicize and make sure people are aware of that. Because I would proactively contact my insurance agent and let them know, hey, I've got a better ISO rating, and I want to see that reflected.
Refund what you've already paid, then issue a new policy.
They potentially can do that, yeah.
And I just want to express my appreciation for the ESD. Marvin and a group of folks had the foresight to get this thing going years ago, and we're all benefiting from it. And just, you continue to make it better, so thank you for doing that. Thanks for bringing him on.
Thank you all.
Thank you for working together. The key is working together.
Absolutely.
So, we're glad to have you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
All right, sorry.
Sorry.
One of my.
It's one of my big. No, it's okay.
That's in my wheelhouse.
It's good.
All right, next item is presentation and acceptance of the 2021 annual audit report. We've got Kim Roach from CPA Armstrong, Von and Associates PC.
Well, gosh, feels like that's going to be difficult to follow.
He got applause.
I know, I know. Now, I'm hoping to be able to give you all some equally good information and hopefully answer any other questions that you all may have. Can y'all hear me okay? I know before that microphone was not working great. So I do want to say first and foremost, just a huge thank you to staff. As always, they, they make our lives as easy as possible for auditors. And truly, the turnover that has been in the city's history, it is so nice to have a lot of consistent positions now. It makes our lives a lot easier and it certainly improves the internal controls within the city. We did issue again this year for the year ended September 30th, 2021. We issued an unmodified opinion again. That does mean essentially that the financial statements prepared internally were materially correct. However, there were some very routine type of audit adjustments that were made as part of our procedures. Some of those significant in amount, but not necessarily significant in concern as far as any kind of correction of an error. It's just a very common type of year-end adjustment. Was for specifically within your utility and your airport funds, because those are not treated as true governmental type activities, they're treated like business-type activities, then what that means is all of the capital outlay should actually be recorded as a balance sheet item instead of an expense. So we made those adjustments. That also means though, that the depreciation, that non-cash aspect of those capital assets would need to be recorded. Similarly, on all your long-term debt, which of course, again, is primarily in your business-type activities, both utility and some in the airport, then all of those principal payments should not be expenses, since they are business-like. They should all be a reduction of the balance sheet liability itself. So we made some of those adjustments. And one other infrequent type of adjustment, but just because of the timing of what happened, this is common across the industry for this year, is that due to the American Rescue Plan Act funds that were received just before year end, we had deferred all of that. So it is not included in your 2021, or excuse me, your FY21 revenues, as those funds really had not had a chance to be spent yet. They'll be recognized as grant revenue once those funds are spent in future years. And additionally, you'll have additional funds come in for FY22 that will add to that. So basically, it's just saying that we anticipate you already having that grant revenue in future FY22 or forward years. So those were some of the significant or the large dollar adjustments that we made. We did find a couple of compliance issues with the Public Funds Investment Act, but they were all very minor and they've all been corrected prior to today's meeting. In fact, actually, they were corrected prior to the audit being completely issued and finalized. We also had a couple of other recommendations, just more from an operational standpoint that we discussed with management. The main one I wanted to just kind of touch on with you all, just to see if you have any questions, because I know it's been a topic in the past, and I think there could be some confusion related to it. But we've made the recommendation for management to consider and for you all to consider possibly moving to a pooled cash system. If you have the software available to do it, my biggest hesitation in the past for you all had been the turnover in management. If you didn't have the proper people in place, then it could be very misused and very caused confusion and errors. But with consistency, I think it could actually help operationally. It would cut down on a lot of the day-to-day activities that are being repeated and redundant. It would cut down on your bank reconciliations. And it actually may help improve just the likelihood that errors could occur because you have so many bank accounts at this point. So it's certainly not anything that you're doing wrong. It's just something that you could consider. But I do want to pause there in case there are any questions about pooled cash, as again, I know that's been historically kind of an up and down discussion point.
Yeah, I think we can find some great efficiencies as long as the, as long as it can be tracked properly, so.
Absolutely.
Have we got any estimates of what it would cost us to implement the pooled cash capability in ENCODE?
I don't believe it would cost anything. I think ENCODE's already set up and ready to go. It's just a matter of making some of those adjustments as far as the way that the system's currently operating.
And I think that that's something that we would look to, Scott, for recommendations on when is the staff ready to do that, because it's, even if it's a positive change, it's still a change and there's always a cost to doing something like that. So I think that's, as soon as it's practical.
So I wanted to, one of the things that came up earlier was just how we, the CIP adoption and when we do a budget amendment. And we typically, I think you and Leroy have talked about it some. Leroy's actually not feeling well, was not here today, but please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the decision you all came to is just do like a once-a-year budget amendment around the time we're adopting the new budget. And the CIP expenditures, just as you explained earlier, those may not constitute a budget amendment. Is that correct? Because they're from those bonded funds and they're going to be carrying over year to year?
That's correct. So generally, large capital projects are usually built in on a project-based budget as opposed to an annual budget, which also allows for the convenience of not having to do a budget by year, because a lot of times those are not going to be a one-year type of project. They are going to span multiple years or start in one year, complete in another year. So it's meant to be an efficiency on your end and also be able to better track it for over the course of the project rather than what happened in this particular 12 months.
And so that's one of the things that you and I were talking about earlier this afternoon. So as we get closer to the budget, that'll be something that I, I'll talk to you more about before, prior to doing a budget retreat with the council, just to better understand. But we, one of our goals will be to do, just as we did last year, and show you kind of an operations budget. So regardless of what we're doing from a capital investment standpoint, you will, as policymakers, be able to see, here's the cost of operating the city without looking at capital. And then unlike what we did last year, we'll actually, because we've gone through the CIP process, we'll actually be able to reflect what we anticipate spending during the year on capital-related projects that will fall into this, this capital plan. And that in effect is what you've adopted in that CIP. Even though some of those projects we're still defining or bringing to you, like you'll see tonight about the sports lighting program, as you approve those, you're actually approving them as part of that capital plan that you've adopted. So, fair? Okay.
All right. Well, I would certainly be remiss if I didn't touch on some numbers. So if you have your audit reports there in front of you, I want to turn to page 13 and 14. And I try to keep this as summarized as possible, just for the sake of time tonight. So this particular statement is the entire city as a whole. And so it has taken your general fund and some of those governmental type of funds and it's transformed them as if they were also treated like a business. So this is meant to be more of like a business look. So it has all of your long-term assets. It has all of your long-term debt, regardless of how the city actually functions and operates and budgets on an annual cycle. And so it also gives you an opportunity to look at the entire city as a whole. So your governmental activities in that first column there are going to represent your general fund, your debt service funds, and all your special revenue funds. The business-type activities is going to be your utility as well as all utility-related type of funds, including your impact fees, your water acquisition fees. And it's also going to include the airport fund in that particular column. So if you'll notice there towards the, towards the middle, on page 13, the city's total assets between governmental and business-type activities was $43.4 million as of September 30th. About 65% of this represents your buildings, equipment, infrastructure, and your water system. Looking over onto page 14, you can see that you had total liabilities. And again, this includes all of your long-term liabilities of only $16.6 million. And that, of course, would be prior to the new bonds that I know you've issued after the year end. But as of September 30th, that includes all of the existing bonds and debt that you had with, for instance, the Water Development Board, as well as your Series 2012 GO bonds. So after all those liabilities, you can see that your net position was actually about $26.9 million, of which 8.9 was considered a positive unrestricted net position. So that just means it's available for any general spending. And that is actually up from the previous year. Your total net position is up from the prior year by 1.4 million. So a pretty nice increase just in one year. Again, this has been converted to a business type, so it's not necessarily based on a cash basis. It's got a lot of non-cash related adjustments in it. But, but as far as just on a business side of that, just to see a positive unrestricted net position is a positive sign. Any questions on that?
I know something that we're working on is providing, Scott and I were talking about providing some graphs that kind of frame this up. I know that when I first started looking at the budget, it was overwhelming to me just because there are so many different things that are a little bit different than, than the way you would typically work with like a business, the kind of budgets that I was used to seeing. So we're working to set it up. One of the things that Scott's done that I think is incredibly beneficial is separating out the operating and maintenance from the capital improvements so that you can see how much it actually costs to run the city before you do any of the special projects. So we'll work on doing that. But I was really encouraged to see the positive fund balance that we still need to address. But, you know, we're in a really solid financial state. So thank you for the detail on this.
Yes, sir. And again, part of the reason why I bring up having that positive unrestricted net position is because when you're considering a lot of future debt that is going to have future tax dollars coming in and future utility revenues coming in to help pay for that debt, then the fact that you essentially already could, you know, if you wanted to pay early, you technically have the funds on hand available and yet you know you have future revenues coming in.
Yeah, that was, that was part of the analysis that Schneider did and we looked at. And Samco Capital, which is our financial advisor, I wanted to show this to them on the screen. This is what Leroy has prepared that you guys have talked about in the past. So if I bring those up, are you able to walk them through where those numbers come from?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, that's actually right where I'm going next to.
Okay, well, I kind of heard that direction. What we're discussing is the fund balances and a little bit I talked about. We were talking about, I'm going to show the whole council, by the way.
Great, thank you.
To all seats.
So certainly the statement I started with, like I said, that was the city as a whole. But that's why I said that was perfect segue, because now, rather than looking at the whole city, now let's move to just looking at just the general fund. So if you will turn over to page 17 in the audit report, and I will all try to tie what you're looking at on the screen as well to the audit report. So now, this particular statement on page 17 is looking at just the general fund in the first column. All of your special revenue and debt service funds are all going to be in that second column that says other non-major, sorry, second column on the, on the report as posted on the screen. And so I just wanted to call attention to those. So you do have a lot of non-major funds, but because of the dollar of them not rising to the level of significant, I'm going to just focus on the general fund for now. So within the general fund, you had 4.4 million worth of total assets.
What we're showing is cash and investments. We're getting here at 6,000.
Okay, that, that may have been prior to audit adjustments, because I know I showed here a 4.1 million of cash.
Yeah, the book says 4,000.
Yeah. I think it's 3 or 6 after the mayor and I talked for a bit.
So of that total cash, or of your total assets being so much in cash and investments, and even your other receivables are extremely liquid, the largest receivable you have being just a timing issue of the state sales tax coming in two months essentially late, but it's coming in each month, but it's in arrears. Within your general fund, you had liabilities of only $623,000. And of those total liabilities, really the majority of it is, again, what I mentioned before of the ARCA funds, that American Rescue Plan Act funds coming in just before year end. So they're included in your cash. But we've shown them as a liability because essentially they're going to be future revenue. So that's why they're called unearned revenue in the audit report. And so overall, that leaves your fund balance for the general fund at 3.8 million. Hopefully that ties into there. Maybe not so much.
No, it's okay.
And so when I, when I took your general fund operating expenditures, I removed out the capital outlay, came up with an estimate. And so the general fund balance that you had on hand at September 30 was 12.8 months, which the GFOA usually recommend about two to five. So you can see y'all are in a very healthy, liquid position there within the general fund. Sorry, trying to work that in.
I'm going to send this to you all afterwards. You'll have updated. We had done this when I first got here. Leroy and Kim worked together to kind of all the way back to 2011. So we've done the same calculus, if you will, based on audited numbers from 2011 to 2021. And these last two tabs are last year and then this year. That's where that 389 days comes from.
And then, and the nice thing about the general fund is that realistically, the way you operate in the budget for the general fund is so much on a cash basis, that a lot of times it really should be pretty, pretty easy to follow as far as your internal statements that you get regularly from finance. And so the main places where it gets really kind of, and I don't want to say messy as in a bad way, but just confusing as far as there's a lot of non-cash and cash and everything happening is more in the business-type activity. So again, in the utility and in the airport. So I am going to definitely touch on those a little bit more here in just a minute. Any questions as far as the general fund cash and fund balance there? Well, looking at the general fund's revenue and expenditures, now unfortunately, within your audit reports, I'm going to make you do some flipping. If you'll go to page 55 and 56, and then you may recall from previous years, I'm going to have you flip back to the front. I would really reorganize this audit in a different way if I could, but unfortunately, we have guidelines we have to follow. Okay, so looking at the general fund, comparing the budget to actual, so you can see here, of course, your original and final budget in the first two columns. Your bolded column down the center there is your actual numbers for the year, as well as your favorable or unfavorable variance just to the right. And then you even have the 2020 comparative totals just there so that you can kind of touch base to prior year as well. So you can see that your revenues of 3.5 million did exceed your final budgeted figures by 585,000, so positive variance compared to your final budget. The main places that was impacting your positive variances there were sales tax of about 213,000. Your CARES Act money that you received, that was essentially that first federal fund being related to COVID, that was about 137,000, as well as the RV part came in about 50,000 over budget. So those were your main positive variances in the revenue. It's also the same reasons as to why your revenues for this year exceeded 2020 by about 573,000. So very nice increases there across the revenue. When looking at your expenditures, your total expenditures in the general fund, 3.7 million, were also a positive variance because they fell under the final budget number by 444,000. The only departments that actually exceeded budget individually were the streets, RV parts, and the pool. But all of those related directly to engineering fees, utilities, as well as part-time wages. So all very variable type things, the more revenue they were bringing in, the more usage and expenditures they were also taking up. So those are the only items that exceeded budget individually. But again, the city overall stayed within budget. And even though your expenditures did increase from the prior year by about 628,000 there, you can see about 386,000 of that was related to payroll and all payroll-related items such as insurance, retirement taxes, and so on. And a lot of that just simply came from having a fully staffed, or more fully staffed than some of your previous years. Going to the top of page 56, you can see that after your transfers that come in from the utility fund, even though you would have had an operating loss, those transfers essentially helped cover some of the costs of those expenditures in the general fund. So overall, your general fund balance did increase from the prior year by 673,000. Any questions over that? That was actually about a million higher than what you'd anticipated since you were budgeting to have a deficit to the general fund and it ended up having such a large positive. Always my favorite part to be able to come and tell you good news. Any questions on general fund? Promise I'm, I'm almost done. If you'll flip back with me now, just going to touch on utility and airport, and then I'm just going to touch on utility and airport, and then I'm going to wrap up. So if you will go back to page 22 and 23. So I know this may seem a little bit like a repeat, but now you can see these two funds broken down individually. But again, as I stated at the very beginning, utility and airport always get presented like a business. So these are going to be much like those first set of numbers we were looking at. So I'm going to try to touch on both of them at the same time and just kind of work my way down the page. So I'm looking at total assets on page 22, towards the middle there. Total assets in the utility fund were about 28.5 million. In airport, about 8.1 million. Turning over to the next page, you can see your total liabilities. And again, that's including all of the remaining principal payments on the water development ordered loans. In the utility fund, you see you have total liabilities of 14.7 million. In the airport, you had a total liability of 328,000. And that leaves you with a net position in utility of 13.8 million and 7.8 million in airport. Any questions on any of that? Again, both of those having positive unrestricted net position is always a positive sign there. Again, because you do, you are looking at future debt without seeing really that offsetting future revenue. Then the last statement I want to touch on is on the next page, on page 24. And hopefully, this is also kind of tying back into some of the calculations that I know Scott and Leroy have been trying to work on to provide to you. So if you look again, on as far as your revenues and expenses, again, I'm going to do kind of utility and airport, working our way down. But I'm actually going to go ahead and jump to about two-thirds down the page. So after all your revenues and your operating-related expenses, so those are your O and M type expenses, you can see your utility had a net income of 1.7 million. So your your revenues coming in far exceed your operating expenses. Now, the first thought there may be, well, then why are the rates being set what they are? So I just wanted to point out that of that 1.7 positive net income, the first set of 874,000 went to the general fund, which is why we saw that positive change in fund balance on the general fund side. The next piece that I wanted to bring up is one thing again, that the city would budget as but is not presented here, is all of those principal payments on your long-term debt do not show up on this particular statement as expenses. Since those are reductions of your liability, that was another 840,000. So if you really take that piece into account and you say, okay, well, then of this 1.7 million positive net income, that's basically the two aspects where it's going. It's going partly to general fund, and it's going partly to pay that long-term debt. And you really are pretty close to breaking even there. Now, those operating expenses did also include a non-cash aspect of the depreciation on all your water system and all of your capital assets that had previously been capitalized. So that there is some non-cash aspect in here. I just want to be sure and point that out. Similarly, in the airport fund, you can see down there, again, about two-thirds down the page, you can see a net loss of 241,000. And so that may seem like the airport was a drain on city. But again, really of that $241,000 loss, of that 246,000 of it was depreciation, which is a non-cash type of item. So really, the airport also is really breaking even as far as its cash flow operations. Additionally, below that, you can see that the airport fund also did have some transfers. And additionally, it also had some additions added to your capital assets that were at no cost to the city because they were actually being funded through text dot. And so this was, there's a 9010 project, of course, for the runway improvements. So this was essentially text dot's 90% portion, that 15,000, as to what had been recognized since September 30. So certainly going forward, as that project continues to continue, then I would assume in FY '22, that number will be even higher. And so again, what that's doing is it's adding to the airport's capital assets, which is going to be more maintenance and going to be more depreciation, the maintenance being a direct cash outflow to the city, the depreciation being a non-cash outflow. Any questions on, I know I've covered a lot of information, but I'm happy to try to talk out anything else that you may have questions on.
No, you covered it well.
Yes, thank you.
Depreciation is just a book injury.
Yes, sir, it is.
But as a business goes, because it's depreciating, it's not like you need to replace it.
Correct.
You should kind of keep that in mind also, right?
Right.
So a business would try to make its profit to offset those depreciated losses, right?
That's right. And that's sort of the whole point is that certainly as a government, you're operating much more on a cash flow basis typically. So when you know you need new vehicles or new additions to the system, then you're basically having to pay that cash outright unless it's something that you are going to fund through a long-term financing project. But for a business, they really don't want to see the hit of that in the year that they pay for that vehicle, for example, and so that's being depreciated out over time so as to balance out the impact of that cash outflow.
I have one comment I'd like to make.
Yes, sir.
I think the report says to me that the whole city staff deserves kudo for a job well done again this year. I see Leroy's not here tonight, but all of his staff and everybody that participated, this is a very good reflection on the work you've done. And I'm very grateful for all the work that you have done. Thank you for the report.
Yes, sir. And if I may add to that, I do know you all went out for proposals this last year, and we were able and happy to lower our fee. And the reason for that is because of the fact that you have had a steady finance department specifically, as well as in other areas of the city, but the finance department, of course, being the main department that we're focused in on. And so that was the reason we were able to lower our audit fees very much.
Because you know who's answering the phone when you call.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Get your clock.
And as Scott sends this out, just one of the things that we've been going over is just making sure that we understand where do we stand versus past years. And looking back for 10 years and saying, from 10 years ago till now, are we in a better position or in a worse position? And financially, we're in a better position. We're also doing a lot of extra things, and it's because of the commitment and the partnership that we've got within the city. So there's a lot going on, but I think that staff is doing a great job of keeping up with it. So Herb, thank you. I totally agree with that. All right. Next item is discussion and appropriate action on adopting the Parks Master Plan.
This is, we haven't been saying the time. This is 6:25, all right? You haven't been marking the time, Mayor. It's yeah, 6:24.
Now, I know that Patrick, for sure, has spent so much time on this. Herb has really leaned in over the, Councilman Dyer's leaned in over the last few weeks, really working with with Patrick and trying to get this going. I know that there are some components of this that are still missing, which would be, and this is what Councilman Dyer has pointed out, some components of this that are that are still missing in terms of things that are actionable and things that can actually be accomplished. So I think that that's something good to work toward. But if you look at the purpose, overall purpose of the Parks Master Plan, it's really to set an overall vision as we as we move forward. One of the reasons that Devin had put this together, he said, you know, we, there's a lot of stuff that we can go out for, a lot of funds that are available through through other governmental institutions, through private funding. But to get a lot of those funds, you really have to have your plan together and show how it meets with that plan. And so having this together is, it was a monumental undertaking in the midst of COVID, in the midst of not being able to actually reach out as they normally could have. They went to Extreme Links to make sure that they were getting input from folks on this. So did you want to?
I don't have anything else to add. When they did the presentation, yeah, I don't want to repeat everything, but I just, I think Patrick, you know, deserves volunteer of the decade on some level for this Herculean task. It's a lot of effort. It's a lot of work. Yeah, I think, you know, from an administrator's standpoint, the thing that's, because there's two, there's a policy aspect. There's also, and there's a visioning aspect, but there's also kind of the to-do list. And the appendix that has the list of projects that kind of support the overall vision are where I think we're going to see the most traction as we carry the CIP forward. The lighting project we'll discuss tonight is, I'll talk about where we can find that, but I did verify, is in the CIP. It was in, it was in the sheets behind, in the CIP document that y'all were given. And then it's also in the Excel list under sports fields. It's a lighting project. But again, having those identified, having gone through and really thought about, okay, and maybe even compromised in some areas about things that, on different issues as far as a project is concerned, having that list and have it vetted by a community group, I think should give all of us, especially policymakers, some level of comfort that as we make investments, we're putting those in the areas that really maximize the community's benefit.
I have one question I forgot to ask the other day, other night at the meeting, Patrick. If you all haven't heard, September Square and Houston Square are Texas historical landmarks. So anything dealing with them has to go through the Historic Landmark Commission, correct? So anything regarding them here in the plan, will that have to shift over to the Texas landmark, the Historical Landmark Commission for their approval or?
There's not, there's not anything that's in there.
Okay, I was just.
Well, I need to, just for my own benefit and education, I need to understand, better understand what that means. So is all of Houston Square historic landmark, is everything in it as it presently exists a landmark? The same with September Square?
Yes.
Because I know there have been additions.
Yes, the holes.
Okay, so when was that designation given and what was there when it was given?
1969.
So in six, since 69, so since 69, we know there have been improvements within September Square.
Yes, and they have always gone through. We just, I mean, this just hit us this time with.
How dare you?
And for September Square, it's a military, it's a military monument.
I've heard you say that. Again, I push back as strongly as I can to, I want to see where that's documented. I want to understand, not because I don't believe it, because I think it's important that we, for the record, have that identified and know where to go and say, okay, this is what it is.
Yeah.
Because, you know, anecdotally, I get told a lot of things. But September Square, if it was in 1968, but this is my point, in 68 or 69, if it was a historic landmark, what about it was historic and what about it was a landmark and what can and can't be touched or changed? Because we know changes have taken place. And I know the HLC is considering all this. You're going to have a fun meeting, an exciting meeting on March 29th, where you're going to start taking on standards and that kind of thing. So.
I don't believe in the, in the 69 survey, which brought about our 96 structures that we oversee with the state and with the national, okay, register, it wasn't designated specifically as a military.
Monument.
But because first thing there was not from the military.
Correct.
First thing there was from our forefathers that established.
It was like a founder's park.
It was like a founder's park, exactly. Over time, it has become, I think the community mind, that that's what it is now. I mean, a lot of people look at it and say, now that's what we're going to try and flesh out, starting with this meeting on the 29th. We've got six organizations around coming in, supposed to be giving us information on what they think needs to happen. And if the change of the RPE.
Yeah, the Legion will have someone there.
To give us ideas on what we should do or what we shouldn't do. Houston Square, I think is going to be much different than September Square because that's our, in the historic district event area. And I think it needs to be, just my opinion, needs to be pretty different from what we established for September Square. But that's the kind of input I'm hoping that I get from.
Well, and I want to be clear. I mean, that's just the great thing about our democratic, you know, elected government that we that we all participate in is you have the power to establish those things. But I want to, if it needs to be established, we need to clarify whether it needs to be established. So to say that it's got this military designation, if we can't, if the staff can't prove that, then for instance, it doesn't exist. But the good news is it can exist. And if it's something that this council desires to impose upon September Square and say, this is what we want, not just now, but for in the future, then you are empowered with that ability to do that. And we just need to know whether that is the case or isn't. And that's part of what that March 29th meeting will be. So whatever comes out of that, that discussion, we'll be coming back to the council for consideration.
But we now know that if anybody wants to do something right now, it has to come to HLC, whether we have guidelines or no guidelines.
Right.
We need to get it.
Right. And just for clarity, there's two types of structures in there. One type of structure designated by the state, given those responsibilities to the city, or those structures that come under the HLC. As we know, the houses and the properties on the survey, there are other properties that are kicked up to Austin itself, the HLC. For instance, St. Louis Church. Our HLC approved the change of the roof there. The Texas Historic Commission, Austin, said, no, you can't do that. And they requested the church elevated to repair. So there's two types of historic properties. And usually, the difference is if you see the round thing above the historic marker.
We have five of those in town.
And the park does not one of those, though. Right. So Austin doesn't overlook that. It's just that the state has designated the city to be responsible for those.
The same with Houston Square. We have markers on Houston Square.
Right.
It's the same thing in Houston Square. The only five that are covered is the church, Father de Guad's house across from the church, the little church, the Haller House, and I'm a seal weld, the Courrier Tier Sheriff Art Seals' house. Those are the five that have to go to THC before they go to HLC.
Is there anything in the Parks Master Plan that, I guess, that violates the procedures that would have to go through? Or, because I think that it's more a visionary kind of thing than it is like direct instructions.
For Houston Square, the only recommendation would be for the downtown stakeholders to reactivate and get citizens to interact with what they want to do in Houston Square. Making that story clear between time block house and downtown and September Square.
Well, we have some minor stuff. But the lighting, we have lighting for September Square and Houston Square, pathway work, it's just on, it's just work on stuff that's there in the master plan until we get further information on what people want.
But our process and work, we moved it up. We came to the park board.
Yep.
And it's moving up the line. It would be the same thing. Somebody wants to do something in September Square, the park board will refer to it, Historic Commission.
So this isn't a process document as much it is a visionary.
I'd like to focus on what the agenda item is for a minute because I think all this discussion you've been having isn't what we need to decide tonight. It says we're supposed to discuss and decide what action we're going to take with this report. And this report reflects a great deal of work, and it was done by a lot of people, and it's going to be very helpful to the city. But the five council members up here are the customer. And this report, as it's written right now, doesn't give us all the tools we need to build a capital plan and budgets for future years to get these things done. It's in here, but it's in here somewhere. And it's in a lot of places. And unfortunately, this report was written in a proprietary software that we can't do anything with. We can't change anything. We can't take the report apart and repackage it and try to use it to make it, make us, help us to build the budget in the future years. But the information is in there. And that's what's important. So now the challenge for us is to take this vision and the other visions that exist in the capital improvement plan and meld them together. Because right now, this report doesn't look at the whole city. There's a lot of city on the other side of the river that's not even mentioned in this report. And in the next 10 years, we have to deal with the whole city, all the parks. So I think the council is in for a little bit of work to take this report and parse it out so we can figure out what do we need first, second, third, fourth, fifth? It's all in here, but it's not in a way that tells us that because there's many other things besides what are in this report. And so I applaud everybody that's worked on it. I regret the fact that unfortunately, we can't manipulate the report. Patrick and I have talked at great length about it, but we both agree. Patrick and I have talked at great length about it, but we both agree, there's a lot of great information in here, we just got to parse it out. And I think, you know, if, if we can spend a little bit of time as we start building the Capital Improvement Plan and we focus on prioritizing, just like Scott said, the lights that we're going to vote on tonight, they're in here, but if, I challenge you to go in there and show me clearly where it says it's the number one project for Parks and Rec, because it doesn't say that. It says it's in there.
And I don't think that that's really, the intent of the master plan is to give us guidance, so from here, we've got to take it and, and put it into that CIP.
Exactly.
And that's something that you've been working really hard on.
That's the point that I'm trying to make, right. We have to put that process, we have to finish it, because I don't think, I mean, I agree that, I recommend to my council members, that my fellow council members, we have to adopt this plan, because we can't change it. That's the point that Patrick made to me.
We actually can.
Well.
I know, let's think about software.
Well, we can take it and use it, and then we can go build the CIP. And I, I think we can get that done.
You know something about software?
A little bit, yeah. So the point is that I, I think that if there's anything that we need to modify right now, I personally don't have a problem with approving the, the master plan, the way that they put it together, understanding that we have to go back through and modify it, and just like in budget, any master plan, any vision, you have to modify it as you find errors, omissions, changes, new ideas, but I think that what has been put together here is a really, really strong foundation. And I think that one of the reasons that it's like that is because they took the master plans from, from previous years. We have a lot of time and effort that's gone into this over decades. And so is there anything in here, Councilman Dyer, that you feel is off-base? Anything that you feel is incorrect, or are they, there's just modifications you believe?
I think there's a lot of omissions.
Okay.
I don't have any issues with what's in here, because you've done a good job of trying to give us your recommendations for prioritizing, but I think there are many omissions that we have to meld in here and then prioritize them all to get them into the correct years.
Absolutely.
But I think it's, no, I don't take, I don't take objection to anything that's in here.
Okay.
But it's not complete.
I know you've spent a lot of time on this, so.
I've spent a lot of time on this. So has Patrick.
Yes. All right, any other questions, comments?
Well, as a concept, I, I don't, I don't mind approving it as a concept, but like the numbers are way off the target.
For example?
For example, they mentioned about the building that they want to build at the regional park, and it's half a million dollars here, but I understand right now talking to Scott that.
That's our contribution, though.
That would only be our contribution.
That's just our contribution. We know it's going to be more expensive than that, but.
Over a million dollars.
Yeah.
So it won't even become part of this unless you have a footnote that would say that this is, you know, it's going to be one point two million, and so the rest would come as a drag, and then give that, but the way it's presented here is it's going to be, it's just going to cost half a million dollars. So if, if we remember all this stuff, which we won't, but as a concept plan, for instance, I personally don't think we need to care down this building. I want, like Herb says, I want to go look at the building and new facility somewhere. And to dump money like that into something that we know is going to move, it would be maybe something we really need to sit down and reflect. But as a food for thought, I don't mind approving it, but I don't approve it that this is going to be directly put into a CIP type thing, which is just a concept.
Any number that we put down right now is going to be wrong, it's a matter of how wrong it is. But again, I think that it's some of these details that it would be prudent to go through and make notes on it. And I know that, that Councilman Dyer's spent a lot of time sitting down with, with Patrick in actually documenting these things. So I think that this is something that would be great to continue to dig through this and find where these anomalies are, let's make the modifications, but.
Well, like these things you're talking about, have, is the document, have it, maybe been updated in that document, because the only one we have so far is one that was set on right.
No, that's what he was saying, this is written in a publishing software that we don't have a license to, and so we either would have to get a license to it, or we would have to pay somebody to make the modification. That's the way that it was presented to us. But you can handwrite, you can make notes, you can document the page number and say, these are the modifications I feel like we should, and so after we compile that, we can go back through and modify it.
And that can be done over time.
Mayor Patrick has a question.
Okay.
This document can be changed in a PDF, can be changed in a PDF, can be changed into Amazon, if somebody knows how to code that.
Yep.
But anyhow, we're going to make it to the end. Like you said, from the time we started till today, we started off with no money, we had no idea what it was, and then all of a sudden, how, for five hundred dollars, we had to make a buck out of the pool. And we just knew numbers were all basically, we didn't know, we didn't know the one that needed to do something, and we figured out, basically, it would be that one. All this is going to change every year, and that's part of the recommendation in the normal pantheon is to set aside staff time, or vehicle, park board, city update, the CP, I guess, as it goes through, each one of that, all our idea, and we modify it. We can modify it and I can set it up, right? What kind of guy, the guy that does the inside stuff, can change, and decide next and then do broadcast, we get it online.
Yep.
Do a PDF, it seems true.
So I guess that's kind of what I was saying earlier, like, for instance, if we approve something here, it's not going to be what we're going to approve with what Herb's inputs are, or the rest are inputs, because that's not what the document we have. So, for instance, I don't mind making a motion that says we adopt this master plan for information purposes only, would you understand it's not to be used to set guidelines for the future?
Can I just make this comment? So I think I made this when it was presented originally. It, it, this is, this document should be treated just like the comprehensive plan we have, just like the thoroughfare plan we have, just like the Capital Improvement Plan we just adopted, and the budget that we, the new budget we adopt every year. And that is that it, it's like a plan for war, you know, it's, the, the plan is good until the first shot is fired, I think that's an Eisenhower quote, I'm not sure, but that's really true of these plans as well, you know, you do your best at the time with the circumstances, with the information you have, but fully anticipating that the plan will change. It's a living, breathing document. So I don't know honestly that it's necessary to, to add any caveat, Councilman King, because we didn't do that for any of the other documents, we understood when we adopted them, the budget's going to get amended, the CIP isn't going to be right. Like, I, we knew from day one, the dollars that we had in there were not accurate, it was just big fat finger numbers to plug something in and give us an idea of, I mean, what's really important about the document is what is the vision and what is the, what's the round idea of, of priorities that, that we get from that. And I think to Councilman Dyer's concern, you know, you're absolutely right, the, the future of the city, the future city, the future center of the city, which we all know will be east of here, really isn't contemplated much in this document. But I think the document provides plenty of opportunity for us to modify, or for you as policymakers and for staff as advisors, to modify that document in the future and take those into account as we make agreements, as we take on, take into our control and possession new park land or other dedicated facilities from developers and that sort of thing. But it would be, if you were to try and sit down and, and do that today with this document, it'd be the same, you'd have the same result, I think, in some respect, but, you know, with all due respect, I think you'd end up with something that was automatically wrong, because the development deal is going to change, the develop, you know, the, the lands can change, you can, the vision that was cast, I think, is accurate, and that is, here's what we desire for our citizens in terms of the rough amount of acreage of arc, of park space per person, you know, what do we have today? Well, as we grow, we want to try and maintain that. What will it look like? What functions will it, will it be a tennis center, or will it be a, a, a baseball facility? What, what is it that that will, what form will that take? A lot of that will be dictated by what we, the opportunities that are presented with us, are presented to us. So again, I, I think you treat this as a living document.
And I don't disagree with you, but like, the document has a blank page that says council resolution. So does that mean that because it has something titled council resolution, there should be a resolution in there? Because the, the agenda item is, is simply say, adopt the document.
That would be a resolution.
And, but then I think.
Lawyer, recommend on changes.
It becomes, I'm, I'm sorry, Todd?
I just says recommend on changes, it don't say anything about adopting it.
The agenda is.
That's a good action.
Yeah, the, the agenda items, a discussion and appropriate action on adopting the master plan, so.
I'm sorry.
Again, just because of the, if you say, okay, we're going to adopt it, are we adopting it like it's part document, or are we adopting it like it's, as you described?
Mr. Mayor.
And I have no problem doing that, but I think we need to state that in the resolution to adopt it.
Agreed, no, no, Councilman Dyer.
I think, I would have no problem adopting this as a draft document, and then we set a goal with the city staff and, and council working together to put an addendum on top of it, to, to do the things that we've talked about that maybe aren't in there, and try to make it a package that's ready to be dealt with in the budget session.
Sure.
And I think, I think that could be done in short order with a, a little, little bit of work by the staff and.
So I, I think the motion then is to adopt the plan as presented, and that would be the, the actual motion, and then we just understand that it's going to be based on our diligence to go through and make those modifications, we'll bring it back for modifications to include in it, as long as it's gone through the parks board and gone through the proper process, that's just work that we need to do.
I'm just reluctant to adopt it as though it's a final document.
It's never going to be a final document.
Well, but.
It's going to be a living document.
Wait a minute, it's a living document, but it's not alive yet, it's got to have to have a little resuscitation.
Right.
But if we just say, adopt it, and then add an addendum to, to add, to address the issues we talked tonight, and maybe we bring it back with the addendum and vote on, say, okay, this thing is ready to be adopted in the final.
So then the, and one second, Councilman Dyer, I have a question about you. So I, I think that what you're saying is that you would move to adopt it and to revisit within a certain period of time to make the modifications to update it.
Yes, I would do that. I support that.
I, this is a, a master plan, it's a, it's a conceptual document, just like our budget is, it's just like our, our city master plan and like our transportation plan, it's crystal ball work, it's, it's a direction, that's, that's all I'm seeing this as. I am looking forward to, and I think the rest of our future councils are looking forward to having input from our board, our, our staff and our volunteers as to what are the next steps, what are the higher priorities, what are the budget items that will be added or requested this year, next year, the following years, five, 10 years down the road. This, this is just to help us look at that, this is the plan, that's the project, do they come together? If they do, let's move forward. And that's how I see this document, this, there are no details, there are no, there's no hard line items in this, in this master plan. It is, is a conceptual direction that we are adopting, and I'm fully supportive of it today.
And.
Just, I just want to add kind of to what Paul said, I can't believe how much time you guys spent on this document, this is unbelievable. I can't absorb it in a week, there ain't no way. But, you know, as far as for budgeting purposes, yeah, we probably need to go in and tweak, you know?
Every, every year.
For budgeting purposes, it maybe only needs to be two pages, you know? But, and prioritize, I totally understand that, but I'm, I'm like Paul, I, I can fully support this document.
Yeah, and, and just let you all know, Patrick, if you can get that to my husband, he can convert it to a Word document. Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm all for it, too, it's great, we got to have a plan.
Got to have a.
Yes, and we got the citizens' input on it, that's what makes it even better. We heard what the citizens want, we have an idea, and that way, like you all said, moving forward, looking at the CIP, to look at, you know, got to start somewhere.
Absolutely. Councilman Dyer, did you want to make a motion on that?
Well, that's why I'm, I agree with what everybody's saying, except Herb, I, the only, not her, Todd, in here, there are some specific things about what year we're going to do things on. Now, if we all agree that those are not hard tasks, but those are just, again, as, as we're talking about, these are just concepts, and they're not hard tasks.
It may change from year to year.
It may change, so, but, so.
Well, legally.
But there's nothing in the document that says that, in some respects, because it's already been addressed to me, that well, because it's an adoptment, and yes, we should be doing this. So as long as we understand that we're, that this is not a hard task document, that this is just for input, and in the fact that we're going to vote to approve this, that that's understood, then I have no problem.
Great.
I think, you know, everybody that worked on this document needs to be commended.
Absolutely.
Oh, really?
Unbelievable.
It's hard to even read it, not much less put it all together.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the, and adopt the master plan as presented.
Second.
Great, discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. All right, next item is the TCEQ Water Treatment Plant Ponding and Vegetation Update. Michael Persine with Kate Fries in here.
Do you have a hard copy?
Yes, I see it.
He did.
Yeah, I left my hard copy, so I brought this.
That's first Nick.
No, no, yeah, I'm here, yeah.
That's my, that's my scale. Okay, I think I figured it out. All set?
All set.
Okay. Hey, good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mike Persine with Kate Fries and Associates. Today I brought with me Vicky Ortega with our firm as well, she's going to cover part of the presentation as we get into this here.
Thank you, Deborah.
This is, this is just intended as a progress update, we've been working on this for a few months, and I, I'm going to throw a lot of information at you here, we're, it's kind of deliberately intended to be high level, please stop me, there will be a preliminary engineering report with some cost estimates coming over the next month or so, and then you'll have a lot more material to get into as we work with staff on that. So really, today we were kind of covering just kind of the background and purpose of what we're looking at, of just a high-level overview of what the, what the hydrology looks like, sort of the items that we really had to consider in the design, and then some, Vicky will step in and talk about some of the alternatives we considered, and then we'll talk a little bit about opportunities and next steps, kind of where this is going over to the next piece here. So what really what kind of kicked all of this off is the TCEQ agreed order, and specifically one item in that agreed order, and this concerned the vegetation, both on the, on the embankments, you can see on the photo on the lower left, there's trees growing along the existing dam embankments, and then trees along the ponds, and that's a violation of the, the TCEQ rules, and then that's sort of what started all of this effort, and it's what makes it even a little more interesting, I guess, is it's not just as simple as cutting out the, the trees and leaving them there, we'll kind of talk about that a little bit more detail. So this, most of you know the park, you probably know it really well, but it, just make sure we're all on the same page with what we're talking about here. We're talking about Pond One and Pond Two, they figure pretty prominently in our discussion and our analysis, and so Pond One is really the smaller, more linear pond, this to the north, and Pond Two is south of the plant, and it's the much larger, more square pond. And then you can see the, the BMA Irrigation Canal to the west there, that's going to factor into the hydrology. And then off to the west on the side of the screen, we see the TLAP irrigation area, that's for, stands for the Texas Land Application Permit, that's, that's where you're disposing of your effluent, besides the regional park. So this, pretty high level, what, what you're seeing here is really the, the drainage bases, and not really intended for you to kind of dive into the details here and understand it, other than to just show, if I can get the cursor to show you here. I'm going to blow this up. We're not going to use the cursor. With all those little, those are all those little boundaries, right, those are all little drainage areas, you can see that there's a large drainage area west of the ponds, the ponds are kind of on the right side of that image, and you see there's a large drainage area to the west, and so the irrigation canal intercepts a good portion of that upstream water. We actually found three twelve-inch culverts underneath the canal, and based on observation and based on the math, it makes sense that they're, you, some water comes through the can, under the canal, and then once those, the water flowing and exceeds the capacity of the culvert, it fills up, spills over, and the canal takes it away, right? But there's still a large chunk of stormwater coming to us, and that does factor into a lot of what we need to do. But there's still a large chunk of stormwater coming to us, and that does factor into a lot of what we need to do. These graphics we're showing you here are two dehydraulic models. You may remember when we did the Athens Street drainage analysis. This is sort of, we do, Vicky and your team do some math and kind of simulate so we can see visually where is the stormwater going in the park. And where these become important is we were trying to, as we were evaluating how we were going to handle stormwater runoff, we were trying to understand what the design storm should be. There's not a book that says, when you're trying to deal with stormwater runoff from a wastewater pond and it's going through a park, what should you do with it? How big a design should you consider? And so what we were trying to evaluate is what's happening to the park during a typical rain event? And so you see the 10-year rain event, you can see on the left, you can see there's some stormwater. It's mostly down in the soccer fields, like you'd expect, where they're lower. And the 25-year event, it's almost like the entire park is, has stormwater in it. And so that played into effect. We sort of decided the 25-year event made sense in the sense that the park was essentially not usable in that rain event. And so that was the design event we considered as far as thinking through how we were going to handle stormwater. So, you know, I mentioned the agreed order really kicked it off, but there's a number of other things going on at the same time. So we have the vegetation on the trees, right, dealing with those, or the vegetation on the ponds, both inside and outside the pond embankments. Stormwater runoff into the ponds, that's a no-no for the TCEQ as well. Pond Two spillway is non-functional and filled with dirt. That's a safety and dam integrity issue. Pond One has no spillway currently. Slope stability concerns on the existing slopes. They're very steep if you kind of paid attention to them and really thought about it. They're very, very steep compared to hills you normally see. We have erosion occurring on the upstream side of the dam. That's the pond side of the dam. And then effluent management is a big factor for just staff trying to deal with handling a stormwater and dealing with rainfall events. And finally, dam, and I'm going to kind of touch on that in a minute.
TCEQ veget-
Real quick, back on the last one. Isn't there a connection between Pond One and Pond Two?
There is a small 18-inch pipe that's connecting the two. It's actually a remnant of the original, it's been replaced with a new pond, with the new treatment plant improvements. But it's actually from the original, the 19, not the original, the modifications done in 1968. They needed a place to put the stormwater, so the stormwater comes out to, or the treated effluent comes out to a splitter box and goes to Pond One and to Pond Two. That happens to be a hydraulic connection to the two. But it's about five feet below grade, and the ponds are down around 15 feet. So there's, it's not, doesn't really equalize water between the two super effectively. And it doesn't, definitely doesn't move a ton of water between the two. So again, kind of walk through some of these design considerations. So the, there's a few pictures of some trees. The major issue here is that the trees violate Chapter 299 of the TCEQ rules, and that concerns dams. And so it's a rule for one, but for two, it's a practical rule. The trees cause all kinds of trouble, for one. They can, roots can penetrate the liner, so you can have a failure there. Tree's going to get blown over and pull up part of your dam, which is holding a lot of water. It's an integrity issue there. They also encourage rodents and bird animals, which can also dig into your dam. And then finally, a lot of vegetation makes it hard for you to actually see what's going on with your dam to see if it's functioning as it should be. Dams require to be inspected frequently, and if you can't see it, it's hard to know what's going on. So the solution is you need to remove the, not only the trees, but you need to remove the root ball. You can't just cut the trees off and the problem is solved, because as that root ball decays, the root actually shrinks, and it potentially could be a piping route through the dam. And you have talked to any, I did. I asked the dam engineers, it was okay if we just cut them down and just monitored them for a while? And they said it doesn't, doesn't work like that. And I was, I probed a couple of geotechnical engineers to see if one of them was lying, but it was, they all agreed. This is a big issue here. The stormwater runoff coming into the ponds. Like I mentioned, the drainage area is very large, and it comes straight into the ponds. There's essentially no interceptor. There's a very, very small one behind Pond Two, but it's very small in relationship to the size of the hillside running off into it. And this is a big factor. It's a violation of Chapter 217 of the rules. And Chapter 217 concerns wastewater treatment plant design. It essentially says if you have an effluent holding pond, stormwater runoff can't be routed into it. It's also an integrity issue, because that runoff comes in, you have no spillway. If you had a really big storm event, you could overtop the spillway, which we saw happen, overtop the dam, which we saw happen at least in '01 and 2016, as far as documented stuff. I'm sure there were some possibly before that, but those are some recent ones. So again, the solution there is you construct interceptor channels to route the stormwater around the ponds. And hence some of it, Vicky will talk some about the channel. But that's that 25-year storm event we're talking about. That's sort of the design runoff we're trying to factor in as far as routing through the park. And so here's an example, just, this is high level, but the yellow line sort of represents a conceptual route of a channel that would take water that's running down off of the hillside through the ponds. We picked that up on the west side of the ponds and routed it around into a storm channel. And this is big numbers, you know, just roughly 10-foot bottom width if it was trapezoidal. It's roughly 40-foot top width to contain the storm. So it's pretty substantial. And this is a 25-year storm event, right, with some freeboard. Actually, the really, the 100-year storm event overflows that channel and runs through the park, like things do now, right? So. Kind of getting to the spillways here a little bit. Like I mentioned, Pond Two spillway is broken. That one was built in 1968. It's now, you can see in the photo there, it's broken and falling apart. It's been undercut. It's non-functional. It's filled with dirt. It's kind of used as a walking, or was used as a walking trail for a while. Again, uncontrolled overflows could damage the dam. That's a big factor. So a couple of solutions to that, right? You design interceptor channel to pick up the runoff, and then you provide the two feet of freeboard that are required. So freeboard is the amount above the normal water surface, or the max water surface and your top of pond, right? So Chapter 217 says provide two feet of freeboard in your effluent pond. So that would solve that issue. Or you breach the pond, which means you poke a giant hole in it so it doesn't hold any water in it. And by giant hole, I mean you breach it. It's a 10 or 12 feet wide at the bottom and goes up from there. So they're no longer dams, no longer ponds anymore. They're just big channels. That's right. Thank you, Vicky. Pond One spillway similar, except it has no spillway to start with. Then you have a broken spillway. It just says no spillway. So it has the same solutions as Pond Two, right? Same exact elements there would solve that problem. Slope stability is actually, this one was kind of interesting. We did some geotechnical analysis, because we were curious about this and needed to get more math. They pulled a number of holes along the crest of the dams and then as well for some other work on the site. And then they did some pretty detailed analysis of those slopes. And they actually looked at it with the vegetation there and with the, and without the vegetation. And so the vegetation was more of a, it's more for interest. We know we need to remove the vegetation. But what's interesting is that the vegetation is helping a lot. And it's interesting, is even that Pond Two is a steeper of the two ponds. It actually is, it doesn't meet the required safety factor even with the vegetation there, right? So we've been fortunate it's holding up. But it's definitely not something anybody would be comfortable signing off on and saying, I feel confident in the ability of this dam to hold the water back.
Standing under it.
So some options here, right? We can regrade, regrade the slopes to flatten them out. So that's, you can see a rough slope of approximately three and a half to one. If they're going to be in pounding water, so they stay dams, you need a much flatter slope. And that's useful. It can be mowed. That's flat enough that you can mow it with your typical shredding equipment.
Where would you go?
What's that?
To get that slope, you got to go one way or the other, right?
We're going to show you. We're going to show you, Mr. Shearhardt. And you're right, you're spot on. That's exactly, that's exactly what happens. We're talking about moving the bottom of the, I don't want to steal Vicky's thunder, but it's, we'll see. The other option is, we looked at, we had, trying to think through. I'm not expecting applause for anything here. I'm bringing bad news all the whole. The other thing you could do, we talked, we talked to geotechnical engineers, trying to, we're thinking about how much earthwork we're doing. We're trying to think, could we keep them pretty steep? And so if we breach the ponds, so they're, again, not functioning as dams, so they're not holding any water back, slope stability improves, because the water is obviously negatively impacting our stability. We can go about 2.3 to 2.5 to one. So about the existing slopes on Pond One, I remember the, oh, Pond Two. Okay, thank you. Good. And so the thing with like a 2.3 or 2.5 to one slope is it's, you can't really drive a tractor on the side of that and mow it. So you get into, either you, we obviously seen, we have 50-plus years of growth on there. We need to be able to keep it mowed so we don't have trees again in the next half century. You got to, essentially you're kind of considering armoring the slope.
Unless you breach it.
Unless, even if we breach it, we still have to, it's still very steep. We just have to, it might be something where you could just leave it be and let it eventually slough off. Like that could be a possibility. That's right.
2.3 to one is generally considered too steep for vegetation to grow. So there's no, the water will just take it, like if you seed it, the water's just going to take it right off.
Yeah, we would have some kind of turf reinforcement mat at a minimum to try to help.
If you take out the existing vegetation.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess this is a stupid question, but was it legal to do this back in the day?
I don't know. You know, we've been wondering that, to be honest. This is all before.
I mean, how did we get on that steeper for grade to begin with?
Right, right. So, you know, this is, this predates TCEQ. It predates the TNRCC. So it predates a lot of the regulatory agencies. I don't know what.
So we could do what we wanted?
I think so. That's probably true. That's probably some truth to that.
That was the Alshason way, probably.
I don't think they went out there and planted those trees.
No, I know they didn't. No, they didn't plant them. They just, we just started up. I'm just trying to get over the grade.
25 years ago, an engineering company told the city they needed to cut down the trees. And nothing happened in the last 25 years.
I think four-wheel-drive truck could go up that grade.
Not sideways.
I think I was in one. Back in the day.
Anyway, we use the tractor.
Anyway, I'm digging in distracted.
Yeah, the photo here, so the upstream, as I mentioned earlier, the upstream face, right? The pond side of the dam is eroding. This photo, it's a little hard. You'll see it better in our PER. But if you, if you could look at closer, there's barbed wire kind of along the fencing there. The T-posts are leaning in towards the, towards the pond, and they've been moved several times. Joe Kennedy, the operator, has moved them periodically, because it's, actually, there's some erosion.
The water catches up.
Yeah, there's some erosion going on there. And we think it's probably, could be a multiple factor, but definitely, I think just the inside slope is too steep. So it just can't really hold on. So again, impact to dam, potential impact to your liner. You're losing the crest width, which is part of your dam itself. Again, the solution is regrade slopes. We need to add fill material into the inside of the ponds to get them to a stable slope so they won't continue to erode.
I can't wait to see this changing grade.
Again, really getting to the effluent management, like I mentioned, this is definitely a challenge for operations. Couple of things going on here. So the issues are really, there's sort of limited storage for effluent. The ponds are only so big. The wastewater plant treats wastewater day in, day out, right? Whether you're on, whether everybody shuts down for a day or not, right? The wastewater comes in, it has to get treated, has to go somewhere. The discharge permit limits the application rate to the land application. It's just a function of the crop that the soil that's being applied to and the ground conditions. So we can't just keep pumping more water onto it, because we'll just have another permit issue with ponding on that land or runoff.
He's got ponds up there already, so.
Right, and that was part of the agreed order. Some steps there, and there were just ponding in the irrigation areas. Then, you know, on a, so smaller scale, but it definitely impacts, it's a cost, and it's an impact to equipment. Is the sprinkler system within the park is picking up, is getting a lot of sludge pumped through it. So it's clogging sprinklers and that sort of thing. So a couple of solutions, there's a multitude of solutions here. One, you could remove the sludge from the ponds, right? When we do this work, restore them to their original contours. That's all settled sludge from decades of wastewater treatment.
Forty?
Probably 40 years. So it's, all that's got to be treated and disposed.
It ain't holding its capacity either.
Right, you've lost quite a bit. Some of their five or six feet deep, five or six feet of sludge.
That's all?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, over the, so it's about 30% of your original storage volume, though, you've lost over the years. You could, you now have a permit to discharge to the Medina River. So that's going to play a heavy role in all of this stuff we're talking about, is you can start discharging effluent to the Medina River. But you can't discharge water from the ponds to the Medina River, because they don't meet your effluent quality requirements. You can only discharge water from the treatment plant, if that makes sense. So you treat it.
Should we have to haul the water off?
You just, there's a pipe there already. You just open a valve and start sending it to the Medina River when this, all this gets moved.
No, I'm talking about the pond.
Oh, the ones in the ponds? We think the smarter way to do is to start, at a certain point, as you get through the process, start pumping them down by sending that water to the farmer and then start sending it to, into the park, and then start sending them to the water to the Medina River. There is some interesting stuff, just talking to the TCEQ permit riders. We have some more work to do on this. They kind of see it not as land apply and/or Medina River. They sort of see it like land apply, and then once you start discharging the Medina River, your land application goes away. So we need to kind of talk to them further and, because we do really need that. It's tens of acre-feet of water. Hauling it off doesn't really make sense, right? We need, we need a better way to get rid of it, more cost-effective. And I think we can work with them on that.
So you feel like we would be able to do both, then?
What's that?
You're saying that we may or may not be able to do both?
We may or may not be able to do both. That's something we want to talk, well, let me back up. There's some nuance to all this stuff. You have a lot of TCEQ rules, and Chapter 217 is your permit for the wastewater plant. And it says you can land apply and you can discharge the Medina River. The TCEQ permit rider for Chapter 217 says, once you start going to the Medina River, you really shouldn't be land applying under 217. But you could do it in a minor amendment to essentially just move your, this, right? This is the way it works in TCEQ, though. You have to do some paperwork to do a minor amendment to move the ponds out of your 217 permit and to your 210 permit, your beneficial reuse permit. So you could still keep irrigating and stuff. So it's a bean-counting thing, but it's a formalized process, for sure.
But we're still catching runoff, so, I mean, those ponds really aren't going to.
That is part of, that is part of the, that is not, that is not an option. That is a feature of all of the alternatives. Yeah, and so you could obtain new reclaimed water customers. You know, if you could have more people to sell water to, that would help with some of your effluent management, or give water to, however you wanted to do it. And then, you know, well, simply dealing with the, just the sludge problems that we're seeing in the parks. You could modify the suction piping. I think it's buried, it's very low in the pond, and so it's buried in the sludge.
Raise it up?
Raise it up, or put in floating pumps, like a lot of newer ponds, they would, they would put a floating pump so that it's always pulling from the top of them, and those are options.
Or just a floating inlet.
Yeah, yeah, essentially what it amounts to. I talked about dam, you know, it's really, that's the issue. That's, that is the issue. It is a dam. These are dams. Vicky's going to talk a little bit about some of the options we consider trying to work around that rule, and that we can't. And because the park is below it, there are some features within Chapter 299 that we are classified as a high-hazard dam. And so really, the solution is really to meet the requirements of Chapter 299. That's just, it's that simple. You don't, you don't work around them. You just hit them head-on. And that gets into, you know, regrading the slopes will help with that. Doing a breach analysis, which is essentially like if the pond failed, the dam failed, where does the water go? What happens? And then creating emergency action plan. Or again, you breach the ponds. They're no longer dams. And there's some, there's obviously negative effects. If you're not holding any water, then you don't have as much water to do irrigation with. I'm going to turn to Vicky now.
So I would like to just mention briefly that with the whole regrading of the dams, whether we breach them or not, your access to your treatment plant is over the Pond One dam. So whatever we do, that has to stay. Pond Two, you could technically take out the entire, the entire dam, the slopes and everything, and you, like, that would be an option. It's not the one we recommended, but it could be an option. But for Pond One, we have to do something with that slope. So from an alternative standpoint, just to sort of start, just to kind of go back to where we started. What could I do? There we go. I got it. We considered a lot of alternatives. And really, a couple of them, Mike alluded to, you know, one of them was, could we get out of TCEQ Chapter 299, lower the spillways? They, TCEQ qualifies dams in a couple of different ways, some of them being by height, by storage volume. However, the issue with it is that they have one caveat that says if a certain number of people could be at risk if they breach, it's a dam and you can't do anything about it. And unfortunately, that's where these fall into, because of the park. And so.
Yeah, there will be no one in the park if there are breaches.
Because.
Because it only happens in a storm event. In a storm event, the park isn't accessible. The gate is closed. So there you go.
I want to be there when you tell TCEQ that.
I know.
I was going to say, you can have that conversation, so.
But that is the irony, honestly, because the true risk is, I mean, and I want to be clear for those who are listening or any public that's involved, is we, we really are concerned about an imminent breach. This dam isn't imminently going to fall, and a bunch of water's going to go pouring down the hill, and in some person's life is in danger. The real issue is, just like you saw in New Orleans and other places where you have earth and dams, when they fail, they generally fail when there are loads that were not, they were not prepared for. And if they're in a weakened state, it makes it even worse. And so that's really what we're talking about, is in a major storm event, is there a likely that these could fail at some point in the future? And the answer is yes. Is there a likely that they could fail today? The answer is probably no, honestly. They're probably, as they sit right now in a major event, unless it's just something, you know, Noah Ark-like, they're probably okay for now, but they're. they're probably okay for now, but they're, but in the future, you know, as those trees fail, as the things that Mike alluded to happen, you're at increasingly higher risks of failure during storm events. And during a storm event, that's what I'm saying, is the irony is that because this is a public-use park, it wouldn't be used in those circumstances. So I just want to be clear on that, but unfortunately, you're right, Phil, we'd have to have that conversation with TCQ and convince them of that, and they're not gonna care, they're gonna say, no.
And unfortunately, TCQ, I actually just did a dam breach analysis for a tech spot, actually, in the Dallas district. Unfortunately, one of the analyses you have to do is called a sunny-day breach, meaning it's not raining, and the dam fails.
Yeah.
In that case, there could be people in the park.
Sure.
And so, you know, other, other options we looked at, and when you see these options, you will notice that we did, one thing they all have in common is any, any, to get these slopes, we went away from the ponds, we went into the park. And so the reason for that was is to preserve as much storage in the ponds as possible. I'm sure, as you can imagine, if we held, if we held the toe in the park and pushed everything back.
Wouldn't affect anyone.
It wouldn't hold a lot, the other thing is that I believe, and based on what we talked about, is that you would in essence be creating a new dam. So you would have to re-permit them with TCQ as a removal and a new dam. And so that's a major contributing factor as to why we came out and held the crest.
Not only that, but you have the facility there.
You have the facility there, it's.
So there's a lot of rework that would have to happen.
There's a lot of rework that would have to happen. Finally, the other thing that you will notice with all of these is, we did go the route for stormwater at the base of the dams that Mike pointed, where we kind of come to the west, in front of the dams, and around to the river. We did look through at options of just going from point A to point B, and going straight through the park and getting to that river. Feedback from Patrick and the city was that that would be a significant impact on the usability of the park, and therefore, we sort of, we called that one good. So, to go through the three alternatives we are proposing today. The first alternative is Alternative A, and we keep both ponds, and in doing this, we will meet everything we've mentioned, from stormwater to the TCQ requirements, all the way down to the effluent management and having pond storage. The second option is Alternative C, in this case, we will breach Pond One, and we will fix Pond Two in the same manner, to make that meet all of our requirements. The reason we chose to breach Pond One is, if you guys remember, you can flip back to the drainage area, Pond One ironically gets more water than Pond Two does. And so it's, and it sort of creates and lends itself to being, becoming a channel. Final option is Alternative C, and that is we breach both ponds, and they, you do not have any storage within, within those ponds again. So, I do know this is a little bit difficult to see, but high-level. So the first thing that I wanted to point out with this is that with these, this option, you can see sort of a little picture up in the top corner that shows the significance of the regrading, if you look within the park, you see the like dark green line, that would be the relocation of your park road. So that would be how far out that park road would have to come to regrade these at a three-point-five-to-one slope. You can see the toe of the dam is sitting about right in the existing park, right, or right at park road. That's where your new toe, your toe of your dam would come, we would then have to have a channel in front of that, and then regrade that back out. So significant impacts to the park in this one, this one does address all of the concerns, everything, all the design considerations we talked about. A couple of things on this, and I don't know if you can see it, but we looked at a lot of alternatives of how do you get stormwater around these ponds? And you guys are familiar with the fact that there's a lot of hills right by these ponds, it does not limit itself well to grading a channel in. So the solution we came up with was building a wall about ten feet in, five feet in from the, from the bank, and just creating a channel. And that separates us, it means we meet TCQ, it allows us to maintain the effluent pond storage and route the stormwater, while minimizing the amount of earthwork we are having to do within that existing hill. It also minimizes how much vegetation of that hill we're having to remove, and I think we did the math, and you'd be chasing that slope for about forty or fifty feet. So it would be significant to try and get back there. One thing I would like to point out with this is that TCQ requires that we capture all stormwater, so this is the hundred-year storm coming into this channel, not just the twenty-five. What we have looked at is that as we come out of that, for the hundred-year storm, the FEMA floodplain, the whole park is underwater, so we are then taking the twenty-five-year storm into a channel and out, but in a hundred-year storm, that water would be released into the floodwaters that are already there.
Everywhere.
Yeah.
The solution to pollution is deletion?
When you say breach, when you say breach them, we're talking about draining them, right?
This is, this is not a breach situation, this is maintaining the ponds, keeping your storage, and adding, in this case, you don't.
But our last option is to breach both ponds.
Yes.
But you have to do that.
Huh?
This is Alternative A.
Oh, I understand that, I'm just asking the question.
Yes, the final, the final alternative C will breach.
And not use them anymore. And not use them anymore.
Yes.
Well, I'm not sure, but I thought one of the options we looked at was maintain both ponds, not changing the slopes, and building a concrete barrier based on that big wall underground that goes down sixty feet or whatever, that soaks.
So, yeah, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't go very far.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, is it a long story?
No, I'm sorry, for interrupting.
No, no, it's really good, like, we, again, we've been looking at lots of ways, how can we do this less painfully, less cost? Because again, the city's gonna spend all this money, you don't get anything really, you get, you meet a lot of requirements, and you have a better-performing facility, but you don't get a lot more storage capacity, you don't get another feature.
Well, and that is something I shared with Michael early on, I was like, look, I don't want to spend one dollar, I don't think the city wants to spend one dollar more, and we absolutely have to to fix the TCQ problem, for all those reasons, because we aren't getting any added benefit. Unfortunately, this is something we have to fix, we have to address, but we want to find the cheapest solution we can that meets TCQ's requirement.
And so, and so to answer Scott's point, we did look at like a trench cutoff wall or slurry wall. We did, it didn't go really far, once we did the slope stability analysis, the existing slopes can't stay like they are, they need to make improvements made, and then there are problems, there's a lot of expense with the trench cutoff wall, so it was solving a problem we didn't really have, and wasn't solving the other ones that we needed to solve, so we.
Because of that whole list, the spillways, the, all of that.
Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't, if that would've checked the box, we kept pursuing, but because it didn't do anything else for us, we stopped there.
You could get around your tree problem, you wouldn't get around this slope stability problem.
It would get around the tree piping, it might not get around TCQ saying, hey, it's a dam, I don't care what you do, no trees allowed. And it was significantly expensive to put concrete in there.
Thank you.
So the one thing to note with this is that we would not maintain a spillway for these ponds. TCQ 217 also states your pond can't overflow. So what we have done is that we've pretty much taken that channel and just punched it straight through the wall of that dam, in essence, where the spillway for Pond Two is, and for Pond One, you can see it's sort of on the right side of the screen. The other thing we have done with this is we did put this wall about a foot lower than the berm, so if a whole bunch of water happened to fall just on the treatment plant, and that water did get into those ponds, and it were to spill over, it would spill over the wall into the channel, not the, not the earth and embankment. So Alternative B would be, the Pond Two in this case is exactly what you just saw, nothing's changed. It's identical in capacity, it's identical in approach. What changes in this case is the Pond One, and we've breached the pond. And how we've breached the pond is, and you don't see it in here, is we've taken a culvert and a pipe, and put it straight through the bottom, at the bottom of that channel. And again, for Pond One, the issue with this is you have to maintain that access, this is the only access into the, into the treatment plant, and so we don't have the option of just doing a V-notch, which is what they would do in some of the cases, where you just take the slide slope straight down all the way to the bottom, let the water flow. We can't do that in this case. You can see, if I can, let's see if I can do this sensibly, if you watch the green line.
Can I ask a question about that, Phil? So the access starts where? The access starts?
The access actually comes in on the, from the park itself.
Right here, as you come by the pool, Mary, and it comes up by no here.
But where, where do we consider the point of access? Because if we, if we breached that, could we not just move the entrance to the wastewater treatment plant further up?
It could potentially be, be looked at, but you still gotta come up, so you have to keep a slope that you can still traverse.
Is there access from the back, like, we have the tank, I know we have the Cross Hill tank up on Cross Hill, there's no road because Cross Hill tank down.
Yeah, and whenever we get bad rains up there, oh my gosh, they run it out so bad.
We have no access to the back, so you have to come down the canal or something.
Yeah.
So you thought about putting the big old concrete culvert, rebuilding the road over with the whole, it's cheap.
Yeah.
Compared to the other things.
Yes, so, and what you were seeing is if you looked at the green line, you'll see that it shifted closer to the dam in front of Pond One. This is because the Pond One slopes are now at a two-point-five-to-one, and not at a three-point-five-to-one, so you're talking about less impact on that park.
Still moving the roads, still, yes.
Still moving the roads, you, it's, it is a minor reduction, we still have to run the cost estimates, it is still an impact.
What? What is this asset, what's this light color?
That's Dennis, probably, yeah.
Is that working? It's a, well, it's pointing to us over here.
Yeah.
That's the sand court.
And then there's also the pavilion.
Yeah, you're gonna lose some billions too.
That makes the bathroom closer to the road.
Oh, the pavilions are further away than that, that's still.
But the slope on this, what did you say the slope on this would be?
The slope on, the slope on Pond Two is three-point-five, the slope on Pond One is two-point-five.
Three-point-five to what?
To one.
To one.
To one foot elevation.
For one?
Three and a half, three and a half to one.
Yes.
So, you know, when I initially pictured this, I pictured it like, you know, we're basically eating up the entire park, but what we're actually doing is just creating a sloped area that people could still use, could still, probably not put a picnic table on, but it's something that we could take a piece of cardboard down and have some fun with it.
Three-point-five-to-one, it doesn't sound like it, but three-point-five-to-one is significantly flatter than two-point-five-to-one. It makes a very big difference, so when you're talking about this Pond One, you're still talking about a really good slope. It is flatter than it is now, but, you know, you're probably not gonna have kids riding a bicycle top of it. A three-point-five-to-one is much, is much, much gentler. Again, it doesn't sound like it, it's like, it's a foot difference, but it does make a big difference. So from this standpoint, it's a trade-off, right? The one thing I want to point out about option, Alternative A and Alternative B, is that regardless of which option you choose of these two, you still have to go through the TCQ 299 procedures of creating an action, an emergency action plan, and doing a D, a D breach analysis. That all has to happen regardless. Our final option is Alternative C, and I'm gonna shift over here so Patrick can't yell at me.
Well, which one, I'm sorry, it's been a little long, which one were you in favor of, Patrick, just for the councils?
A, he's a, A.
Reservation.
Really?
Yeah, we flipped alternative numbers on him. So Alternative C is a complete breach of these ponds, meaning you will have zero storage for any kind of irrigation. So this is a, for Pond One, this is a very similar breach as we did before with a culvert through. For Pond Two, this is actually taking that down at a slope. For Pond Two, we could also consider just removing that embankment entirely, if that was the, if that was the direction the council wanted to go. There is a cost associated with that, right? And again, what you can see on this is that that green line moves forward. The one thing to note on all of these is, you still have an impact to the park, there's really no way around that, it's just a question of how significant is it?
And the green line is the road, right?
The green line is the center line of the road.
Why does it have to be moved if you're gonna breach both dams?
Because the embankment of Pond One still has to change.
But you could cut down the embankments.
Not for Pond One, because we still gotta get to the treatment plant on the top of the hill. For Pond Two.
But if Pond One, the road doesn't move a lot, why do they have to move so much in Pond Two?
There's two roads.
Well, so, for, in this, yeah, in this, in this scenario, we assumed that we were just breaching the pond by maintaining a significant amount of that embankment and regrading it. The reason for that is a cost standpoint of not removing all that excavation, that embankment that's already there. It is and would be an option to consider, if we took out the entire embankment of Pond Two, then the impacts to that road would be less, it would have to just go around the Pond One embankment.
Basically push a bunch of dirt uphill and fill up the pond, is that what you're saying?
Actually, not really, it's more of pulling the, I'm probably too short to do this.
You gotta form a strategy.
Yeah.
She knows the rest of the time. So this embankment right here.
Right.
If you took it all out.
And pushed it into the pond.
You didn't push it anywhere, you just literally pulled it all out.
Right.
Or you, I guess you could, you could push it into the pond.
That's what I was, that's what I'm saying, you wouldn't take it out, you're pushing the pond.
So then any water that comes into here from offside, it drains straight out into the park, like a free release.
Right.
Then this park, this line, would be able to kind of swing in a little bit more, and you could come.
Right past Pond One.
Right past.
It's not like they could prove us there in front of the wastewater plant, because we have that facilities up there, we can't get any closer to those. It's something that, right, we're gonna do massive earthwork here.
No matter what.
The road is gonna be repaired, like, even if we put it back, that road is, is a brand-new road, because we're gonna tear it to pieces if we're doing that stuff. It's not like you're creating extra money to.
I just don't like the fact that you're losing that much park.
Well, but again, you don't, you can make use actually of more of the park, because then you don't have that, that piece between the ponds and the, and the road. I think you could actually pull more out of it.
You're talking about the dam itself?
Not if you had.
So, so one, one thing to just note is that you're gonna want grass to grow on these embankments. If you allow people access to it, you're gonna have a much harder time maintaining that vegetation.
Sure you are.
On that structure.
Then you're gonna have the rest of the park.
So there, as I said, I do support the Upper Brushy Creek WCID in Williamson County, outside of Tech, outside of Austin, and they see a lot of people using their dams and their embankments for like CrossFit, running up and down the dams, and it's creating trails and ruts that they're having to start fencing off, off those dams to keep people off of them. Now, that could be, they don't have, you know, they have twenty-two dams, so they have a much harder job maintaining them, so it would just be a note to consider that part of your maintenance costs for a flatter slope could be more active management of that vegetation.
Can you go back to Alternative A?
I don't know.
You should be able to write, yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
You should be able to just kind of toggle through this.
Oh my god.
So throwing a monkey wrench in this whole thing is, we, one of the things that the staff has done is worked with Patrick and others to look at a, God, the bog, what is it?
Wetland.
A constructed wetland, I think it was bog in my mind, sorry, but a constructed wetland, does that change or alter any of these plans in any way, any meaningful way?
Yeah, so I, the one thing to, to kind of note with this is that like, our like, like light blue channel line that you see on these, it doesn't disappear at the edge of the street, at the, at the edge of this page, right, it does continue all the way to the Medina River. So we are already going to be doing construction in the vicinity, I believe that that was kind of sort of identified for the wetland, so there could be an opportunity to partner with that. We have not investigated significantly as of yet the requirements for the wetland to see how that would interact with what we're proposing with the pond.
And greetedly, I just want to know, what's the cheapest option, A, B, and C?
Sorry?
So, I promise, Phil, we, we have a, there's someone who's kind of does a lot of cost assessment for us, who's a really skilled, actually contributes a lot of constructability, he's a contractor as well, gives a lot of our more complicated project cost assessments, and this one definitely factors into the more complicated. There's a whole sequencing thing here with, with how to handle it, even getting rid of the acres of sludge in the bottom of this thing. I'm not sure, you know, we're gonna, that's one of the, that's what the PRs kind of, we're close, waiting for that data.
Do we, do you know, to answer this question, you may not, and I apologize, because I didn't give you a warning, but, do we have to haul off the sludge no matter what we do? Like, if you were to backfill, if you were to vacate both ponds and backfill them, could you leave the sludge in place?
I don't know that, Scott, I do want to, I don't think we can drive over it.
Well, I can attest that removing sludge is stupid expensive.
Yeah.
It's very, it's very, it'd be, no joke, a million dollars just to remove the sludge out of these two ponds. If there's six feet of sludge, it's, no joke, probably a million dollars to remove the sludge.
It's gotta be six feet of sludge.
But if you don't have to remove it, which is possible, I would think, I mean.
We would, we could, we could ask the TCQ about that, once we dry them out, does it have to be removed? And then, I think there's a constructability element to it, in terms of, you're not gonna operate equipment over this stuff, it's mush.
That's the thing, is if they let you turn solid waste facilities into parkland, it just makes sense that they would allow you to do the same with these, depending on how much you put on top of them.
They put a liner and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there's gotta be a process, and I would think whatever that process is, probably cheap. that process is, probably cheaper than hauling it off. Yeah.
Well, and the one thing, if you're taking down the embankment and actually using that to cover your pond.
Yeah.
Then that could, and, and again, that would flatten out the slope. You could actually, not tomorrow, but when that dries out, you could turn that into some flat play fields up there. You could have put a soccer field up there.
And that's kind of what I was, that's what I'm saying, when I, when I was suggesting kind of, if you were to backfill it, that's probably, my thought process was exactly that, Phil, that if you're going to remove a lot of dirt, the most, what would make the most sense is to actually keep the dirt where, you know, just spread it, right?
And the other thing I want to mention, Pat had some good comments, but like, for
instance, we're going to be generating the effluent, and part of this would be for the, for irrigating the fields, yes, but you could put a fairly small storage tank there to just collect the water that you would use in a 24-hour period, and that's going to fill up every day, and you could use that water then to irrigate the fields. If we get the bed-to-banks permit, and in the future, if we need to treat our water, then we have that, we still own the water, because I can tell you the water treatment plant is going to be tremendously expensive to, to, to treat that water.
Well, and I can tell you, the, the other thing is, we've got a lot of water coming, like the sewer is only, the plant's only operating at what capacity around, 25%?
About 210, 207,000 gallons per day right now, so that's not quite a third, I guess.
Right. So I was thinking around 25%, but it's around there, and we're going to, with all of, we already know that from the plan developments we have right now, if, if they all come online in the next three years, we will have already exceeded this plant's capacity to process sewer. So we will, we will already have to do something else somewhere else. So to your earlier point about the amount of water, you're not, you're not wrong, I think you're absolutely right. I think you're going to have the ability to capture that, and if you can capture it in a way that, that it has its own pumping system where it's not in a pond, but it's in some kind of tank, and it's not as a part of a freshwater system, then it's fine. I am concerned that we've got to do something about our, our fields, because the way they're being watered right now, am I, even though I hate myself for even saying it, but you know, that freshwater is the least expensive way for us to do it, right now. Yeah, we aren't doing it because we're trying to be earth-friendly and use the irrigation, but it just is, is too uncertain, because when the farmer pulls it, then we don't have any, and then when we do pull it, because of the way it is, we're pulling from the bottom, we're gunking them up, it's costing us tens of thousands of dollars to irrigate fields because we have to replace all the heads and that kind of...
Can we more directly water from the, directly from the effluent, the discharge?
No. I mean, you, you've got to have, so it's just like anything else, you've got to have water pressure to make those heads pop up and to adequately sprinkle a, a field and to actually grow the, there's going to be grass and everything else. And we aren't, but the other problem with using effluent water is...
We own the land, why can't we water from the river, like the homeowners do?
But during drought is one of the issues that we're talking about, is during a drought, this is the one kind of water that you can always count on, but I also want, I also want to point out that because this is effluent water, and these are public sports fields, there's also regulations from TCQ about standing water on those fields, so you have to be very careful when you water and how you water. Not because, honestly, not because there's just really dangerous bacteria, but that's what they're, that's what they're trying to prevent, is someone getting E. coli because they're enjoying something.
Scott, if you were to pump this effluent into a storage tank up there on the hill, a small storage tank, I don't know what you all use per day on the fields, what do you use per day? You don't know?
We, we use what's allotted, I mean, they turn on the...
That's the thing, it's uncertain right now, we don't have...
And we have to keep the valves open in order to burn it there.
No, but you know, but you and I have talked about how much it takes to, to do the baseball fields. Could you give me an idea of the calculus?
Baseball fields, the soccer fields.
No, no, no. I spoke correctly. The baseball fields, when we were talking about how much they're using out at the NVB YBA, that we talked about how much it takes to grow, do you don't know about how many gallons it would be to water the field, the fields that we have at the park?
I'm trying to remember the acreage that we irrigated to, because I know it's like half an inch per 1,000 square feet.
But that's, okay, so that's, so it's kind of mean to do that to Devon right now anyway, but that is something.
Figured out right now.
As staff, we can look at, but I know that was, I, I feel a little better, Phil, that you're asking a question, because it was something I, I brought up early on, it's like, why don't we just do an elevator tank, pump it in the tank, let it, let it settle out, and then send that water down, and you have a clean kind of source to use. But I think one of the reasons that, that we discussed with staff was that, that looked like that was going to be pretty expensive because it would be a pretty damn big tank. But I, I will come back and tell you how it needs to be.
Basically, it's producing as much water as you would be using to irrigate with, so it would not be a big tank. It's clean, you don't have to let it settle out, it comes out pretty damn clean because it has to be clean, it's the river, and it's cleaner than what we're pumping on the fields today. So, what we're pumping on the fields today is coming out the effluent pond, and this is all treated water.
No, you're, you're, the permit, because you're under a land application permit, you're, again, you're, you're permit limited by how much water you can apply, and it works out to be about 350,000 gallons a week, is about, that, every week for a year, that gets you about your 2.03 acre-feet of water you can apply. It's about 54 acre-feet of water you can apply on the park itself, right? That's your, your, your limit, so you can't, and it's a tricky thing, right, because in the summer, you want more water than you can get, in the winter, you want less water than you can get, and again, that makes it tricky. So now, with, with the ability to discharge the Medina River, it gives the city a much more flexibility on how to handle that. So, to help us give you information to help you make a better decision, do you want us to consider for, you know, we've kind of always been trying to think about just maximizing storage with all these options, but like alternative C, because we're breaching both ponds, do you want for this one to consider, for this one, we hold the, hold the existing damage, just push the stuff in, and as a consideration for the cost on that one?
Cover it up, honey, cover it up.
Yeah, I would think, don't, don't wait, I mean, there's no reason to hold off, just push it in and...
Okay. Okay. I think we do that, we still have the stormwater channel, so we have, there's still some earthwork there at the toe of the dam, like since we still have to route, since we're rounding the water.
We still have to route a little bit of the water, but it would all...
But you're saying if we're...
We'll have to drain them to work, correct?
They will have to be drained to work, yes. We have a piece, we have, we have to talk to TCQ about, we have to haul off the sludge or can we cover it?
Correct.
And then so...
And then the wetlands product.
If we let the water come through on Pond One, it's going to go straight per, right now, it's all intercepting, now it would go straight to the RFP park. So there's bound to be some kind of channel improvement to...
Well, and that's, Patrick, is that how we could tie in the wetlands then? Is that how we can tie in the wetlands?
And we have a slide on the wetlands coming up, sorry.
One won't start till the, of the left corner of the...
So is there not a, in option C, is there not a canal that takes that water to the...
There is right now in the, the current assessment, so do we hold that? We still hold that, we, we were just talking about, if we push the ponds in, they're sort of like, push them in and now they...
Now they're just like the hills.
I want to pretend I'm not...
Yes.
But if you push this in, you could...
Sheet flow.
You could sheet flow over this here, potentially, but there's no water coming there now, so it'd be a little bit different from the park user's perspective, that's a different event. This one here, you have to do something because right now, if it just comes straight down, it would flow right into the RFP park, you have to at least route this stormwater.
But you could still put your channel there.
Yeah, you would, we could still keep the channel, we would just, we would slide this up and the channel would go, the road might still, might still need to be moved, the channel's wider, I think, than the, the distance from the toe of the dam, the road or, or close to it, we just, we could look at it though, but if you, this helps us, if you want us to just consider for alternative C, if we push that in, I think that's something we could work on and have the estimator price that, so we would know what is the implication of that.
All right, hold on one second. All right.
Instead of pushing sludge anywhere, there's companies that buy sludge, they haul it off, they dehydrate it, they sell it as fertilizer, and you could probably get somebody to buy it.
Nope.
Rather than pushing it.
I'll cut that out, no, can't. I, I know that you, I would love to believe that's the case, I know that there are groups that do that, I'm aware that Denny Texas does that, but, no. If that were really an option, I, I could prob, you know, it just isn't. You're not going to get someone who's going to do that.
I do know...
They're not going to come and truck it out and, and pay you to haul it, or just say, well, come take it for free. But it, prove me wrong, I'd love to be proven wrong, but I really don't think that's up top.
I think Berel's Ranch pays about $300,000 a year to wet all their sludge because they don't have a, they can't de-water their sludge enough.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I, I know enough city managers that deal with this product, I really don't believe that's an option. But if it were, I'd love to be wrong, I just don't think that's right.
I, I worked on a project about 10 years ago, maybe, about 10 years ago down in the valley, and they were closing out a pond like this, and they just went in there and were pushing available material around it over the top and closed it in place, and it was all in accordance with TCQ, so they might, it could possibly, they're going to let you do it.
Yeah, I mean, TCQ does have a process to decommission to breach a dam. It, it definitely exists, and I would assume that, and, you know, it sort of has a twofold in this, right? You're breach, you're, you're decommissioning the dam and you're decommissioning the, the 217 permit. Totally, completely an option. The other option that we could potentially look into is, I don't know if you can see the little green line coming from the access, one of the, one of the...
To the north of the road?
Yeah, one of the, one of the requests that we got from the, the treatment plant was that there's a lot of park users who end up in the treatment plant.
A lot of what?
A lot of park users.
Ides.
Because, because of the way that the road is, so they ask for their own entrance. So, we could potentially look into, you know, again, keeping in mind that for Pond One, we still have to get to the treatment plant. So there could be options to do, you know, more of a ramp or something, you know, in a little bit of a different space, potentially. We have to definitely look into how, how that works with, with vehicles that are trying to get up there.
Yeah, so I, I, one of the things I think we need to explore with staff is, so I know, Patrick, I recall a while back, when first we talked about this, several weeks ago, I mean, I don't remember when, last, sometime last year, you came and talked about the value of this water, and talked about, you know, reuse, and I think, I don't, I don't think I would argue the value of the water, you know, to Phil, you're talking about, as you just stated, you know, that treated water is, is really valuable, but the pond, I don't see these ponds and their, their ability to hold water as valuable. In fact, I see them as costly because of the maintenance costs and all of the regulatory costs, et cetera. But if we could look as a staff, if we could evaluate Devon, different options for grants that would support that reuse, there's, I just have to believe, there's got to be grants and foundations and other groups that are interested in that, that re, the water reuse rather than something else. So I know that one of those projects, one of those discussions, but, you know, trying to get a tank and, and create a system that allows us to water our fields, I got to believe there's probably some grants out there that would enable us to do that as well. But I almost see those as two separate things. There's, there's this thing, which is how do we deal with the ponds, and then there's that thing, which is what do we do with the law, the effluent water, and that goes back to permitting, and could also go back to funding sources and what options are there. So these options address the pond issue, they address the list of the problems that TCQ identified, and I feel like mentally as policymakers, it might behoove you to think of them separately. Think about this as a pond issue, the problems related to ponds, and the effluent and reuse of the effluent water as a separate issue, because I really do believe there's probably going to be a lot of alternatives and funding sources that are going to be tied into that, that we can look into more deeply.
Well, and I agree with what you said, but the only reason I made that comment is that the two concerns that Patrick brought up, I think are valid, but we, we haven't lost those. We haven't lost the ability to use that water, the effluent water, the clean effluent water, to irrigate the fields, and we haven't lost the ability to use that water 50 years from now as in a water treatment plant.
Correct.
So, so, so that portion in my mind doesn't need to be part of the discussion, what really needs to be part of the discussion is just look at the cost.
And, and I do, I do want to just point out that with these being dams, I would say you guys are now kind of on TCQ's radar for having them as dams. The emergency action plans, I believe, have to be updated every five years, so there will be an ongoing expense, separate from the mowing and everything, that's going to have to go into that permit and maintaining that permit.
Unless they get, unless option C is...
If they, if they maintain as dams.
Right, if they, but if the option C is employed, then the dams go live.
Then you're, they're, they're done.
Can I, I want to ask, Patrick, from the Parks Board and the Friends of the Park, what are the concerns with, with breaching those, those ponds? The, the thing that I've heard is concern about not having water to use, but we're, I mean, if we, how much effluent are we pumping out of there? Couple hundred thousand gallons a day?
I think Mike said 350,000 a week.
Oh, sorry. That's what our permit allows.
The permit allows, yeah, it's not what we're pumping. There's a lot of different numbers, so your permit allows you 350,000 gallons per day, and you're, and again, the current problem is in the summertime, everybody wants more water than they can get, and in the wintertime, nobody wants the water because, and it's a trick, right? The grass doesn't need much water, you can't have ponding, so, and it, and I...
So my point, I don't want to go too far down this road, my, my point was that we have a lot of water that's coming out as, as treated effluent.
When we discussed, when we all were being used for, how much of that can be tracked out?
Right. Well, and I think this is something that we take back, I mean, if we can reuse the land that's in there as extension of the park, we actually grow our park, and we, we have no, as long as we can use the effluent to...
Irrigate.
To irrigate. The effluent is not going to stop flowing.
Yeah, we'll have to think about...
Councilman Hurd talked about pumping out of the river, too.
We'll, we'll have to think about extension of the park in terms of the T, the plant that's there. You don't want to encourage people to get in and around our plant, but that's, again, that's a discussion for another day, I think we, we figure that out once we figure out what's on.
You can still keep them separate from that.
One call that came up in the last, the Tennyworth Garden Trail meeting, three, four weeks ago, and it was, has anybody considered if the water is all gone, what impact that has on migratory birds and the number of birds in this park and all that kind of stuff? They said bring it up if there ever is discussion, but I just felt that that definitely brought up as a concern.
Ideally, what, the, the wetland would help answer some of that, but...
But, does someone need to drive out and do grants, do you increase the water rate?
I was going to say, we could also look at detention elsewhere. I was gonna say, we could also look at detention elsewhere. There is a, there's a low-lying area that is just south of the R, Permit RV Park where it, it's, there's no water, standing water there today, but that could be turned into a detention area if we wanted to.
And that would be accessible?
I don't, I don't know if you've figured it out, Patrick. We don't want any more frickin' dams.
No more dams.
We don't wanna make any more dams, but we can make detention. Yeah, it's one thing to have a detention, detention ground, this detention pond is pretty much at grade. It's a whole different thing to dam something up, as you've seen.
So something, just something to throw out here, if you have these two areas that you're opening up, it pretends to be the option of creating, you know, a feature, not a dam, right? Like, we're going to already be in this area doing construction, these ponds are gonna get drained, you have the option of doing kind of a park use that could include a feature like a, like a wet pond, something that is always full of water. There is a significant amount of drainage coming into this. These are not, um, you know, these are not isolated areas. They, you, even if you take the wastewater treatment effluent out of this, they still have drainage areas to them.
That's correct.
I haven't heard any discussion about selling the water downstream at all.
No, I think that is definitely the plan, but the, uh...
That's the two ten.
Right, that's something that we've applied for, uh, we applied for, when was that, last year? And it takes a couple of years for that to come through, but to me, that is absolutely the, the answer to doing this.
The, um, there is some, uh, to Mr. Dyer's point there, the Bennett Banks permit, we should hear back later this year. We should hear back. TCQ's said the application administrated really complete, so now they're doing their, their technical review of it. And that would, again, would allow the city to re, sort of, the city maintains the rights to that water, so the city could reuse it at some point, and we, we gave them a very broad permit that's not specific to any one location or anything. It's sort of from here down to the county line is sort of the way we set up the permit limits, and the, the uses were as many, as many and as varied as they would allow us to, to give for the city's future use at some point.
With that also, so, something else that he had, that he had mentioned is pumping out of the river. So if there's a concern with directly irrigating with the, I, I think there's a lot of water issues that we're gonna have to take a look at.
Yeah, and I, we could look into that for you, it wouldn't take long, but like, I know the, I do know the TCQ has a limit on like, for, I believe it's kind of phrased as private use, and it's 25,000 gallons per day. I don't know what they say if it's not a private property owner but a municipality or something, I'm not sure if, I, I suspect that could trigger something, some different rules because you're a municipality, but we could look into that for you.
The general rule is that your use is proportionate to the u, the, not, a use of others out of the same body of water, so, uh, we may, we may hit a, a threshold there.
Patrick?
If it's water out of the river, you're gonna have to get water, water from this for commercial purposes.
For commercial purposes, yes.
This would be viewed as a commercial purpose.
Yeah.
Water is cleaner than the river water.
No, I'm just wondering if, I think that the, the thing that we need to look at, we need to look at what are we actually doing with the water? No matter what, we've gotta figure out what we're doing with the water. What are our options with doing that? And then, um, the environmental, environmental impact to the wildlife that's there. Are there any other considerations that we need to take a look at?
Off the top of my head...
Use of the parkland, obviously, it would be bad to, to lose, uh, usable portions of the park, but if we're actually gaining usable portions of the park, I think that actually ends up being a positive.
So did you have additional slides about the wetlands?
Just, I'm almost done here, just real quick, just, um, yeah, but just on the, on the opportunities, right, we talked about, so the, the, to Mr. Dyer's point, we did talk earlier about one of the solutions, the city could evaluate additional users of reclaimed water, like I was saying, that additional ways to get rid of it. You, you have the ability to, to discharge the river, the TC is permitted, but the TCQ is a big fan of beneficial reuse, right? They, they encourage that. I think the reason the city has the current discharge permit you have is because there's a lot of downstream opposition, so I think those folks would be a fan of also beneficial reuse, whether it's a golf course, other irrigated fields, even city property. You know, with the two ten permit, you could run water to some of the city parks or other properties in the city, even landscape medians, and you could irrigate those. So, uh, what, what we showed you was kind of just straight line work. We said, hey, a ten-foot channel, a ten-foot bottom width, forty-foot top width, pretty engineered channel, helps with just rough sizing. We, there, we could do some meandering as we go to the Medina River, instead of it being a straight line, get there as quick as we can. You could do some meandering, so it's a little more aesthetic. Um, it's a dry channel, right? It doesn't hold water all the time. When I get into the wetlands, I'll kinda tell you why, but it's a dry channel, storm water. Obviously, when we get close to the end, we're close to the Medina River, the road and the channels get really close together, so we'd probably have to move the road over or something. I mean, and there's not a ton of room to meander, but that is something we could consider. Um, the wetlands, right, we've had some good conversations with, uh, Patrick and Devon and some of the folks from Friends of Regional Park and as well as Greater Edwards Aquifer Alliance. They've indicated a desire to do a separate project, to do a constructed wetlands, and so constructed wetlands need some kind of water source. Now it has a water source now from that seat from the irrigation canal.
Which it will continue to have.
It probably will. What's interesting about the wetlands is that we had the environmental scientists come out, and that's all, they believe that's all jurisdictional waters, which does mean that we potentially have a, some Corps of Engineers permitting, um, work if we go and mess with those wetlands. That's something we're gonna kind of evaluate further, but, um, that would make them subject to Section 404 of the Clean Water Act, and that triggers some, some rules as far as if you disturb them or mess with them. So, something to think about just on the wetlands aspects of it. What we're kinda thinking, we might try to design the channel to avoid the Corps of Engineers permitting if we can.
The irony is everybody wants to permit you and restrict you, but no one's gonna give you money to take care of the issue.
Yeah. So, you know, just again, really good discussion today, it was helpful to us. Um, we're working on cost assessments right now. The next step really is we're gonna finalize our engineering report with cost assessment information, so you really can get, sink your teeth into it and share that with staff, and then get city's feedback on it as a draft PER.
Should we, before we spend money on doing that, should we find out what is possible with the water? I, I think the water...
Spend money on doing what?
Um, understanding, well, on, on doing an engineered solution. Well, I guess you have to anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, yes. So we've gotta fix the TCQ issues, and that is, that is an engineered solution. What, what you could do for us is narrow down the options A, B, and C, and you've already heard that we don't really know what the cost estimates are for A, B, and C, but...
We should know cost for those within the next few weeks. Like, they're already in progress.
I would think C is the cheapest solution. It's gotta be, because even if it's not the cheapest initially, long-term it's the cheapest, because you're not maintaining your ponds anymore.
Well, we gotta look at cheapest and best, though.
Well, I understand, but that's why I'm saying where you all could give us some direction is, because the, the really, the only major difference between A, B, and C is how many ponds are you retaining? Are you retaining one, two, or none?
But, but actually, if we wait a couple of weeks, wait to get cost back, that's all I think.
Okay.
What we've heard tonight plus the cost, and I'll be in the way to this issue.
Are you trying to narrow down the options?
Yeah, I was just gonna tell you, I wouldn't even have to think of cost, I don't know how much more work there is to figure out this cost assessment, how much money we save if we won't make you look at A, B, and C.
Some money, I will, it, it takes, you know, I have a self consultant in pricing this stuff, it would take some, some money to do it. I will say, you know, you, we could do it that way, I just think there is some value to knowing what is the, what is the cost of that water, right? If you're, the cost of breaching it versus the cost of restoring it, you have some, you can put a price tag to the water, that could be useful, I've just...
Well, I think the things that we've gotta find out are about the, the Bennett Banks, can we, how would we actually discharge that? What happens to what we're pumping up to the farm right now?
So the, those are all things I think you know, though. There's an existing outfall that's part of your permit, so once you open a valve, you start sending water down to the river. That's your, and once you have the Bennett Banks permit, you're permitted to do that. We're kind of assuming that you would have that in hand so we could start working our way through draining the ponds.
I thought there was, uh, not an answer on can we use the effluent to irrigate the, um, the fields?
The farmer's use of the water, how, so the question is retention of the ponds, you're keeping one or two ponds, what impact does that have on the agreement we have the farmer to use your, that valve?
Do you have a lease, do you have, do you have a lease agreement that's, uh, I think it's up roughly next year? We, we did ask the, the permit language is kinda tricky in how it's written because it's tied to your TCQ permit, but I believe you got that in 2013. It's a ten-year lease agreement, so you could renew it, um, so you're coming up on that term.
But then, that's what I'm saying, he could, he could take the treated water, he doesn't have to take the pond water, so it would just, like, like I said, I think, I think you have to treat those two things separately.
And I think that regardless of what we do with any of these options, you have, you're gonna have to do a permit amendment to get the ponds off of your two seventeen permit, which is your wastewater treatment permit, and off of your two ten permit, which is the use of the reclaimed water.
If you, if you retain the ponds?
Uh, yes.
Even if we wanna drain them?
Even if you wanna drain them.
Okay.
Right?
Which we're gonna have to do anyway. You have to get rid of that water to work on the ponds anyway.
Yes, the, the ponds will have to be drained for a certain...
In any, in any aspect?
Yes. Sounds like more likely than not, the cheapest aspect is the breach of the ponds, but you can tell us that in a couple of weeks. And I think for that little bit of cost that it's gonna, for the millions that this is gonna cost, literally, I don't even think about that.
So, so the one question I have that I would, I would like to action on is for alternative C, where we breach the ponds, both of them entirely, would you like us to keep the alternative we have or show where we are taking it back?
I think show where you're taking it back, that's what...
We need to see that.
Taking it back, like...
Pushing it into the pond.
Pushing it into the pond.
Filling it in.
Yeah.
And then...
Holding, holding the toe and going backwards, is what that looks like.
And then the tank for, uh, doing the water...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's down the road.
Anyway, that it's gonna be...
It's already higher than the park, you could actually use its own static.
If you get rid of the tanks, if you get rid of the, the ponds, do you still have to do all the tree clearing and all that?
All the what?
All the tree clearing, all the brush clearing?
It probably changes the way you do it, 'cause I think you just bulldoze it over, you're not so concerned about it being, it's not a dam anymore, you're not so concerned about the...
Right, I mean, you're gonna do some of it based on where you're breaching, that's gonna affect it, where you're pushing back, that's gonna affect it, but if there's any trees remaining, any brush remaining, you actually don't have to take those out, right?
It's possible. Like I said, again, the slopes ability says they're not really stable, but we could go back and reevaluate that with, um, and again, it might be as simple as we're, if we're, if it's two point oh and we need a two point five, we just knock it back, we don't have to push the whole thing back.
The slopes are gone.
You're gonna push it all back?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, then it's, yeah, then it's a knock factor, 'cause we already, we remove the trees anyway by moving all the earth, essentially.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. Okay.
Yeah, the slope's at zero.
So, questions? No, I think you answered, you asked a bunch of questions.
I just, you know, I, I really, I feel like we're, yeah, we'll give you applause in a second. I feel like really what we need to do is talk to the Parks Board and see how can we use that, um, how can we use that, that area? You don't think?
No, no, well, I just don't think, I, I think that's secondary, I, I, or tertiary. I mean, I, I think the first issue is we need to figure out what is the most cost-effective and, and probably the mo, the best solution long-term for that area. Then we look at, okay, now that we've made that decision, what additional amenities? How can we use this land going forward? And then, another topic discussion is the water reuse, and what, what types of programs are available for water reuse at this location? 'Cause I think there's probably several, and the wetlands is one, and, you know, selling it to people is another, and pumping it into the river is another, there's, there's probably several.
You know, and I agree, I guess, kind of in between two. Patrick, I guess if we, if you think we're gonna have a problem with the wetlands and the Corps of Engineers because of the sea beach, if we were to take some of the effluent treatment and move that into that flat area, and as you had mentioned, suggested maybe have some water features up there, you could move your wetlands up into that area, and we wouldn't have to worry about the Corps of Engineers permits, it's just simply a B can.
We could make the Rock Rhine, that, that Rock Rhine River that's there, right? You could make it an actual river. 'Cause there's a, you know, there's a rock...
Little, oh, little Rock River?
Yeah, they, they have that rock, that dry river that's made of rocks that's supposed to represent the Rhine.
So those are other options, just come back and tell us.
Yeah, it's supposed to represent the Rhine River, right? We just make that a real river. There you go, guys. You're welcome.
So, I, I mean, this is, this is gonna back up a little bit, right? As pointed out, I'm a drainage engineer. Um, and so when we picked the twenty-five-year storm event as our design storm event, it was based on a lot of different factors, a lot of them being just engineering judgment. A ten-year storm could also be used, you would just have more flood, potential for more flooding in the park in a larger storm. Right? So we, by doing that, we could decrease some of the size of the channels, some of these engineered channels, and it could open up more options. As you can see from the map, the ten-year storm, you do have flooding in the park, and some of this could be from you guys saying like, well, in the two-year storm, we can't use it anyways, therefore, it doesn't matter what we flood, right? So some of that could be feedback from you guys, which could inform how much additional impact we're having in the park.
Yeah, and that was one thing, when you, when you first showed it, you were saying the twenty-five years significantly more, and honestly, when I looked at those two slides, I don't see a significant difference.
So...
It's not, it's not usable at ten-year.
Really, uh, kind of, on the, kind of, the park entrance.
Yeah, you can see it towards the pool, but even then, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can tell you the standard practice now is that one inch of rain, they shut the park down because they don't want damage to it.
Okay.
So I think that then the direction would be at the, the ten-year storm event.
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, it could be less than that, honestly, I don't, I don't remember.
Literally, they, they just shut the roads down, keep them shut until things dry.
Is that accurate, Devon?
Well, but if you look, the RV Park isn't affected by either one of these.
Yeah, the RV Park is, is still available in, in wet weather.
Well, I guess, yeah.
But it's, it's the boundary road.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a gate at the intersection.
One of the other things I think we, we will talk about is detention. Where, where would it make sense to do detention? What can, how can you turn that into a feature? I don't like that you're doing a feature on top of the hill. I think that's what got us in the trouble in the first place.
I think if you do detention, if you do detention down in the park, you won't get a lot of storage unless you get a really big area.
Right.
It's, it's only about two acres, that little space from the RV Park.
Yeah, it's not very big. Agreed.
Yeah, it's two acres now, and if you expand the RV Park, it's gonna be less than two acres, that little spot. So you will... You want to have that as not detention? It is just a meandering.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm talking about something totally different.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the meandering is a totally different thing.
And to be advised, that as design professionals, we have not analyzed this, there are options for the channels to be a little less obvious, so one vehicle, like gabions, which ultimately grow vegetation, so all of that can be looked at as, as a design professional, into kind of the design phase and the culinary...
I do think, one of the things that is a great blessing to this city, and I'm not saying this tongue-in-cheek it at all, at all, is the fact that you have such an invested group at this local park. Um, and it's neat, as a person who's just new here, you know, talking to people in Hondo and, and in San Antonio and other areas, I'll mention, you know, where I work and what I do for a living, and they are, by and large, as proud as we are of Steinbach and of all of our history, um, I would say as no, we are as known at, at a minimum for this regional park as we are for those other things. Uh, there are a lot of people, and the fact that we have so many, uh, people locally, like Patrick and, uh, all of his friends at, at the parks that are not only, you know, helping us with these decisions, but actually giving service hours to improve it and doing all these different things over the years, um, I have no doubt that as we move forward, we'll have a lot of opinions and a lot of influence on what that, what that channel looks like, 'cause I, I promise you, and I have zero desire to be part of that, really, 'cause I think we have a good group of people that will be able to inform the council and the policymakers on what that needs to look like. So I would say let's lean heavily on them as we, as we continue the design effort.
So, one, one other comment, and then I will cut down, is that something that I've seen with these dams is that right now, these dams are fairly heavily screened. You have a lot of trees, so it would not surprise me if that the non-citizen users are like, there's a dam there, right? They're, they're not gonna realize what those are. When you, when we take those trees out, all of a sudden, you now have a feature, good or bad, that you're gonna have to address in whatever way possible. And unfortunately, putting trees back on the screen is not gonna be an option for that.
Right.
So something else to consider as you guys are, are looking into this, that, you know, what mechanism are we gonna look into for...
But again, I think, I think those types of issues, and, and I don't know how y'all feel about it, you're the policymakers, but I, I know how we've, you've dealt with it in the past, is to screen that kinda stuff through the, the different boards, and in this case, I would, I would highly recommend that you use the Parks and the Friends of the, of the park, of Regional Park, as your screening method for those types of decisions, 'cause I, I've, I think they've done an excellent job over the years, the community has as a whole, and I'm really, I mean, I, I just think it, as a community, we're really blessed to have such a great asset, and I think a lot of that is due to all the volunteers and what they're doing, so...
The, the only reason I noticed is because that could be a cost that's not reflected in the process.
Sure. Sure. All right.
Are you done?
Really?
Really?
In closing, I wanna congratulate you, you guys. I found out that your founder was appointed to the TVPELS last week, so congratulations.
Congrats. And that's the State Board, the State Board of Professional Engineers and Land Surveyors.
We were both aware of this. Well, that was glad you all invited us.
When I read that, I thought about you all, Mike.
I know those folks.
I have, uh, one last question. Are we, are we currently incurring, um, uh, fines from TCQ because of those, or are they just...
They waived it, but they, they kinda told us, you know, it's a constitution. They threatened a bond, but...
They threatened to bond, but.
Your red order that.
We have an extra.
We are progressing. We are progressing, I think.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we were.
Well, I know that we're actively trying to take care of this. In fact, it's very important.
I think John should actually, when we request anything.
Otherwise, I'm going to pee on your leg.
He said, do you need a recess or a?
I sure do.
We're going to take a quick recess at 8:15.
Cool, thank you.
That's a bad deal all the way around.
That's a bad deal. Thought you hit the pee? I thought you said that's a bad deal all the way around.
Oh.
Oh. This new segment was created.
75 years ago.
We did take some sludge out, I think probably 2,000.
Well, yeah, that'll be quick.
We put some money in the budget, of course.
That one's the same.
I'll get it, Larry.
Well, I got one.
Not much.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to come on.
What's up?
We might be there today. I didn't want to do that. I want phone answering.
Yeah, I said, I said that during the.
Really?
They could do that too.
It's pretty cool in here.
But I got the whole presentation unmarked here in my binder.
Were you hot or cold?
Yeah.
Oh, I am too.
Then I got, I got more items to go.
Bruce Messel.
So if you're hungry, you got stuff to make quesitas, I got cheese and that in there. You got stuff to make like beans.
Away from me.
That type of stuff, that works to me.
I know there's one, you know, commemorating the Mormon settlement.
I doubt it, it's going to be, by the time we get out here.
I think it's the dam is all.
All right, let me check.
If not, then we can, yeah.
Yeah, the dam was. Joe's on his own?
Huh?
Joe's on his own, is that what you just told him?
Well, see, we've still got eight more items to go through. And lots to discuss in the executive session. How's your wife doing? Todd, how's your wife doing?
She's saying, I got Dad to take her to the baseball here in Seattle. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been here.
Oh, yeah, I hear you.
She wanted to answer my phone, I asked her what the score was, because they played till 8:30, and I guess she don't have her phone on her.
Left it in the car.
Huh?
Probably left it in the car.
Yeah. It's probably cold out there at the ball field.
Oh, yeah, we're supposed to get down to the 40s tonight and only be a higher 70 tomorrow.
Just wide open out there, you have no protection in the wind, but.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Right, because in their minds.
That was the old case.
Have you sent the letter from the THC that, where they denied it?
No, I talked, no, but I had, I had a long conversation with Ashley.
And who's she?
She is in the other picture. That's who I finally got to, to explain to me the why exactly what needs to be done, because if they want to do work on the Seale House, if Donna wants to ask I work on her house, they got to go THC first.
Now, what's their, what's the, what is, if they don't want to get THC's permission and all the.
They do have to.
No. You just give them all of that.
Well, yeah, but they.
So if you want, the only, the only enforcement they have is they can take your marker back.
But we needed to know, so we never, we never had known.
Well, this letter explains that. So I'll send you the letter.
I have a real good connection, she said, you call me anytime you got a question.
Yeah, no, no, she explained all this in her letters.
Is that the version?
Pretty, so she was the architect, she's the person who's now taking over the architecture review. And, but she explained it, and personally, myself, they actually is a far better recommendation.
Have I?
Were you saying your grandson had a game tonight? Yeah, it'll be over at 8:30. It started at 6:30, I can't even give my wife that, give you the score and be like, Adam Phillips.
Don't go through the loops. Yeah.
I introduced myself, but I didn't understand what he said.
Sure, I'd be good there. Why don't you call her and say, we want all the district markers in, in the account.
When's that meeting?
Especially with the election.
29th?
I think I just talked to you. Now, Nick Partey's got a letter and an email to go to Chris.
Chris Powers?
Yes.
Yeah, he's the new, he's the commander.
Okay, they have a letter and they have emails from Scott, tell me if I can work on it.
All right.
Carl and I are doing a, I asked Carl, and I'm going to, Carl's going to go and say, everybody that hasn't.
Oh, no, we're all.
I mean, I would say within the first six months, we were definitely getting over.
Madison has been, Madison Habey is my intern, and she's been compiling a list from the two different surveys of all the addresses, all the locations of all of the historic places that we've got. So I think that probably.
The protective, the protective property.
My old dog got to the point where she demanded her own bowl.
So I asked Madison Habey, who is, she's a high schooler here, and she's been working as my intern, and so one of the projects was to go and compile from the 69 and after surveys, all of the historical markers in town, like historical documented historical properties. Not all of them had markers. Not necessarily property, or, yeah, you're right. But it's not a pile altogether.
I can do a list, I can sort it out.
It's more than just 96.
Those are the only ones that are with a national historical.
Well, let's compare those and see.
We don't have anything over that.
Nothing official after the 96.
All right.
All right, you ready? Okay, next item is discussion and appropriate action.
Reconvene.
Oh, reconvene, thank you. We're going to reconvene at 8:22. And now the next item is discussion and appropriate action on approving a regional park sports lighting project.
You have something before I do this, is that, obviously, a couple of you say, hey, where was this? Where is this coming from? Why are we talking about this? So I was going to show you, this is not completely out of thin air. But it is something that was in the CIP. So what I pulled up was the CIP document that was brought to you all for adoption. And in the back of this document were these pages on different capital projects, and one of the final sections actually has streets. So one of the things that we'll be talking about, maybe if we're ready, we talked about maybe doing it on the, at the April 12 meeting, we'll come in and we'll talk about just the general fund portion of the CIP, how those monies are allocated for the next two to four years, and what our streets plan is. But all of that actually is, just you know, if you want to do some homework before you do it, it's all in the CIP that was presented to you, including what we're going to talk about tonight. And just as a reminder, so the CIP, just like a budget, it's, it's an estimate, it's a plan, but the staff doesn't go out and just start doing it because you have that plan. We're going to bring each one of these projects to you, to one, confirm, is this really the highest priority? Is there something else that's come along that's more important? You know, things change, prices change, to reconfirm those prices and that kind of thing. So what I'm scrolling through right now is just the streets portion of it. I believe the parks is after this, but, yeah, so the parks have a couple of different projects. These are the ones that are related to Lions Park, or sorry, Regional Park, this is the restroom concession that's planned for future years. I think that's in 2023, is what we're just going to hopefully be able to do, has one of the approvals then. But then for this year, you'll see in 2022, this capital project, regional park sports lighting, it's also mentioned in dark skies. So, and the reason it's mentioned that is that, as Devin will be into in a minute, the manufacturer that we're looking at using is the only national manufacturer that has dark skies approval. The lights that we're looking at are dimmable, and they are downward-facing lights that minimize that, that after, or that glow effect that, you know, impede the whole dark skies initiative. So I just want to cover that real quick, because I know several of you reached out to me prior to the meeting and said, hey, where is this coming from? Where is it? Where can we find it? And why is it coming out? It was in the CIP, it is, it's a 2022 project, and then when you go, we actually go to the parks master plan and look in their list, this is one of the higher priority items, it's the interior, you can do that, they're rated, one of the highest rated items, and it's in 2022, but it's under, it's a little difficult, but it says on sports fields renovations, and then under dark skies lighting, and that's this project.
And I guess that was my confusion, because I remember a year, a couple of years ago, you had come to us with the initiative, put dark sky lighting out of the park on the roadways and all the lights, and I just assumed that's what that $125,000.
Did it actually lighten either roadway or the trails?
No, it's just, just that, and that is a, a part of the CIP is to any future or replacement lighting, it will be under that dark sky initiative. But no, this is just to address the sports lighting in the park. And, and one of your questions is, is this our highest, like, our most important thing that needs to happen? A lot of that actually came from me talking to Scott, is due to the economy. This is steel, electric drivers, a bunch of that stuff, and, you know, speaking with our contractors, especially with everything going on in the world right now, I asked them, I said, hey, how long can you extend this quote? And with our playground equipment, surprisingly, you know, they, well, we're working with the grant, so they gave me a much longer time, splash pad, different things like that. But this company, they said, we'll give you an updated quote, but we can't promise anything. And they projected 25 to 30% increase.
So some of this is timely, just to avoid unnecessary cost increases. Is it the absolute highest? No, but when we looked at how we were going to spend money dividing it between Lions Park and Regional Park in the first four-year program, this fit within, both from a priority standpoint, but also from a cost standpoint, as being a project that would be eligible. There's certainly other ways you could spend the money. The other way that we gauged kind of which projects to look at was also on ROI. So bathrooms don't give you any ROI, they do reduce your operation and maintenance costs, so that we will talk about that when we talk about the restroom project. But these actually do give you a little bit more ROI, simply because by adding the lights, you're increasing the available use of those fields, and, and also by nature, increasing the revenue off of those fields, because you can now charge a little bit more, because you have night games and that kind of stuff, and I believe that's part of what you're going to get it to.
Mm-hmm, yes. So what this mainly falls under is, of course, we are busting at the seams with youth sports. I have gone round and round and round with, during our planning process, with our new youth football and then soccer. And soccer association, they're looking at 400 to 600 kids per season. Doesn't matter when it is, they started a new season last year for, sorry, the spring, and they had just as many kids as before. And so what we're running into is, that area is only so big, and I'm sure you all remember, there is some plans to extend some of those, those fields and get more usage out of the bottom part of the park. But reaching out with them, we decided to put that on the back burner for now, because overall, it came down to, during the fall, when we do have some soccer usage and football wants to use it, it gets dark at 5, 6 o'clock. Kids get out, there's no time. And so reaching out to these organizations, I asked, how can we make this work? Because both of them want to pay to use our fields, and they both want to grow the youth sports, and there's nowhere else to do it in the area currently. And this was the main thing that we were able to make sure would work. And that's one of the reasons why we pushed for this project. A little bit of an overview, this is not just what we currently have, such as Lions Field, where it's just a utility pole with some lights mounted on it. This is top of the line. Musco Lighting is, the market share, they control 80%, every other company is 20%. And that's not due to the fact that they're, you know, the oldest, it's because they're amazing. They do high school, professional football, as the Texans, they did, multiple other organizations, but with this system, it's not just immediately on, like our HBS bulbs, the high-pressured sodium, they're LED drivers, they start off at 10% and they slowly go up. It's completely controllable, so if someone calls me and they say, hey, Thursday night, can I have it for two hours? Doesn't cost the staff any extra time, I just program it in the computer, say what time to what time, they pay, we're done. The cool thing is, is that for events, one of my things is, we usually have to have those light towers. These are all completely controllable, independent. So if during 4th of July, everyone wants to leave, I crank that up, we now have, you know, 20% lighting on those lights, so people can leave safely, and it, I think it would be a huge feature for that area. On the map, the way that it is, is that bottom large field where the amphitheater lies, that's our main soccer field. We call that our multipurpose field, because it is the only full-size soccer field on the bottom of the park, so that is where we were going to light. With this quote, I am potentially preparing for the future, the poles that are on the south part are just the standard lighting poles, because we can't go back any further, but the northern lights, which would, no, the west and east, so the east side, so continuing in the park, towards the RV park, those lights are made, if we wanted to extend further, we can mount on those. So there is plan for growth if we felt there was a need.
In your presentation, did you present a map showing where these fields and lights are going?
Yes.
And where is it?
Oh, on this.
That's why.
Yeah, we, we've had.
So Devin was in Colorado, or you go?
Yeah, Colorado.
Colorado last week, on vacation, and trying to send this on his way back to get it to town, so we could get it in a packet, and unfortunately, there were some internet issues trying to do that, but.
It's in here.
Yeah.
All these charts are in here.
They showed the charts of the layout with the photometric candles and all that, but I can singe all over a map, but it's basically just, if you've been out to Regional Park, the first large field from the amphitheater. And the ways that the poles are set up, it's four poles, and they would be, they're made for, they're, they're higher advanced than just placing in the ground. There's going to be a hole, a concrete form, and then the pole fits right inside that. A lot of what you'll see on the specifics for Musco is, I mean, it's very advanced, but what it is, is it fits on our current system that we have on the back of the amphitheater, so it's not going to be something where we have to put in a bunch of new poles or underground lighting. They'll trench from the amphitheater and put the pedestal on the back. So of course, we want to keep the park as beautiful as we can and not add any other obstructions, so, and then they'll trench down into the park, to the poles. And from what I have been, I've spoken, this won't interfere with any of our, our sports. It's a very quick in-and-out process and.
So this is one field?
Yes, it's our large.
So it's one soccer field for the 150,000?
Yes.
And it's four lights?
But it's one full-size field. So currently, that full-size field houses three of our football, Under Armour football league fields. So what this would do is, we would focus, especially working with Medina Valley Youth Soccer Association, on the older kids. Of course, you try to get your earlier stuff out, because kids, you know, have a time clock on how long that they have attention and are able to make it. And then we, of course, it works for us too, additional revenue, youth select, they sometimes play later in the evening, and so do men's leagues. So that's the kind of groups that we would be focusing on. And currently, we don't have any room for them, so this would be in addition.
How does this impact your field? The field, you said that you put down the back burner, the field expansion?
Uh huh.
How does, how does this light placement impact your field expansion?
It's on the opposite, opposite end, so if we ended up building out and then we were needing additional poles, from what I've been told, to add another set of poles off of this system, it's ready to go. So everything we did in preparation for more is already there, would be a lot less than what would have been if we started off, you know.
So if you were to expand it, well, first off, so the lights that are there really only light up this field, if you expand the fields, you're going to have to add lights. But adding lights won't be nearly as expensive as this time around, because you're just.
Yeah, because we have the, I mean, this, I believe the, just the electrical system is like $45,000, the control system and radio and everything.
Yeah, and so, so one question I had was, on the contract, it says that we have to bring the power to them. Are they, in their contract, are they bringing the power from the source across?
They're referring to wherever the power company currently has a hookup, so that would be the back of the amphitheater, unless we wanted to put a pedestal somewhere else.
And the power at the back of the amphitheater is large enough to handle the four lights? So they're going to bring it from the back of the amphitheater?
Yes.
And that's, that's adding the power?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's 220, single-phase, or 240, I'm sorry, and single-phase, so, I mean, it's nothing that's way out of the line for what's already at the park, there's no extra poles or anything else.
It's all been checked out, and it's all, okay, so that, so there's not going to be any additional expense to the power or anything.
No.
So it's one field. And related to the revenue, if this gives the youth league, first off, Under Armour, is that a for-profit or a nonprofit?
It's a for-profit.
Okay.
And we pass them.
And what are they paying, are we, and what are we, what are we, what are they paying us now?
Their contract states it's 15% of the profit that they bring in.
And how much have they paid us so far?
So far, I believe it was like 1,500 just for that last year. They've only done one season with us.
Okay.
So can you go, can you walk through real quick what revenue we're already pulling off the fields, because isn't soccer around 3,000?
Soccer is 4,000 per season. So last year, that's why y'all saw a jump in our profits, and I believe that we came out to be about 9,000, maybe a little less than 10,000, versus pri, previous years, we were only at 3,000, or 4,000, was because of that. They have now two seasons, and then we have soccer, or football that has come forward.
And are we, are we charging anything for volleyball? We aren't, right?
No.
But volleyball is also requested lighting?
Theirs is just a bulb.
Yeah. They have lights on the other bulb.
They, they.
My rec, like, I remember calling some conversations, he and I have had about lighting concerns that they had, and I don't know if that's because the poles were not always lit, or they weren't always working, or.
Coin machine, that whole structure.
In that quote, it says 480-volt, three-phase electrical system requirement.
At first, we wanted to go all the way and have all the bells and whistles, and I reached out to Public Works, and they said 240, single-phase is what we need to do. So I actually have in front of me, we were waiting on that, and that's why in here, it says 150,000, even though in the CIP it says 135. We were just setting up some room for possible changes, and I have got confirmation, the quote did not change, 135,000, and that's single-phase 240.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
We just talked about this in the last agenda item, is this stuff capable of taking flood?
That was my same question.
Yes.
I mean, it's going to be underwater. I mean, it's going to be underwater no matter how much.
Yeah, so the, the way that this is in, in engineered is instead of just a direct pole placement in the ground, which is what traditionally a lot of places do, this one is they dig around, they pour a concrete.
It's on a pier.
Sleeve, it's not even sitting on a, it's completely encased in that. Yeah, and that's why, one of the reasons why they stick by their twenty-five year warranty on the, everything.
For flooding?
And covers any damages or anything to the placement of their equipment.
Did we, one of the things I know that I, I talked to you about.
There's a flood clause.
Convenience plugs?
Yes.
Convenience plugs, are those on the?
So for, for that, there is restrictions, but I have contacted the, them. And they have let me know that they will work it out so that if they have to put some kind of, there's these plugs that can be right next to the pole. There's some restrictions on it, but he was saying that they've done it before where there's a, a in-ground box that actually water can come up to it and the pole, the electrical sits on top. And they would recommend that instead of on the pole, due to the fact that they have to.
I don't know how needed they are, but that was just something you asked about, so.
Where, where are we looking at putting the control panel?
On the back.
Back of the amphitheater.
Of the one, of the one light?
Of the amphitheater. Yeah.
And is it going to be, have a key and everything?
Oh, it'll be locked up.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're, the only reason that we should ever have to access it is if the technicians come out. And that's why this company is, everyone loves it, is because they don't want anyone else messing with their stuff. They want to come out and deal with it and that's why I like it because then I can just change stuff remotely and it not require medicine and personnel or any of that, so.
Yeah, because, because of all the, the people that come and do not nice things in our park, that's what I was asking.
Yes, yes.
And, oh, go on, I'm sorry.
I just got a quick one, where are they located at, this company? Where do they come from?
Musco, uh, that's a good question, where do they operate now?
I couldn't see anywhere where it said.
Well, uh.
Let's see here.
I can't remember, I want to say Alabama, so.
Says LLC Sports Lighting, I don't see no address though.
Musco Sports Lighting. Where are you at?
Musco, Texas? I don't know, just being sarcastic.
I'm seeing some that says Arizona.
He's stirring the mud. Oh, there you go, get your Googler up.
That's what I'm doing.
Birdwood has a, has an Austin area phone number on it, that's on.
Indiana?
Uh, they were founded in nineteen.
They are in Ocalusa, Iowa.
Iowa, okay.
That's the corporate, that's the corporate headquarters.
Just curious.
As you noted on this quote, it is by word.
Yeah.
We did get, I did reach out and get quotes from different companies and they were all over the place.
Yeah.
This was a very good quote. And like I said, this is a very respected company. They are really great. The guy traveled from Austin here multiple times looking at our field, making sure our electric was the way it needed to be. Make sure that the pole placement and everything would not interfere with the aesthetics of our amphitheater. So I, I have a lot of faith in this company. I've worked with them on multiple sports complexes and that, I mean, it's great. And I was very happy that they were able to give us a quote that fit into this, this budgetary number with all of the, the fancy doodads that allow us to not be behind the times, be ahead of the times.
So going back to money again, your, your park's master plan and everything had only envisioned just to light one field. And because that's all the money that you put into it, it's one field, four lights. And right now, the soccer leagues are paying what they're paying without the need to light the field, including your football people. But because we're going to light the field, then you think you would bring in additional revenue above what you're doing now? Have you talked to any of the groups what additional money that they're willing to pay to go into the evening?
Yes, and I, I would say we're, we're meeting the needs barely.
But we're meeting the needs?
Not a football. Football and soccer, I've tried every which way to do it. The only reason we were able to make one season work is because it ended a month before the next season started. So football did a summer league, which they don't usually do because it's just too hot, summer. And so they usually do spring. So I, I've done everything I can with these two leagues and unfortunately, I don't see a solution other than this moving forward with them.
There's two, there's two solutions. There's one is the lighting, which will open up the ability for nighttime. But then the secondary is the field regulations that we proposed. And then the third, I mean, there, there's a lot of things we could do to that, but then also the watering of the fields. A big, big issue that was related to what we just talked about prior, with the prior item, is the unreliability of our watering systems because of what we're using now. So that's why I'm, I'm kind of at a point where I just want to throw up my hand and say, let's just use, you know, tap water. Because I, I know, I know I can rely on the pressure and I can rely, and I'm not going to worry about the heads. Right now, I, I don't know when we're going to get water because sometimes it's there, sometimes it's not. Sometimes it works, sometimes it don't. And that's, all of that is disastrous when you're trying to have a recreation program and attract.
And I have spoken with the leagues and they understand new bathrooms, they understand new improvements, that there will be an increase in fees. And they're fine with that because they're tired of, unfortunately, our, our lack of those things right now. And the good thing is, is that there hasn't been anywhere in the area for them to choose to go to. So I mean, it is time for us to, to invest in them and they understand that that comes with, you know, a little bit of an increase here and there.
I guess I could see increasing the bathrooms for about the same amount of money as what you're talking about is improving the one bathroom. Do you have, think you had a hundred and fifty thousand in there for that? Was it one fifty or two fifty?
Uh, it was one fifty.
Yeah, and they put two different times. But here you're talking about one field and I don't know if one field's going to help us. I think you need more, if you're going to go into a nighttime thing, you're going to need more fields than that and that's going to get real expensive. And then if we do, it hurts suggestion of move into a sports complex somewhere. Because I know there are some citizens that are upset that the field is used so much anyway for just sports and not for the picnickers and the play people and people coming out with their families because they can't do it because the field is.
Well, I, I do think this is.
So this is the discussion.
Well, yeah, one of the things I think you should look at this as an investment in, in a lighting system that allows for expansion. Because you're right, we're going to have to have more fields and you're going to have to have more lighting. But what's the, do you know what the incremental cost is to add additional lighting?
So per pole, minus the forty, I believe it's about thirty thousand dollars per pole at the ability for it to have the other side attached. And because.
So, because, yeah, so, so you could, yeah, so you use this, reuse the same poles and add additional lighting?
Yes, and if we didn't do that, then I would be coming to you asking for almost double the.
So you'd come in a hundred and fifty, that's seventy-five thousand for two new lights and then moving the two other lights around, that's thirty thousand. So you have about a hundred and.
Whatever the cost is of the bulbs on the other side is what I'm going to have to come to you if we decide we want to put lights on the other side. Of the, of the poles that are in the middle of the field. And then the next one, I would of course have to have the whole poles and the lights. So I mean.
You have to turn, you have to put double lights on this, on these poles and then put two new poles to turn into a second field.
Correct, yeah.
Which is another hundred thousand.
Correct. And, and what our goal is, is to, to get these leagues to utilize full days like soccer splits Saturday and Sunday. My goal is to, with, with the usage of nighttime play, is to get them just done on Saturday. And then allow other leagues to come in or to clear that area for other.
Other events.
Programs or, or things like that, so.
But how many soccer people can play on this field? You told me it was three football, but it's only one soccer.
So if we split it into the smaller, they only use this field for the older kids because it's later in the day. But I mean, it's the fact that during the, the fall league, it just gets dark so quickly. They only have two hours to play on Friday night. If we were able to offer Friday night, which is what, soccer aside, that's what football wants. Football wants to use it Friday night and possibly Sunday night. And right now, we don't have any options for them.
But if it's soccer and then both on Friday night, you're not going to have options for both of them anyway.
That would be my issue to deal with, with scheduling.
But we already have those types of problems.
You could, you could put about probably two or three or four of those little soccer groups on the big field.
Yes, and that's what football does is it's, they're turned sideways. And that's what Musco did was they gave us more, what's considered an extra-large field, a regulation-sized field. And that's what we used so that both leagues that we currently have and for future growth, this meets that requirement. We're not going to have issues where they're playing right up to the poles.
Have you looked at any other programming that goes into that as well?
Other programming, like sports or?
No, sports, events, we've got it right, I mean, this is lighting up right next to the, to the amphitheater. So like when you look at, when we did Movies in the Park, it's dark going up there, so opening up for that.
We could do anything, we could team up with the high school and do their graduation outside. And I know a lot of cities do that, where they have fun little festivals and, I mean, really the options are endless. We have that, it's a fancy system, it's not just a breaker on and off like most of the city facilities that we have. So I mean, the options are there, that would be something that I would invest time and look into and try to, I mean, y'all know I'm going to try to make it so that we make additional revenue because that just allows us to do more things for the citizens.
Sure. Yeah, so going back to kind of why, why are we bringing this forward? Because there are other options, your bathroom options, the, the real, the crux of it is lead times and costs. This, unlike some of the other projects that we're also pursuing at the same time, flash beds and lines of parking improvements, this was one that we were very aware of was going to increase in cost. You don't have to do it, we're not telling you, we're not taking a gun here and say, do this. But we are telling you, as far as opportunities and, and for improvement, this one's only going to get more expensive the longer we wait. And if you agree with staff that this is something that would benefit the park and allow for greater programming and nighttime use, then we think that this would be a, a better thing to do now than to wait, like instead of bathrooms or something else. But again, that's staff opinion.
Listen, you know, we built the house in this spec house. And when we built it, the cost was way high. And then it dropped down. If we waited three months, we couldn't build the house without thirty thousand dollar flats. And now it's going back up again. So yes, the prices are going, and it all, the prices are spiking because of the supply problem. Which we think when the supply problem's over, the costs are going to go, yeah, maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, maybe, and if you're willing to take that gamble, that's fine.
But in my mind, making money actually trades.
No.
Because always want to spend the money now. But it doesn't appear that it was actually budgeted for more than just one field. So if the whole plan was only to light one field, that's all that went into the master plan and that's all that went into the CIP plan. And if somebody told me, oh, we're going to light this one field for this and that's it, that's a lot of money to light this one field.
But if you look at it, it's not just one field, I mean, it's like not just one sports field, it's one field. It's like an entire area.
No, no, I don't, but it's one soccer field, only the older.
It's one regulation soccer field, it's three, it's three kids soccer field. It's one regulation soccer, it's one regulation football, it's three kids soccer, it's three, three or two kids football. So it depends on how it's utilized.
I just think we need to really sit down and cost, in my mind, cost benefit of what we're getting for the amount of money. And, and yeah, and also I'd like to kind of see that, a plan that shows this is where the field is and this is where the expansion, expansion is and this is where we would put other lights in the future and this is what we'd cost in the future if this is what we're going to really do. But, and I understand, yeah, it could go up twenty thousand dollars.
Or not be available.
Right, yeah.
We originally got this quoted a little over a year ago. So for them to honor that price was where I spoke to Scott and was like, hey, you know, we really need to sort of jump on that. It wasn't like I got quoted three weeks ago and we're, you know, going from there. That was something that we have, and I understand completely, this isn't a project that we want to feel like doing. The reason the master plan looked at one field is because we really wanted to focus in on five years. And I met with these groups and I said, five years, what do you expect your needs to be? And you know, playtime is the huge portion of that and so that's what we focused on. Yeah, I could have brought, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar lighting thing, but most likely, three fields wouldn't be used for the next, you know, so many years. So it tried to give us potential to move forward on for advancement. But then also if we decide not to, it's, it's about five thousand dollars that we're utilizing now that if we didn't later, it would be thirty, forty thousand.
Let me ask you this question, but these are about the same cost as the lights, the lights in the bathroom. Is the bathroom not that important that, that, because the bathroom's going to go up in cost also with.
The, the bathroom's one eighty is what you added.
One eighty.
Bathroom concession, that's, that's the item before this one in the CIP.
Well, it's not that it wasn't more important or it was, it, we have a bathroom currently and we don't have lights. So I just tried to figure out, you know, what we could expand to if, if the bathrooms were fine and they could manage. Because I, I asked them straight up, what do you want over other things? And that was their request, is more playroom. And that's when we looked at expanding the soccer fields and then they said, well, that's great, but this major field is what we use. And it doesn't matter if you expand it for the kids, I mean, it might work for football, but we need this major field.
Well, field expansion, like I said, you have to do irrigation. We have to fix the irrigation issue when we do field expansion because you're going to be tearing it up and you're going to need a way to put new grass down and to grow that grass reliably so that they're usable fields and not, you know, muddy, dirty places.
And where you're putting this, where you propose to put these in this major field that you're going to have, it will not be moved with this changing around all the fields you proposed.
No, that, that field is where we can fit a, a multipurpose field and we can't really, we've, we've tried to turn it and we tried to look at everything and maximize the location and that was the best location for large field.
If you give them this, these lights, but you, you just talked to them and they said, yeah, they're willing to pay extra. Do you know how much they will pay? Because at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, that takes a long time for us to, and a part of it is we're doing this for, for, for a profit group.
Well, the Medina Valley Youth Soccer.
That's Medina Valley, I'm talking about the football. Because a part of this problem we have is for a, for a profit group. And so I guess I'd like to know what the return on, as you mentioned, a return on value, what that could be.
Can I? We got the money for this? We got the money, buddy?
Yeah, it's in the CIP, this, like I said, this is a project. When, when you look at your CIP and you see the hundred and eighty thousand that's in there for twenty twenty-two for Regional Park, this is the project that's supporting that. Again, it's just a staff recommendation. I guess my answer on ROI, Phil, would be, we can probably get those numbers for you, but the short answer is it's, it's greater than zero. Unlike most of the other projects we're looking at, which don't have an ROI attached to them at Regional Park. The heating and the pool does, there's a, but there's an offsetting cost, considerable offsetting cost. That, that's something that, that Herb and I and Devin are going to talk about in the future is how do we look at that project and, and build a business case for it for the rest of the council so we can better understand that? I, I don't know of, I'm struggling to, to think of any other projects at the park. And again, we're going to talk about RV expansion is in the, is in the report. RV expansion is a separate issue, I, I, I think that has an ROI on it, but there's not very many that have ROI.
I, well, I see this just like the pool, if you're going to eat the pool, what's going to be the return of investment?
I get it.
And that's just like these lights.
I get it.
Because it is a lot of money.
Yeah.
For one field.
If there's no more discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
I'm, 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 I'm my discussion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we contract Musco Lighting and building the sports lighting at the Regional Park not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion passes. Thanks, Devin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Devin. You'll get your applause tomorrow.
I think everybody's tired. Uh, next item is discussion and possible action on the use of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. Yeah, the good news is I think we're winding down on the items. Well, maybe not, though, there's that, there's that tourism and planning event field. So the ARPA funds, I, I included in your packets, an overview, Leroy and I participated in a national webinar on Monday that went over this and one of the lightbulb moments I had during. that went over this, and one of the light bulb moments I had during that, I want to call your attention to as we look at the packet. So give me one second. In that, this is titled Corona buyer state and local fiscal recovery funds overview of the final rule. If you flip to page nine of that document. And this is what I'm actually waiting for final confirmation of, but I'm, I'm almost a hundred percent certain I'm accurate on. I was prepared to talk to you about kind of how we can use this for infrastructure, it's other things, but a lot of those have pretty stringent reporting requirements. When we sat through the, this presentation, it was actually during the Q and A section of that, that, like I said, for me, the light bulb turned on. And so I'm going to read this, this section to you and then explain to you what I think it means and what I'm fairly certain it means. So this is under determining revenue loss. So one of the very first items, replacing lost public sector revenue, this is an approved use of these funds. So under, again, on page nine, it says recipients may elect a standard allowance of ten million dollars to spend on government services through the period of performance. Under this option, which is newly offered in the final rule, because it wasn't available and this is why I didn't want to talk about it last March when we first found out, because so much has changed. Under this option, which is newly offered in the final rule, treasury presumes, and this is operative word, presumes that up to ten million revenue has, has been lost due to public health emergency and recipients are permitted to use that amount, not exceed the award amount, so we only get three hundred and eighty thousand or whatever it was, to fund government services. And that's in quotations, because they define government services later. The standard allowance provides an estimate of revenue loss that is, that is based on an extensive analysis of average revenue loss across states and localities and offers a simple, convenient way to determine revenue loss, particularly for SLRF's smallest recipients, that would be us, smallest recipients. They're actually talking directly about small cities like us. All recipients, all recipients may elect to use this standard allowance instead of calculating lost revenue using the formula below, including those with total allocations of ten million or less. Again, that would apply to us. Electing the standard allowance does not increase or decrease a recipient's total allocation. So again, the light bulb moment was, oh, as she was explaining during the Q and A section, we anticipate that a lot of, because one of the persons was asking, we didn't do the revenue, we weren't going to do the revenue calculation before. But now in this new rule, we want to do the revenue calculation, can we move, and this is a recipient that had more than ten million dollars apparently, because they were going to move some of their money into the revenue calculation. And she, her answer was, yeah, we expect a lot of people to use this. And I think frankly, this was the lazy, the federal government's lazy way of, of dealing with the, a portion of a vast sum of money. Because this removes something like ninety percent of the, the, the reporting requirements. Because people like us, because, and the reason I bring this up is we don't have a revenue loss. That was our problem. And under the original rule in March, I couldn't use that. Some of the cities that, you know, city managers in this conference, we were talking about who's going to use it. I, I remember talking to one guy and that's, and he was encouraging everybody to use the revenue loss method because they did have a loss, they had a year-over-year decline. And he said, that's the least amount of reporting and that's the, you put it basically in general fund and anything you can use general fund monies for, you can use this money for. So, short story, sorry, too late, is what I'm recommending to council is that we, one, use this as, as our declaration of the used funds, that we take it as a revenue loss. And then what, what will happen with those funds is they'll basically be able to be used for anything that they further define, and this is later, you can look at this later in the document, as a government service. Specifically, what's, what the documentation you have that goes along with this is they use for generators. The reason I'm bringing up generators is in the CIP, we only identified the cost of the generator itself. If you look at the ultimate quote, which by the way is a revised quote, it's, okay, it's one point, it's a lot of money.
One point three million.
Yeah, it was originally two point seven. It was ridiculous. So we went back and we said, okay, what if we don't need it, let's cut this back to what we actually need. And then we got this quote, I still, I'll just, I mean, no offense to Altman or even if it works for Altman, but I still find this a little bit incredible and, and I'm using that in the literal sense of that word because of, they've got, we've got five foundations for generators and their foundational, the foundation cost is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That seems high. Then they have engineering services of a hundred and thirty thousand. That seems high for, for, like, I don't know how much engineering goes into.
Setting a generator on.
Yeah, to, to, putting the generator. Then they have.
Are they pouring concrete?
It's pretty straightforward.
Price of concrete went up again.
A hundred and twenty thousand for miscellaneous materials. So that's my point, I, I find this a little incredible, even though this is a buyboard quote, you know.
Holy.
Once, once you tell me if this is kind of where you also see the need to use this money, then I would go out and get additional quotes, because I'm not ready to place the order with Altman.
Yeah, I guess just move things along, I know this is what the county did, they gave these funds to private water purveyors across.
Yeah, we didn't get any of that money.
And we did because we're not, it was only private.
They used it for some of that, they actually, they actually also used a broadband option.
But they did use, not all the money, but they used a great portion of money, it was in the paper and Chris has been scott, that's what they've done, I think it's a great idea. So I think personally, this is a great use of these funds. And, but it sounds like you still want to go and research the price, you think the price.
Right, I, well, I think, I'll be honest, before, so I had to put the package together on Friday. We had, the, the federal seminar was on Monday, there's nothing I could do about that. So I didn't have the aha moment until Monday. My original plan was to bring it to you all and say, hey, I'm going to use this, I, I think we should use this money as generators and that's going to be found underwater in sewer infrastructure and it's here, three one B, and you got to look at this page. But after the, the presentation on Monday, I realized, oh, I think we can just do, we can just declare this as lost revenue and then we take the money and put it in our general fund and then we can just figure out what we want. We don't have to, we don't have to make a decision tonight to use it for generators. Because the problem is, I should be clear, in April, before our next meeting, I think, I have to, I have to report to the federal government how we're going to use these funds. So I needed a decision tonight, which, which methodology you want to use. But again, after the meeting on Monday, I realized, oh, I can just, we're just going to call this revenue loss and put it in general fund and we don't actually have to declare, all we have to declare is it's going to be used for general, whatever that, those quotes are. We don't actually have to tell them it's going to be generators.
What the motion would be? Just move this along?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, if you're interested in doing generators, you can go ahead and talk about that. But right now, I don't think we need to do that, I think it's just to advise staff to utilize the ARPA funds for revenue loss recovery.
I would like to make a motion as so stated by Scott.
So.
Does that work?
That's a motion to apply to utilize the ARPA funds for the revenue loss item. That's identified by program.
How many, how many generators are we buying? We're not buying any generators just yet.
Well, I'll bring that later, but, but we're, that's also outlined in the quote, it's four or five and you can actually see where they're going to be, it was well sites, stations in City Hall.
I made a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Next one should be easy.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, well, time's up, again, just remind us, nine oh six. Discussion and appropriate action on adopting an ordinance canceling the May seventh, twenty twenty-two general election and declaring all unopposed candidates elected to office.
So moved.
Second.
I think.
Okay, we'll talk about it later.
That was Sheena's seconding.
That was good, I liked it.
You made a motion.
Got it.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item at nine oh seven, discussion and appropriate action on approving a contract with community council of South Central Texas for the administrator of the Castroville Carers Utility Assistance Program.
Okay. Let me get there. So this is keeping what, with the action you gave me on January, which was to create this program. And I apologize, I would like to have been more diligent in doing this quicker, but I, I, could you look at this contract? You did, right? What? Okay, I did send it to you. So pending the, the, what I'm asking for is pending the attorney's review and approval of the contract in its language, I'm only really looking for direction in two areas, Bill, Councilman King. And that would be in the highlighted areas on page two, where it says the individual must meet the income eligibility criteria based on household income not to exceed. And then in highlight, it says two hundred percent of the federal poverty guideline limit. So in twenty twenty-two, that was thirteen thousand five hundred is the federal poverty, poverty limit and two times would be twenty-seven thousand one eighty. You all, as a governing body, can set this amount at whatever you want, you can make it four times. All it is, is a way to determine whether or not a Castroville resident, by your standards, is eligible to go and seek help with their utility bill. Okay, and it'll be for their electric utility. It's not, it's not going to be for, for all, it's not for water, like, it's not for all of those, it's for the electric, right? And then I get, the concept there is that whatever they're, you know, that, that's the, you're getting, you're basically removing their electric, the electric portion of their bill. Because there's another item that I'm also asking for your input on, that we'll talk about how much money they're eligible to receive in any given year. So I, I really just, I don't have a suggestion necessarily, I did put two hundred percent. That's, I think, what Reliant Energy and their associated companies use as their threshold. It could be anything you deem appropriate. You could actually just set a dollar amount, you don't actually even have to reference the poverty limit. You could say anybody that makes less than, or any household that makes less than fifty thousand dollars, that would also be acceptable.
Did, did you make sure, like, I didn't see the wording in here that says that there are a customer of ours?
Yeah, it, no, it, it is in there, I'll find it in a second.
That is, it's number one, the individual must be receiving residential electric service from customer at the residence, which is the Electric Home Energies.
Okay, so we are the customer?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, right.
Yes, and, and customer is defined at the very beginning of the contract. So, so that's one area for your, your input is what you want to set the threshold at and what you think's appropriate. And I'll remind you that Castroville is, in this respect, the wealthiest of, of the cities in the county in that our median income is the highest. So it would make sense in some ways to make our threshold a little bit higher than what you might expect because.
Do you know offhand what the median, median income is? Close to sixty.
Yeah, much?
I think it's fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight thousand.
So this is basically half of that.
That's, that's the median. And then the other items, while you're thinking about that, the other item is on the very next page, on page three, where it says recipient can receive assistance from the program of no more than, and I have seven dollars, seven hundred dollars, in any calendar year. But again, you all can set that to whatever limit you have. Once the monies are expended, they're expended, they're, you know, each year you'll have the opportunity to determine whether you want to add more funds or not and we'll get reports, I mean, this does, this contract does require reports from the agency. So they'll tell us, you know, who's actually utilized the, the funds, how many funds are used and all of that kind of stuff.
And we've never done this before?
No.
I guess one advantage to keeping it as these recommended numbers is, is that, like you say, once the funds are expended, so if we make it really high, then fewer people are going to be able to use it.
But if you think about.
Wait, if you make which really high?
The median income.
This number that they're recommending is, comes out to fourteen dollars an hour they're making.
That's, that's not very. If you make the incomes higher, the more people are eligible.
Right.
If you make the amount of money given away, then there are fewer people that are going to feel like that.
So that'd be an advantage of leaving it at these numbers.
Well, I think it's probably better to do, if you think about, so low, I think that the, the income level is appropriate. I think that the dollar amount is probably a little high. I would say that.
Seven hundred a year?
Yeah, if you think about that, if they take advantage of that every year, that's a month, a month's worth of utility.
Or two.
Oh, this is electric only.
Electric only, it's like two, you know, the average bill is two hundred dollars.
So that's three months.
In the summer, it could be four hundred dollars.
Yeah, I'd say summer's the big one.
Unless you're Sheena. I guess a lot of electricity.
Yeah, I think that four hundred is a more appropriate as we step into it and we can up it if we deem that necessary, but I think that it would be better to let that go further. Four hundred dollars for, this is not a long-term.
Well, usually, so you, most programs allow an applicant to, to approach, to get, to approach them twice, to utilize them two times during a given year. And that's why the seven hundred dollars is there, because it's, on average, we're.
Oh, it's twice a year, not.
Yeah, you can't do it every month.
Okay.
I, I like the four hundred dollars suggested myself.
You gonna make a motion?
Sure.
Should we move this along?
Yes, I would move to approve the.
So there is a recommended motion in there.
Implementation of the American, oh, there is a lot, oh.
It's on the, it's in the general report.
On the yellow sheet?
I'm on, I don't have the yellow sheet.
Oh, maybe it ain't in the other sheet. Reminds you of it, okay. There it is. There you go.
Just, I motion, I move we authorize and then fill in the rest.
I move that we authorize the city administrator to establish a contract with CCSCT, as discussed, setting the maximum threshold income at twenty-seven thousand.
Two hundred percent.
Hundred and eighty dollars and, I'm sorry, two hundred percent of the federal poverty level and establishing a maximum annual benefit of four hundred dollars per household, thank you.
Second.
Great, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you all.
Motion passes.
That'll be something we brag about and we talk about in our next. Where we talk about.
All right, so the, what's that?
Newsletter.
Timestamp, nine fourteen, next item is discussion and possible action on creating and funding a tourism and planning event position.
So you recall at the last meeting, we talked about this, you asked staff to kind of come up with what would the zoo's responsibilities be? How would they report, what would the job description look like and what is the cost to the city? So that's what this is, it's coming back to you in this position. This does, just speaking off the cuff, this does put me in a precarious position. Because on the one hand, we need resources, most certainly. And I would love to have someone in this position doing these things. Because I think there's all kinds of good that we can't even put in, in words at this present time that will, that will be good outcomes that we wouldn't have foreseen, right? But on the other hand, there are two major concerns. One is I've asked the entire staff, that's, you know, my, my general fund staff specifically, to keep a lid on all of our general fund costs because we've made this multi-year commitment to a tax rate and I really, really don't want to break that commitment to you all. And the other concern is if we do this, as you've seen in the, in the general summary form, it would be a fund balance funded position. And just from my fiscal conservative side, that, that person that's driven you to do the things you've done with your, the issuance of debt and setting the rates where they are, et cetera, I, I a hundred percent don't believe in, in, in funding operations out of fund balance. I, I, I don't have to keep buying stuff, like buying heaters for pools.
Because it's a one-time deal.
Yeah, one-time capital improvements, as long as there's not an ongoing operation, which is a review of the. But, but, I mean, I don't have a problem with capital expenditures at one time and using fund balance for that purpose. It's a fact I recommend it, that's how you should use those monies. But to tie yourself to a position and pay for it out of fund balance, I have mixed feelings about. That said, you have lots of money and this isn't an expensive position and frankly, you could pay for it for ten years and you still would have two hundred days in fund balance, right? Assuming you didn't spend the money on anything else in that ten-year period. So you have plenty of money, that's not the issue, it's just, it's more of a, you know, the, the financial manager part of you that.
Well, and if you look at it in these terms, you look at it with a, a one percent increase in, in revenue. One percent takes care of this position and all of the expenses and everything else, one percent. And the idea of this position is to bring in additional revenue. And that is through sales tax, it's through economic development. That said, I don't feel like the, I feel like we're close on the job description, but I don't feel like it's fully baked out yet. Identifying the actual expertise that would be required with this, I think we need to do some more work on that to figure out, is that primarily tourism, is that primarily economic development? Because they're two related but very different skills.
Well, I'll be honest, I don't think you can afford an economic development. Well, I haven't created a position as an economic development position. I've created it as primarily tourism events with some business development. The idea being that the position can grow into economic development. I fully anticipate, depending on the candidate that we get, and it really will depend on their skillset. their skill set, but I would fully anticipate that that position could grow into an economic development director position potentially, but initially, it's really a tourism and business development director position. So it's, you know, economic development director, tourism and business, it's, it's a lower-tiered, also less expensive, wider pool of candidates position that, that could grow into the other position, so we wouldn't pay for the certification. We might get that person to get certified, but we wouldn't try to buy a certified person, economic development certified person in this position. That was my thought process, but again, I'm, this is...
We would only be using cash for the remainder of this fiscal year as well, because next year, if this was a bona fide investment with return, we can budget it from the following year. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, it would be in next year's budget, but I'll be, I mean, I don't know that, I haven't done, I was telling, I think the mayor this earlier when I was looking at the budget, I haven't done my revenue analysis. In fact, I think, you're right, I have a meeting on that tomorrow. I wanna say after my staff meeting, we're gonna look over revenues for next year and start to do some forecasting and look what those numbers look like. And until I do, I really do not know what that is, but Paul, you could be right. You couldn't, we might already be headed that direction, frankly, but I honestly don't know.
Why is the position, it's a part-time position, why are we paying benefits?
It's not part-time, it'd be full-time. If I had put part-time in it, that was a mistake.
I thought it said part-time.
No, if, if I did that, that was a mistake.
So it's a $65,000 salary plus 20,000 benefits?
Yeah, that's just rough.
85,000 a year.
Instead of tourism, can we, can we use the term visitor convention? Cause I think that's what, that this term is supposed to be. That's what cities like us, and big cities, it's, it's visitor and convention, or visitor and visitor bureau?
Yeah, so there's double things. Again, I'm just gonna be candid, we, we have, and you don't create a position for a candidate. The, the $65,000 is in part due to the salary expectations of a bona fide candidate that we know would apply. But that's also the understanding that that position's gonna grow into the economic development position. If you looked at partnering with the, with the, with the chamber, and all you really wanted was a tourism convention and events person, you probably could pay 45,000, and you wouldn't have to look at it as a growth opportunity, like you just leave that person in that position. But in order to satisfy, but then you also have a vacancy for economic development, which is a need, and which is a, a need that we're, it's something we really need to fill. So the idea was to try and find a way to fit, plug both holes at the same time.
And I, and I agree with plugging both holes. I think the title, I just get nervous with tourism, because I think that limits what that is, but...
Well, that's why, that's why I include the business development, because then there's this, then you open yourself up to people who've been chamber execs, and, because the pay is slightly above, where, like, a really good experienced chamber exec position could come in at this salary, and they're on an economic development director, but they're, they could get the certification and become an economic development director, and that pay level, by the way, is north of 65, depending on the size of the city. But you're, in economic development directors, you're at 85, usually salary minimum. And I, I don't know how much Hondo was paying theirs before they let her go, but I wanna say it, it was six figures. So she would probably...
Six figures?
I think that's correct.
Always.
We can go back and verify that, but I think that's correct.
But this, if this is something that would help you, is what I'm hearing from you.
But if you look at, like, what she was able to bring in to Hondo, just Cecil Hall by itself is gonna make that city so much money.
Six figures? Come on.
Yeah.
But we're not talking about six figures in this thing, that's what I'm saying.
No, we're not, no, no, I'm not advocating for that. I'm saying that if we need somebody in here that can do, like, when we look at the economic development opportunities that we've had, there have been some that we just don't have the bandwidth to pursue. There are some areas where we can bring in, I mean, if you think about somebody that is gonna build a, there was one opportunity for a, what was it, a three-quarters of a billion dollars, 700, was it a 750 million dollar facility?
I don't know for it if this is something that would help Scott.
Yep.
And like Paul alluded to, if we need it now, take it out of fund balance, and then budget it next year.
If it works.
If that works.
Is this...
It's kind of a broad period.
We need time to prove it.
Yeah, exactly.
But it would be competed like a normal position.
Yeah, this would be open, I don't like to make any assumptions about who's gonna be in the, in the, we open this for application.
Yeah.
And it'd be open to internal candidates as well. I mean, I think we...
Who would make the selection? You?
Ideally, yes, but if that's something that you all wanna play a role in, I'm fine with that.
I think we make recommendations on the skill set and on our expectations out of it, and empower him as the hiring manager to do that, just like you would with anything else. The only two positions that we have, like, direct responsibility for would be police chief and city secretary.
Well, and I, I would just tell you, I mean, my, my goal is to select the highest qualified candidate we receive. So I've, I've made no promises to any candidate, anybody's expressed interest in the position, because I don't know what we're gonna receive, and I would like to pick the very best and highest qualified, and that's...
Get your best right for the dollar.
Yeah, I can't be any more blunt than that.
If we approved this approximately, how long are we talking about before you hire somebody?
Uh, I generally allow at least four to six weeks for recruitment of this type. You know, like I said, we're, we're filling this police chief position, I think it'll be several months, three, two to three months minimum.
Have we, have we made other commitments of the fund balance that we're planning on using to pay for this? Have we already allocated any of that fund balance to anything else?
We have allocated fund.
Yes, the electricity project in River Bluff.
River Bluff?
Yeah, but that's the enterprise, yeah, that's now gonna be bond funded.
Okay.
So that'll be bond funded.
How much is left? Do we have enough left to cover this?
Oh, yeah.
Without getting us below our...
Four billion. Yeah, you heard tonight that you have $3,806,000. So you have a lot of money, and the amount of money we committed, so we bought a kiosk, right? And I think that's coming out of fund balance, so that's 35,000 plus the cost of the...
Those in the drive, 13,000.
Yeah, so it's about 100 and change. So you are spending some of that money, but, but also, Herb, at the end of this budget year, we'll have to see whether or not we add to the bum balance, fund balance or not. I really don't know, because I do try to, the mayor and I were talking about this, and I'll just remind you when we did the budget retreat, when we estimate our, good accounting practices, this isn't a scheme by any government, good accounting practices, you conservatively estimate both expenditures and revenues. So that means, conservatively, your expenditures should always be estimated higher than you're actually gonna use, and your revenues should always be estimated lower than you're actually gonna receive. So ideally, at the end of any budgeting process, if you've adopted a balanced budget, then at the end of that budget process, you should have a net positive, because your expenditures weren't quite as high as you thought they'd be, and your revenues came in higher than you anticipated. So you'll have some X number of dollars. And depending on inflation, like we're in an inflationary year right now, and fuel has gone up, and depending on your staffing levels and a lot of other variables, there's a lot of things that may impact that, but I really don't know, our best guide for that is the reports that you get on a quarterly basis. And right now, on a quarterly basis, we're looking very, very good. We've got 100% of our property taxes already in, and there's still more money coming, and we've got, we're lower than expected on our, on our expenditures, so in the first quarter, you'd expect to be at 25%, but we weren't as a general fund, we were like at 18. So that tells you we're running pretty good.
I only have one other question. If, if we're gonna call this person tourism and business development director, doesn't director imply that they manage a staff?
Yes.
Is that the right word to be using for this position?
So, yeah, I do propose that they, that this position manage the Betty who's out at the Steinbach. So they would have one person that would report to them initially, but they could, you know, again, the position could grow to where they manage other folks that I have, and not necessarily adding people, but I may re, I am, well, in fact, I am realigning people, that's, there's reorganizations that I've discussed with various directors, so...
Yeah, I, I, I agree with her. Director, I'm not feeling it. Supervisor or representative, possibly. I mean, you supervise one person, that doesn't make you a director.
But I understand that, but keep in mind, part of the reason the director, I mean, it is a title thing, so part of the reason that title's there is to attract talent.
I understand.
To get, yeah.
But they're a one-man shop, technically, they're, they're it, cause the lady at the Steinbach...
The executive director of the...
The Steinbach house lady isn't gonna help this individual do stuff.
Why not? She has a lot of downtime, why wouldn't she?
Yeah, it depends on what it is.
That would be the expectation of the position.
Well, yeah, that's a whole other management issue. Like, if I have, so I expected every employee to do what I would do, which is, I, I am glad to work for Cashville. If you ask me to do something, I'd do my very best to do it. And there's nothing that is beneath me, there's not, you know, if I have to go catch an animal, or I gotta go sweep a street, or I gotta help some old lady with her trash, I'm gonna do any of that. I don't, I don't, I mean, so I expect that of employees as well. And if, I have employees who say that, who feel like it's not their job, or, then honestly, they don't need to work for the city Cashville.
I don't believe she would say that.
And I'm not picking on Betty.
Yeah, I'm not either. I'm, I'm, I understand that, I'm just looking at the reality, cause reading this job description, there's stuff in here that she won't be able to do, Betty won't be able to do.
Well, that's not in her job description.
The job...
Exactly. No heavy listing.
So the, the fact is that the Chamber of Commerce advertised for a part-time position that pays less than twice the, the poverty rate as an executive director.
Oh, I remember when they were here at the last meeting.
So it was an executive director, this is a director.
I, I don't feel director. I, I just...
I think you're getting hung up on nomenclature, that I don't see the negative impact to it, and so maybe that's what, is it a perception thing from our side? Because that's part of the reason that you do that, is that perception thing, that they have the, they have the, as they're, especially as they're talking to folks in economic development, they are the economic development director, and it gives them some sort of additional credibility to major companies that may be coming in.
I, I just, I don't feel that. Also, one other concern I had is preparers recommends, presents, and administers the use of hotel occupancy funds. I feel that should be after approval, a city council should be put in there.
Well, part of the reason that we're standing up the convention, convention and visitor bureau for tourism is dealing with those funds, because right now, we're not properly dealing with those funds, and so it's making sure that they are used according to the Texas two-step, making sure that they're being appropriately used. This would be the person who would be the liaison to both the convention and visitor bureau and to the economic development corporation?
I agree with that. I could, I can, that wording could be changed to advisors on the appropriate use of, that's fine.
Well, cause ultimately, it, it comes through.
Right. All the budgetary stuff comes through council anyways.
Right, but I don't want it after the fact. I want it before the fact.
Right, right. No, that's a valid, that's a valid concern.
Can I make a motion?
Mr. Job, one more question I have. The job description's not written in stone yet, right?
No.
Yeah, we're gonna tweak it.
Yeah.
Cool. I can support it.
Change supervisor from tourist representative to Steinbach lady.
I would like to make a motion to direct the city manager, city administrator.
There you go.
To advertise and hire, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead with tourism and business development director.
Position.
Position as stated in your memo.
Is that all right?
No, I'll wait for the second and the final one, and I'll, I'll see.
You got a second?
I got it.
You got it.
I'll second it.
All right, so I got a motion in a second? Any discussion?
Is the salary capped at 65,000, or is it gonna be negotiable?
I think it's up to 65,000. Did you wanna stipulate that?
Well, I said in the memo, and that's in the memo.
That is up to 65,000, depending on qualifications.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The only question is, if y'all wanna change that job description or anything else, who do you wanna appoint as the person that you go to to get that?
Change what?
The job description, I, I heard that you wanted, I think the mayor was commenting that, that you wanted to modify that.
I'd be happy to take, lead with that, and anybody that's, if you guys are okay with that, and then if you have comments, questions.
Yeah, I guess when I read that, I heard to me, provide support to the city manager, it's what you...
I'm, I'm good with how it stands, but whatever y'all wanna work that.
Okay. All right, next item is council liaison reports. Let's start with, Gina?
All right, so we met, and they elected officers, they needed a vice chair and a secretary. Marcus Quintez is vice chair, Sarah, she did, she drew the short straw, and they literally drew straw straws. And Cynthia's daughter is now the secretary.
And for...
And on the board.
So for, for clarification, we are talking about the parks and...
Parks, yes.
Yep, thank you.
Also, there's, there was a lot of them having a hard time meeting on the Tuesday, third Tuesday of the month, so now the date and time of the, is going to be the third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM. COVID memorial. Do what?
So they might as well let me know that they voted on it.
They did, they did. So now it's gonna be third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM. COVID memorial, there was no updates given by the two young people, however, Patrick informed us that I guess they're talking with the people at the library, as possibly putting it in the area, grassy area behind the library, and I informed them while we had just discussed possibly extending the library into that area, so that's still up in the air, unknown.
It's not directed behind the library, it's over more, it's more over behind the parking lot?
But...
Moving over under that row of trees.
Yeah, it wouldn't be affected by the, the expansion we talked about to the rest.
It's not west of the western wall.
It wouldn't be in fear of that.
But that, but it still hasn't gone through the Friends of the Library or the Library Board for approval or anything.
That's all gone through.
Oh, we were told, Patrick said, when we met, that they hadn't gone through that yet.
It is all, it is all in Angela's lap right now.
Okay.
She didn't bring it up at the last meeting.
It's, she, because they're going out now, they're gonna do some not significant changes, but she's going back out to throw people that have been, uh, put money into it, to let them know what's happening now, and if they look, maybe looking at a paper or maybe it will.
Yeah, I think, well, they've committed to, I believe, presenting to you all, I think it's the second meeting in May, but I'll confirm. I've got it on the, on the list.
But it's gonna need to come before the Friends of the Library report comes to us.
The Library Board will read it.
Yeah, the Library.
Or the Library Board.
Okay.
Do we meet on the first Wednesday?
So for Easter, when they do the Easter out at the park, they have decided to change the fee from, instead of we pay one fee for the carload, it's going to be pay per person fee for entering to the park. The Playtime Grant has been approved for Lyons Park. That's going to, they're looking at doing new lighting, that way they can have night games, irrigation and landscaping, fixing the trail around it, fixing the fencing and dugouts and backstop for the baseball field there, and establishing a splash pad. Friends of the Park, on the 26th of March, they're going to have a chicken fun run, and that'll start at Fitwell. Let's see here, Tour de Cashville's the second of April. Backyard Bluegrass is going to be the 10th of April, and there is silent auction, they're asking for things, to contact Helen on that. And then the next agenda, next meeting agenda is going to take care of items from the November meeting. That's it.
Great. Lots of stuff going out of Parks and Rec. Councilman Carey?
Planning and zoning, neither planning and zoning nor zoning board adjustment had met since our last meeting, no report.
All right.
Mr. Famer, permission to find that?
Quickly, there's a lot of stuff in your packet here from the airport, you know, the new design layout of the pilot's lounge is in here. Forty-nine people on the waitlist for Terminal.
Can I pause you real quick?
Yes.
I have a quick, just a follow-up, and this is a question for you while this came in, because I never figured it out. I may have made a mistake, but I don't think I did. On the, so she announced that they're doing, instead of doing a per carload fee for this event?
Per person.
They're going to have per person fee for the event. Is it necessary that that be done by ordinance? Because I know that our fees typically are, but this is an event related fee, it seems like those would be subject to change and subject to-
Yeah, that's not in our comprehensive schedule of fees.
No.
Is it?
And the reason why they're doing it is they found out that last, the last time they did this, people would bring in a carload and then leave again, and bring a different carload, and not have to pay again, because they've already been paid.
Right.
So that's why they're doing it per-
Yeah, no, this is not the type of fee that we would normally set by ordinance. You know, when we look for things in the fee scheduling, the fee ordinance, those are going to be-
Recurrent.
Recurrent fees.
Right. Throughout the year.
That are required to pay ordinance.
Is it listed?
Because of the Easter, the large thing we have here every year, I believe it is listed.
I recall it being listed.
If, if it's in the ordinance, it's about to be in the ordinance, but generally, this is not the type of fee that you would include in it.
So you may want to exclude future ordinance.
Yeah, let's-
It's the same with like the, I guess, the picnic tables and all that, that's listed in it too. I'm just-
We'll put that on-
It may not be.
Future agenda items, we have to discuss it one way or the other.
It makes a lot of money to give.
We'll do it through the button.
Shuttle people into the picnic table.
Got you, thanks.
I'm good. Sorry, Todd, I interrupted.
No, it's all right, I'm finished tonight.
Well, the only question that I've got about that is, can Chuck Norris actually dribble a bowling ball?
No.
Can he do what on a bowling ball?
Can Chuck Norris actually dribble a bowling ball?
Yes, he answered that.
I can do that.
The library advisory board had a meeting on the 9th of March, but there was nothing significant to report.
All right, thank you. All right, next item is staff reports.
So there's not a whole lot I want to highlight here, there's two items for sure. One is kind of at the very end of the Detroit Airport report. Now, hopefully, by the way, I mentioned this before, I don't want to make David's head swell even more than it may have already been. I do want, I mean, I'm seeking your feedback on these reports and the quality of them, what you want to see. This report specifically is more in line with what the mayor kind of requested, which is where we're putting some performance-related, some success indicators at the top of the report. That's what those blue arrows and big blue numbers are all about, so that you can very quickly see a highlight of, are we being successful in these areas or not, where are the changes? So if you want to see comparative data, or want to see this in different format, please let me know, just send me an email and we'll just figure it out. But in his report at the very bottom, I want to call attention to this, he talks about the windsock. You may or may not have noticed, but we recorded a thousand dollars to make the repairs, the electrical repairs, to make that work. Issa, our employee out of the airport, was fixed it, was able to fix it for less than a hundred bucks. When I was talking to David, one of the things that, because they operate on a stream budget out there, and because we've kind of given them this expectation that they're kind of out of some, out of mind, and that they need to hold their own, and that, you know, if they want to make improvements at the airport, you know, in some respects, go ahead, but don't put it on the backs of your taxpayers. Find a way to have revenues or whatever, fix it. There are, it's difficult to quantify, but we have been a beneficiary, as you heard earlier from the auditor, about the depreciation in our value of some of the things. Well, there have been numerous major, both minor and major fixes at the airport where we would have had to spend tens of thousands of dollars, for instance, on doors and other things to make them work, but our, our crew, David and Issa, had gone in and used a lot of elbow grease, and for a whole lot cheaper, been able to make those things functional. So I just wanted to point this out, there is a lot of, if we lost Issa and David, they do a lot. They're asking, and it goes back to what I was saying earlier, that's kind of my expectation is, you know, give your blood, sweat, and tears to the city, because we want that. And hopefully, in doing that, you'll actually feel more accomplished, and it'll actually, you know, you'll feel more fulfilled, because you're accomplishing something at the city and really helping. I can't say enough about staff, David's doing a great job, but this is true all over the city, there are people doing similar things. So I want to call attention to that. And the other thing I was going to mention was, in the Parks report, there is a mention of expansion of the RV park. We are looking at that. If you have any thoughts or feelings about that, by all means, reach out to me. The thought is to take that existing temporary parking that is to the west and enclose that and expand it. So we've had some preliminary kind of just engineering, looking at that, to see, well, what, what could we do with the existing surface level? And we can add, I can't remember, eight spaces or something, at fairly minimal cost. One of the things that we're very sensitive to is what that does to the looking field of the park. So when we expand this, we wouldn't do it with chain link, we'd probably use the same style fencing that's used, been used elsewhere in the park, that split rail fencing, the stations themselves, we wouldn't try to asphalt, asphalt the whole thing, we'd actually only probably put concrete around where the individual utilities are for each of the pad sites. And then pad sites themselves, rather than using concrete or asphalt, we'd probably use concrete for the wheel stops and crushed granite everywhere else, and try to lock that in with like a concrete border. Again, the idea being that it's more in keeping with that park feel, and then doing landscaping on the outside of it. The whole concept there is to try and increase, you know, the, without increasing the unsightliness, one, raise the bar of the provision, so provide better spaces, larger spaces, higher quality spaces, so that we can then raise the rent value, and in turn, raise the revenue. That is a huge, from a, we wait, we make way more than we spend on the RV parks. So if we can expand that just even a little bit, I think that'll create additional revenue to do other things like down the road, if you want to create a piggy bank for adding more lights, or heating the pool, or offsetting operational costs in some other area, this is one way to do that. Another area that's not discussed in this report, that I'm also, I've also thought about, that you can chalk up to the harebrained ideas category, is possibly doing a separate RV park out towards, on the Benetton property, out on the east side of town. Somewhere that, again, if done right, wouldn't be a sore, wouldn't be something neighbors would complain about, but could be an additional revenue stream to the city. But again, I, there's, that's in the even earlier stages of thought process for me, and as you know, there's lots-
Considerably more expensive.
Yeah, and there's lots going on, but this is just a minor kind of expansion within the regional park. I think we need to be cognizant and careful of the fact that the park is a treasured kind of space, and we don't want to diminish that in any way, shape, or form, so. Those are the two things I want to call attention to. Is there anything else in the report that you have a question about? Yes, ma'am?
I read the mention about an incinerator.
Yes.
Okay. So, how much is our healthcare cost going to go up, because anybody that works the incinerator has to meet certain physical exams every year? Then, what department will be responsible for conducting the daily inspections? Because that's required by law.
Yeah, so right now, we don't do inside solid waste, right? And keep in mind, one of the things that we're trying to do is look at ways to expand our services in the city for solid waste, especially for excess brush. That seems to be where we have the biggest issue. And one of the challenges with this is that they already have some places that they can take that brush, but I've been told, I haven't been able to verify for myself, that the county transfer station does not allow brush. Is that true? Do y'all know that? For a fact?
I think they do.
I've been told that they don't.
The county-
The county transfer station that's out west of town?
Oh, yeah.
That they do not allow brush.
I don't think so. They did, they have metal-
And they don't allow carpet, and they don't allow certain construction materials. So I'll get some answers before you do that. If you could email me some of those questions.
Oh, yeah, I've got, I've got a couple more. And then also, by law, the city has to ask citizens that would be living around the facility, if they would accept this being put in their area, because of the smoke and everything that's going to be generated. Have we submitted for a state permit for the incinerator? That's required. Also, our local fire department needs to be trained on how to handle the incinerator emergencies. If so, is the city going to pay for the training and certifications that are going to be required annually? It's all tied into owning an incinerator.
Right. Okay. I think it also depends on the size. So what we're getting is a, it's not mobile, but it's also not the same size that like a funeral home would use.
Oh, no, I'm talking about a, a small one, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could send me that list, that's great.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, where you say it's required, is there a government code?
Yes.
Could you send that to the cops?
Yep. Yep.
Anything else?
I just, I like David's report. It's a little confusing where he says aircraft activity, arrivals, departures. It took me a while, but it looks like we have about twice as many departures as arrivals, but it's because of the way he's, he's doing it.
He's a whiz kid, but he may not realize, but it looks like we have six hundred departures
we're avoiding, it's, I don't know, but finally figured out what was going on on his bar charts. And that's also true of the, I think that's true of the, of the, of the fuel price trends, and I think it's also true of the gallons sold, because it's doubling up, but I like his report. Tell him I like his report, I just-
Sure.
Maybe that's my engine.
No, I think that we need work on the graphs across the board. Councilman Dyer had pointed out some stuff that needed to be improved, and I think the graphs, they tell a good story when they do, and they give us a good chuckle when they don't. Todd? Anything?
No.
All right.
I don't have any questions, Scott answered mine already.
Cool, thank you, all right. Next item. How did I lose that? We just had that. Okay, next item is executive session. The, this is at nine fifty. The city council will meet in closed session under provisions of the Texas Government Code[1690.52]